It's about time to tap your camera.
Thank you. And I'm gonna ask the color guide to relax for a few minutes because we do public comments first. And I thank you for your patience. We provide opportunities for members of the public to address the board on items, not listen to today's agenda. One at this point, at the beginning of the meeting, and again at the conclusion of our other business agenda. Ms. Ward just gave me the list of public speakers for now. We do have public speaking for 30 minutes prior, so we're only gonna do 30 minutes of public comments. And I ask that when I call your name, you please come up to the podium. We're gonna start with Luis Nativedad, followed by Janet Green, followed by Susan Izuh, followed by Jen Giravino. Are any of the people in the room? If you're outside in the foyer and you can hear my voice and you're a public speaker, please come in. Again, Luis Nativedad, Janet Green, Susan Izuh, and Jean. Okay, yes, I called you up, please. Three minutes, please.
First of all, let me thank you for this opportunity. And I wanted to tell Superintendent that I did bring you a package, but I believe the office kept it for records or something. So I brought you another one before I leave. And basically, I don't need to tell you the importance of the census and the importance of counting all the people in the nation, especially here in San Diego. So what I wanted to do is just, I brought you some folders. I hope all of you received them. I brought them last week. I don't need to go through the whole thing. However, I do like to ask you that you ask one of your staff personnel to select someone to meet with us so we can talk more details, how can the school, I mean, the district can work with us to better count our community. So that's all we're asking. There are a lot of things that we can do together. And we're going through every school district, and this is the first one, by the way. And I know you can't make a motion because not on the agenda, I believe. But however, if you can help me do that, and I'll be glad to meet with anyone you like, most likely it would be Mr. Greer. And then we can discuss some details about how can we work together. Basically, that's what I wanted to do.
Hey, thank you for coming.
Pleasure.
Janet Green.
Hello, my name's Janet Green. I live at 4379 Rueda Drive, San Diego, 92124, in the Tierra Santa neighborhood. And I'm here on behalf of the Serra High School community to comment on the negative impact of the multiple lunch periods. I've learned from emails from Ms. Nakamura and Gary Patel. Surveys show that students complain about long wait times in line. And the thinking is that if you give the free and reduced lunch students more time, they will eat more meals and you'll get more reimbursement from the federal government. I did a time study at Serra on two recent lunch periods. At Serra, we have nine lunch windows and one kiosk that sell the reimbursable meals. The average wait time that I found on these, my lunch study, was the, in the first 12 minutes of lunch was 2.3 minutes. Is the average wait time. By 12:04 on one day and 12:02 on the other, there were no lines at the windows. So the long wait times are not a factor at Serra High School. The single lunch period, though, is a unifying time for our high school. The ASB student leaders and the administration have worked really hard to create a cohesive atmosphere on our campus during lunch. We have 2,056 students from many different communities in San Diego. At lunch, they have spirit contests, pep rallies, they play music overhead. I went through the six of, I went through the website and looked at six of the Serra daily bulletins that are published every day and read to the students. And I just pulled a list from September to January of things that happen at lunch. There are avid club meetings, art and ceramics club meeting, a wrestling information meeting, key club meeting every Tuesday, Justin's ring sales, academic league meeting every Thursday, the prom committee meeting, elevated student relations, bus passes are available, rugby information meeting, photography club, circle of friends club, academic support and assistance raffle for those kids participating in that, and Valentine messages for sale. So there's a whole host of activities happening at lunch to bring our school together. And the multiple lunch systems threaten the social fabric of Serra High School. Academics are threatened by the multiple lunches in a couple ways. Students will have more limited access to the teachers. Frequently, the teachers stay in their classrooms and the students can go get one-on-one tutoring, small group study, and do makeup tests at lunch. The other way that as a parent, I'm concerned about the availability of electives if they have to accommodate multiple lunches and overhaul the master schedule. I'm really concerned about that. Logistically, multiple lunches pose a problem for Serra in inclement weather because we don't have an indoor cafeteria. We have 2,000 students that buy and eat their lunch outside. So right now, when it rains, they go in the buildings and the open, in the hallways. If you have classes in session, we don't have anywhere to even put 1,000 kids if we have half of them eating lunch. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
If you agree, please just wave your hand. Thank you. Susan Izuh, Jean Guerrero.
Good evening. I'm Susan Izuh, principal at Sequoia Elementary, which is located at 4690 Limerick Avenue, San Diego. Good evening again, Superintendent Greer and board members. Along with the many parents, students, community members, and staff, I join in urging you to keep Sequoia, a K-6 school in the Claremont community, open next year. In our staff development room, we have individual pictures of faces of students by grade levels who are at basic or below in reading, sometimes also in math. These vivid photos of the faces of our students on the walls reinforce our daily work and efforts to help young learners capture and maintain proficiency in their grade level work. The people joining me tonight show their faces of appeal and requests to all of you. Their appeal is for their community school to remain open for their children. Our hopes are for no school closures. I stand here and know that had I brought our excellent choral groups, the students could sing and perform their many songs and verses that embrace varied cultures, ethnicities, and themes. If we were to show the number of confident students who over the years have sung solos loud and clear with such gusto and heart at our concerts, presentations, and patriotic flag ceremonies, your auditorium here at the Ed Center would be filled. Had you been present at today's student council meeting, you would have seen students in grades four through six discuss in a meeting how to best share, how to best share with all their grade levels their new laptop cart with 15 Apple laptops that has taken us over two years to purchase and receive from fundraisers, the PTA, business partnership donations, and voucher monies. It has also taken time to become wireless, but we are there. It's also taken time for the San Diego Opera to return back to Sequoia. An opera for kids and opera by kids starts this Friday. And we invite all of you to attend the Rip Van Winkle performance with the San Diego Opera on March 25th. Sequoia Elementary has a strong community of professionals and staff that work alongside parents and partnerships to serve, educate, nurture, and build kids for roles in their futures. We should be celebrating the strength of small community schools. And we should together celebrate the ways, the ways that students, parents, and staff care about their school, not just Sequoia. Look at the faces from Sequoia, hear their voices, and remember their faces. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Please wave your hand. Thank you. Jean, Jean Guerrero, please. Craig Brown. Holly Stevens. Gregory Ray. Eric Christians. Yes, sir?
Jean Guerrero?
Yes, sir. Okay.
Yes, I'm here as a resident of Golden Hills. I live one block up from the Golden Hills Elementary School. I have been a resident there for 17 years. And the nature of my being here tonight is the K-8 being upgraded to K-8 from K-5. Originally, Brooklyn School was shut down because of overcrowding and rather old, dilapidated, and thus gave way to the Golden Hills Elementary School. Since then, during the proposals, before the school went in, it was proposed that it be a K-5 school, not a K-6, not a K-7 or 8. And in conjunction with that, a joint use park was supposedly to be developed for the residents in that neighborhood. And under 1707.42 of the education code, paragraph D, to, an excerpt from that paragraph says, "School and community purposes." To date now, there has been no joint use park. Since then, the school has been upgraded to a K-8 from a K-5. And there will be increased congestion due to foot traffic, vehicle traffic, and noise pollution in the neighborhood. I am speaking with some members of the school board liaison to that school. They said that the notification was sent out to the neighborhood, which I and the neighbors that I have talked to never received. And when asked how it was sent out, when it was sent out, no answer was given. I am strongly opposed, as my neighbors are, to the K-8 school because of the reasons that I have just explained to you. Strongly opposed to K-8 for those reasons. Also, to the school, when Brooklyn School was shut down, it was due to overcrowding. Now, accordingly, to some members I've spoke to, Golden Hills is now understaffed and not enough kids going to school there, is the word that we got. So we would like to be notified, like to know when notification was sent out and how it was sent out for the residents so I can pass it on to my neighborhood friends. And so we were not able to be here at the last meeting when the proposal for K-8 was made. We didn't have notification to be here to express our views. And accordingly, it's 400,000 to 600,000 operating costs for schools if they are under, they don't have enough students going to the schools. That warrants the school being shut down or a temporary education facility to be constructed for the students. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for allowing me to be here.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Craig Brown. Holly Stevens. Gregory Ray. Okay, thank you.
Hi, how are you guys? I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here to speak on, again, like Ms. Izuh, the school closure for Sequoia Elementary.
Okay, your name, please.
Paul Closer.
No, your name.
Craig Brown.
Thank you.
I think one thing that the Small School Closure Committee fails to realize is that the enrollment numbers, they're more than just numbers. They're actually children's lives. They're not just the children's lives. They're the parents' lives, they're the family, the community, the friends. Sequoia is a very tight-knit, tight, close, one big family, really. Sequoia is more than just my youngest child's school. It was my school. My brother went there. My two oldest children, who are now 19 and 18, they went there. And now my son, my youngest son, he goes there. He's eight years old. I think there's a few other ways that the district could look at cutting costs besides closing schools. There are many different budgets within the district that they could look at, not just closing down an actual site. With the Small School Closure Committee, this is a committee that is made up of people that are not in the finance or audit industry. It is not a professional company doing an audit and with the board. And the district, whenever you guys look to have something done, you always have an outside company do an audit. This should not be any different. You know, this should not be left in the hands of, you know, and I don't mean any harm, but it should not be left in the hands of a carpenter, retired SAIC member, you know, people of this that do not have the background to make these kinds of decisions without, all they're looking at is just the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly, Holly Stevens. Gregory Ray.
Hi, my name is Holly Stevens. I represent Sequoia Elementary. I am the PTA president. And Sequoia Elementary is at 4690 Limerick Avenue in San Diego. Please consider the following reasons to keep Sequoia open. First of all, the timeframe is too short under district policy. You have a policy that dictates that school closures will take, will be voted on in June of one year to be effective June the following year. We already are not following policy. There are too many factors involved in the implementation of a school closure to solve before fall 2009. And research has shown that small schools, and small schools are schools that are less than 350 students. It shows, research has shown that small schools helps increase test scores, especially those schools in low-income areas. And at Sequoia, we have 173 students, or 61% of the students, on free and reduced lunch. There are more young families moving into this area, and we need to keep our school open to support the population growth in our neighborhood. And the size of our school is exactly why we love it so much. All the teachers and staff know all our children. The size of our school creates a community atmosphere. The PTA is able to host programs like Grandparents' Day, Muffins for Mom, and even feed the school dinner before events like Math Night and Back to School Night. Our small school is shaping positive behavior traits like community spirit and civic responsibility in our children. If the school were larger, children would easily get lost in it. Dr. Greer, you feel that closing small schools would save the district around $500,000 annually? And I don't see how that adds up. The teachers would still have their jobs, and the closed school would still require maintenance. The only money saved would be in administration and maybe one clerical position. That doesn't add up to $500,000. Before closing any school, first consider other avenues to make up the district's deficit. A district is large, as San Diego Unified has many different budgets. It can scrutinize and find money in. An audit done by an outside company has already suggested that the district is too big to only audit itself once or twice per year. Before considering closing any school, first make sure the district books are in order. Additionally, this school has now been tainted with the possibility of being closed. That possibility has created fear, anxiety, and anger amongst the parents. Where will our kids go? When will we know? Will our teachers be moved to the same school? What will happen to the property? Will we have time to say goodbye to Sequoia if the district decides to close it? We are facing all these unanswered questions. Board members need to make a decision about school closures and make that decision now. Being in this current state of limbo is not in the best interest of our students. So respectfully consider our reasons for keeping our schools open. And please decide now so that we can all move forward.
Thank you. Gregory Ray. Eric Christiansen, followed by Brenda Corona, followed by Ameen Mohammed, Amina Mohammed.
Good evening, Superintendent Greer and San Diego Unified School Board members. My name is Gregory Roy. I am a sixth-grade teacher at Sequoia Elementary School located at 4690 Limerick Avenue. And I too am here to discuss school closure. I'd also like to recognize one of my current students, Molly Setteberg, and one of my former students, Sophia Gomes. And I have them here to remind you why we are all here, and that's the education of students. First of all, I'd like to say that we understand that there are some tough economic times. We're all facing those. But I think before we decide to be closing neighborhood schools, we need to be looking at other viable alternatives. Some suggestions that my students have come up with, and Dr. John, Mr. John Lee Evans, they will be sending you persuasive letters. Some of the ideas they've come up with is reducing, getting rid of minimum days. We now have minimum days in elementary school. Get rid of those. Extend the school day and possibly go to a four-day school week. Before we decide to close neighborhood schools where, as you've heard from our contingent of people that are here today, it's a place where our students are thriving because we have small numbers. They know each and every one of us. We are able to tailor our programs at our school to meet the needs of our students currently in our upper grades because they're smaller. We have gone to a upper grade will where we have teachers specializing in math, science, and social studies, and they teach all fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. I teach a smaller math class, and we've proven that our test scores in mathematics have gone up because we're able to separate the students based on ability and then meet their needs by having small group instruction in other parts of the academic day. That would be lost if these kids had to go to a larger elementary school. Also, at Sequoia, we've made strides because we do feed into I Middle School. As our principals just noted, we've spent the past two or three years raising money and buying technology and putting technology in our classroom and in the hands of our students so that when they leave our school, they're ready for their academic journey into middle school, high school, and beyond. And this also could be lost if you put them in a larger elementary school. Basically, I think that we are at Sequoia representing the mission statement of San Diego Unified School District, and we are preparing students who will be viable leaders in our society of tomorrow. And to close our school would be a travesty, and I thank you for your time and energy.
Thank you. Eric Christiansen. Followed by Brenda Corona, followed by Amina Mohammed.
Madam President, Board Members, Mr. Superintendent, my name's Eric Christin, Executive Director of the Coalition for Fair Employment and Construction, 13825 Kirkham Road, Poway, California. I'd like to just take a moment tonight to remind you that I'm here representing some of whom have taken time out of being away from their families to be here tonight. I'm representing the 90% of the construction industry that happens to be merit shop in this town. I don't think I need to remind you what the issue is. The issue is the project labor agreement that's currently being negotiated without us being allowed at the table. As outrageous and discriminatory as that is, we do hold out hope that any agreement that is agreed to, should there be one, does not mandate that our people have to join a union as a condition of employment, do not have to pay union dues as a condition of employment, do not have to pay union health, welfare, and pension benefits as a condition of employment, and that our finely trained, non-union apprenticeship programs are allowed to be part of the mix and that those youngsters are not discriminated against and kept from working on your projects. We are reminded recently, most recently, when the grand jury came out and talked about what a fine-run program Proposition MM was. PLAs are a solution in search of a problem. They are unnecessary. They are discriminatory. They're wasteful. They are unneeded. And the grand jury was quite explicit about the fact that Prop MM funds were well-spent, and they did a good job with that construction. Prop S, 2.1 billion, when you factor in the money that will be coming from the state, upwards of $2.5 billion. When that was put before the voters, there was no mention of a PLA. This needs to be done the right way, and that's with open competition and nondiscrimination for any. Open competition for all, nondiscrimination for all, union and non-union alike. And I'd just like to end with this. We are here to help. We continue to offer advice if it's sought, even though we were, had the door shut on us in the negotiations. So I'd like to thank you for your time. On a completely unrelated note, I would be remiss if I didn't comment on the fact that I happen to be the husband of a United States Air Force pilot. I am very proud of her. She is a graduate of the JROTC. She went into the Air Force Academy at 17. She's a major at 34. And I'd like to give a shout-out to the JROTC. It's a great program. Thank you.
Wave your hand. Save your clapping. Wave your hand. Brenda Corona, followed by Amina Mohammed, and that's the last person for public comments for this time, at this time.
Hello, my name is Brenda Corona. I live in 6203 Brooklyn Avenue, San Diego. I'm here on behalf of Purging Middle School. Like, education takes place first in my life, so which defines my future. So I'm here to prove that middle school should be given more money to invest in their education because it helps us prepare for their future, for which is high school. In sixth and seventh, eighth grade, we learned so many stuff. And I think it's important to take consideration that we should have more money given to the middle schools because it'll help us be prepared for high school so they don't have to struggle so much. In seventh and eighth grade, I did a science fair project, which was a challenge, but I did, did very well because my teachers were there and I have the special tools to actually do it. And like, when I, I want to be, when I grow up, is be in the environmental scientist because my science fair project inspired me to become what my career wants to be, like, in middle school. It helps you want to know what do you want to be when you grow up. Also, high school helps you prepare for that. But I think investing in middle schools would be better off having them prepared and then later on, high school would like take care of the rest. So as I, I am a Gulfhead student, and I know there's money somewhere. So I was thinking that having to know that we have teamwork, confidence, and have, and we all come together to have a voice and go to our government and speak out because we have, there is money and we could get it. Because we, our education comes first. And I come behalf of many students in this district. And also, I want to know that education is his prestigious award, which helps us have a better future and a job because during this economy crisis, we know everybody has been affected. But as you can see, there's always a way out. So I think that knowing by success that we could actually achieve a goal and knowing that we could do something. So at the end, I will graduate and I will go to college and I'll have a job of being an environmental scientist because it will benefit the world. And I think, please consider having knowledge about our education in middle schools and also in high school. So thank you very much.
Thank you. There you go. Wave. There you go. Ms. Amina Mohammed, and after that, we'll have the colors.
Hello, my name is Amina Mohammed, and I'm here on behalf of Man Middle School. And I'm here to support Ms., our principal. We, the parents, students, and former students are here to support our principal. Ms. O is the best principal because she provides a safe learning environment for all students. Some of the teachers at Man are here to complain because they want to be unproductive and they want to, they want to have a lenient principal. Their argument is that Ms. O puts too much pressure on them by checking their lesson plans, asking why certain student failed, asking if a film is educational or connects with the class, and so on. These petty arguments are very unprofessional because it's the principal's job to check if the classroom, if the classrooms prepares the students to meet California standards and to check whether the students are receiving the best education or not. Under Ms. O's guidance, Man Middle School has drastically improved compared to five years ago. When I attended Man Middle School, man, it was going downhill academic-wise. Now, Man Middle School is soaring because it is community-based and the parents are more involved. Academically speaking, students have significantly improved and violence has decreased. Please listen to our plea and help us keep this growth to continue. Please, listen to our plea and help us keep this growth to continue to occur at Man Middle School. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Wave your hand. Thank you, people. We will now have the Air Force, JROTC, Scripps Ranch High School will now present the colors. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we try the colors?
Thank you. If you must leave, then exit quietly. Good afternoon, I am Sheila Jackson, President of the Board. I would like to welcome all present today and call the February tenth, two thousand nine, regular meeting to order with all board members present. We hope the discussion and decisions you observed today will give you a better understanding and appreciation of the important part you play in setting the course of education in the San Diego Unified School District. Agendas for today's meetings are available at both entryways into the auditorium, at the informational desk near the press table, and on the internet at www.sandy.net. In addition to the broadcast of our meeting on ITV, the live webcast, we are using Board Docs, the web-based program to enhance governance, reduce the amount of paper we generate, and provide for better communications with the public. The Board requests that those individuals with pagers and cell phones please turn them off or place them in a silent mode while you're in the auditorium, and that during the meeting, please enter and exit auditorium by using the door at the back or on my left front in front of the press table. In addition, hold your chairs when you stand up because they bounce. The Board welcomes your comments in writing and doing public testimony. Public testimony forms are located at the tables to my right inside the front and back entrances to the auditorium. The Board asks that speakers focus their comments on issues and not on individuals. Acceptance of public testimony requests will be closed at the end, at the, closed at each agenda item is called, our discussion begin. Board members are very interested in your comments. The Superintendent and his staff will be responding to the issues we hear today. If you wish to address the Board today, and your name is not on the blue sheet, and you have not submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Ms. Ward. Speakers on the agenda items will be called to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Agenda item testimony is limited to a maximum of twenty minutes per consent and/or action item, allowing for ten minutes per opposing viewpoint, and a maximum of three minutes per speaker. No deferral time is allowed. Non-agenda items was heard at five PM. We will also, and we will also be heard at the end of the meeting. Testimony is limited to a maximum of fifteen minutes per item or three minutes per speaker. No deferral time is allowed. The Board operates under the robust rules of order, which confer upon the governing body and the audience's participation in proceeding in a civil and courteous manner. At this time, would the ASB students or representatives please introduce themselves and tell us a little bit about yourself and what's going on at your schools, both academically and socially?
Good afternoon, Board Members. Dr. Greer, Shalilla Jackson, President, and community members present. My name is Jose Gerardo Bohorcas, the President of the Council of ASB, President, and also President of Kerny Complex ASB. Academically, on my campus, a hundred seniors graduated early. In CTA, Construction Tech Academy, one of the small schools, and Kerny Educational Complex are being part of internships, and some of them are paid. So that's what's happening academically at my school. In ASB, we are dealing with the transition from one semester to the other since we have a four-by-four schedule. So we, right now, we are just appointing commissioners and doing all those stuff in ASB. So that's what's happening on my campus. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Marie Baranco, and I'm the ASB President at Patrick Henry High School. And right now, at my school, the senior class is mainly focusing on completing senior exhibition requirements as far as academically goes. And for ASB, we're in the process of planning our winter formal, which will be at the end of the month. So, that's all. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for joining us today, and please feel free to join in by pressing your button or waving your hand at me so I can see you. Okay? Ms. Akamara, please.
With this already? Okay. Yeah, it's my pleasure. We have instituted a new tradition here in which we ask schools to come and perform, quote-unquote, which normally means singing or dancing or some sort of format. But I today wanted to have a program that I am particularly fond of that is in the district. It's called Junior Model United Nations. It is everything that we would want our students to learn. Every year, they convene from schools across the district to, basically, Junior Model United Nations, just like the Model, just like the United Nations does in New York. But I'd like to say that also, I'd like to take this moment to say that not every school in this district has this program, has Junior Model United Nations, or has Model UN. Although, when I went to China this last summer, in a remote province of China, I found a school that had actually participated in Model UN and had gone to Boston. So this is a very unique program that is recognized worldwide, and we are so very fortunate to have it at several of our schools, but I could only pick one school here today. And so I asked Scripps Ranch High School to come and show us their stuff. But I would like, I am particularly pleased that the political science teacher from Lincoln is here today because I think you really ought to be seeing this, and your school should be participating in this. Morse should be participating in this. All of these, it is not, they won't be able to show you everything that they do today. But come, was it in May? In May, you have your conference. Teachers, history teachers, political science teachers in the district, I really encourage you to try and find a way to go and visit and watch what these kids can do because it is amazing. Thank you. Oh, I can't take the whole five minutes? Okay. I have to introduce Chris Priscipe and Josh Lynn, who are the current Secretaries General. The participants will be Jacqueline Lee, Dan Moyer, Yulma Rubio, and Samantha Conrad. Haiyun Wang and Devon Saragosa are alternates. So.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Josh Lynn, and this is my esteemed co-Secretary General, Chris Priscipe.
We are seniors at Scripps Ranch High School, and we will be the Secretaries General for the upcoming San Diego Junior Model United Nations Conference. This conference this year will be held from May twenty-first to the twenty-second on the University of San Diego campus at the Joan Croch Institute of Peace and Justice.
We will now open the floor for debate on the resolution entitled Repatriating Former Guantanamo Bay Detainees, sponsored by the United States of America. Our first speaker will be the delegate from the United States. Delegate, you have the floor.
The United States hopes to shut and seal the current problem in Guantanamo Bay. Since two thousand and one, seven-hundred-and-seventy-five detainees have been held in Guantanamo Bay and have been classified as enemy combatants, and that under the former administration, there have been allegations of torture, abuse, and degradation of detainees. The Obama administration has determined that Guantanamo Bay and all that it symbolizes has not been helpful to American foreign policy, and that President Obama ordered the facility to be closed within one year. Of the seven-hundred-and-seventy-five detainees taken since two thousand and one, five-hundred-and-twenty have been released without a charge. It is believed that about sixty of these remaining two-hundred-and-forty-eight detainees have been determined not to have committed any hostile acts against the United States or its allies. It is the new administration's belief that the international community has a responsibility to protect civilian populations from violations of international humanitarian law when states are unwilling or unable to do so. Therefore, we believe that several of these detainees, including Syrians, Somalis, Libyans, and ethnic Ogres from China, would be abused, tortured, or persecuted from their governments or fellow citizens if returned to their countries of origin. Appreciating the willingness to accept the detainees who cannot be reparated for their, by express, several members of the European Union, including Portugal, Ireland, and Switzerland, and Italy and Spain, under the European Union endorsed plan, the United States of America would like this delegation to develop a plan for the repatriation of detainees. The United States hopes that other countries will support this resolution and help in its execution.
Thank you, Delegate. Our next speaker will come from Saudi Arabia. You have the floor, Delegate.
Thank you. The Kingdom of Saudi Arabia finds the past actions of the United States a travesty, seeing as previous investigations of returned detainees show that none have pursued violent actions or raised arms against the United States. We emphasize that the United States continues to hold thirteen of our citizens. We are encouraged by the swift action of the new administration. However, we find the resolution proposals complicated and superfluous. We have our own just ways of preparing and reintegrating our detainees into society, and we believe we reserve the right, as their native country, to process their release. We commend the United States in changing their policy and look to strengthen our relations with them. We also continue to await the return of our thirteen citizens. Thank you.
The next speaker on the floor is Germany.
Germany is harboring doubts and is concerned about the possibility of accepting former inmates, who might still prove a danger or risk highlighted when it emerged last week that said Saad Ali Ashiri, who was released from Guantanamo in two thousand and seven, is now Al Qaeda's deputy leader in Yemen. To quote Frank Walter Schammer, our Foreign Minister, "There is no question that chief responsibility to do with solving the problem of this detention center lies with those who set it up, the Americans themselves." Therefore, to reiterate, the German delegation does not agree that well-meaning countries, many of which are experiencing economic crisis, should be responsible for taking these individuals. This situation is solely of the making of the United States, and it is they who should clean up their own mess.
Thank you, Delegate. We will now entertain our final speaker from China.
Thank you, Honorable Chairs. The Chinese government understands that a regime change in the United States breeds chaos. It is not the responsibility of the world to pick up after the actions of either the current or the former president. While prisoners apparently face torture if they return to their home nations, we feel that they have already faced worse than American prisons. The Republic of China finds it almost hypocritical that the United States continually points out human rights abuses in our nations while they look the other way at their illusions of justice. We feel that the Guantanamo Bay prisoners should be returned immediately to their home nations. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegates. Currently in its thirty-second year, Jamie Yoon is a longstanding and very important tradition in San Diego. Every May, about four hundred middle school students and high school freshmen, representing eight San Diego City Schools, come to the Joan B. Croch Institute for Peace and Justice at USD to participate in the two-day conference. And this year, we expect a record-high level of attendance.
At this time, we would like to personally invite each and every one of you to attend this conference. We believe it's a very important and invaluable educational experience for everyone, and so with your permission, we will pass out invitations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Great. Okay, the next item up we're going to take up is Item CO-1, Administrative Assignment. Superintendent Greer?
Thank you, Board President Jackson. Earlier this evening, the Board approved Susan Martinez as the district's Executive Director of Special Education, Joe Fulcher as the Director of Special Education, Don Mitchell as the Director of the Advanced Placement Incentive Grant. These individuals have been serving in these positions for a number of months on an interim basis, and this makes, the action tonight makes these assignments permanent. We also, the Board approved the appointment of Wilma Jean Small Esten as the new Principal of Franklin Elementary School. All of these appointments were made by a five-zero vote. Thank you, President Jackson.
Thank you. Next administer informational report. Any updates for us, please?
Thank you. We could spend a good part of the night updating you on things that have been going on, but we've decided to highlight a few. First of all, as you know, several meetings ago, the Board took action to reinstate teachers that had been assigned on a temporary basis to a permanent status with the district. I'd like to personally say thank you to Sam Wong and his staff for trying to contact and talk with teachers who had left the district. I just want to report to the Board, well, we've been able to find all but seventeen individuals, and we are continuing to try to locate them. But Sam and his staff have done a very nice job making that transition, a smooth transition for our teachers. So Sam, thank you.
Wave your hand down.
And thank you to our staff.
They can see you out there. Okay.
Also, one or two other quick items. Also would like to say a special thank you to Daryl Agassay and his team, who have been working very, very hard to put together the district's very first virtual high school, AHI Virtual Academy. The school is now open. We have twenty students enrolled that are full-time high school students, taking all of their courses online. They have been presented with their own laptop computer with wireless internet connectivity. They have met and are going through orientation sessions, and we have well over another hundred and fifty students who are actually students in our high schools but are also taking one or more courses online. So we think this is going to grow and develop into something special for our students, and it's being well-embraced by our teachers. Also, would like to say a special thank you to our high school graduation coaches in our high schools and our high school principals that have implemented our project credit recovery program. Several, it was last week, I had an opportunity to visit Mission Bay High School, where they had recovered, already recovered, over twelve-hundred courses this school year, and all of the students there were on track to graduate at the end of this year. One of the students will graduate in mid-year. We're having similar success across the district. We need to do a little work in one or two areas, but we're very proud of the work that the district is doing. Those are three quick updates that I wanted to share with the Board. A lot of good things going on in our school district. I had an opportunity to visit five of our schools last week, and I can tell you, there is some excellent teaching going on in our classrooms by our teachers, and they deserve our gratitude and thanks.
Hey, thank you very much. Can I have a motion to adopt your agenda, please?
So moved.
It's so moved.
Okay. It can move in second.
Please vote.
Thank you. The next item up is Item E-01, which is a public hearing to consider applications and charter petitions for Magnolia Science Academy, San Diego II and III. This is a public hearing for information only. Superintendent Greer?
Thank you. The staff, this is a public hearing, and we have representatives from the school here this evening who would like to speak. We would appreciate your coming forward and introducing yourselves, and the board looks forward to hearing what you have to say.
Let me just make sure that I have, this is E-01, yes. Okay, so we should have Mustafa Kessin. Is this the, are you leading it off?
Yes.
Okay, please introduce as you start speaking.
Dear Board President Jackson, Vice President Barrera, Board members, and Superintendent Greer, my name is Mustafa Kessin. I live at 10964 Ivy Hill Drive, Number 5, San Diego, California, 92131. I'm a father of two, and one of my sons attends Diggman Elementary in STUUSD currently. I'm a founding board member of Momentum Middle School and currently a board member of Magnolia Foundation. I work as an electronics design engineer. Like myself, there are a lot of developers in Momentum Middle from high-tech industry and universities. Some of the companies that our development team works are Qualcomm, Nokia, Motorola SD Microelectronics, and Sequoia Communications. We have also support from grad students of SDSU and UCSD. As some of the board members may recall, our very initial plan was to open Momentum Middle in Miramesa, Clermont Mesa, or Scripps Ranch area, since there was great interest from parents and tech specialists living in these neighborhoods. At the same time, with the availability of current Momentum facility and also suggestions from community members and board members, we opened Momentum Middle in San Carlos area back in 2001. We would like to continue our operation there. At the same time, there is still even increasing demand and support for new Magnolia schools, especially in northern part of the district. First of all, there are no classroom-based charter schools in our proposed neighborhoods. There are no math and science-focused public charter schools again in these neighborhoods, as can be seen in charter school maps of STUUSD. Our vision is to educate more and more students in science and technology areas for their future years in college and then workplace. Magnolia Science Schools will provide good educational bases for science and technology workforce locally. Our education model is really great working model. At the same time, we will bring more students to our district from home schools, private schools, and AGs in the district in northern part of STUUSD. When it comes to our history, we founded Magnolia Foundation in 1997. Our first school was opened in 2002, Magnolia Science Academy in Los Angeles. Two years after that, our local development team members started working with STUUSD stem members and board members and community members to open a similar school in San Diego. Momentum Middle started in 2005 with your support and interest. Magnolia Foundation has received about $6 million as startup grants for public charter schools. We enjoy working together with STUUSD board members and stem members for the success of our students. We would like to continue this relationship and contribute to success of STUUSD in general. Thank you very much for your attention and support to our school.
David Yilmaz, 2914 Fletcher Park Way, El Cajon. Dear Board President Jackson, distinguished board members, and Superintendent Greer, I'm David Yilmaz, the principal of Momentum Middle School. I am one of the founding teachers of Magnolia Science Academy I. I taught math, science, and computer classes there, and I moved here four years ago to help set up Momentum Middle School. Dr. Kessin presented about who are we and why we want to open charter schools parts, and I'll be speaking about how successful we are. The first Magnolia school was the most improved school in Los Angeles according to API scores, just like Momentum Middle School being the most improved middle school in San Diego in its second year. Our API scores are above the state average. Magnolia schools have ranked 10 out of 10 in similar school ranking for the last four years. Magnolia schools, except for Momentum, are located in underserved areas. 88% of the students in Magnolia I receive free or reduced lunch. Since Magnolia has succeeded so much in such short time, the state, the district, and private research organizations made studies on Magnolia's success. 2004, LA Unified selected Magnolia for case study for its innovative practices. 2006, USC selected Magnolia to study on its promising practices. Magnolia became the subject of a PhD dissertation. 2007, Magnolia received Title I Achievement Award. 2008, Gates-sponsored Matematica Research Institute and the Casey Foundation are doing a study on Magnolia schools. Magnolia students have received more than 60 awards in six years, including United States Math and Computer Olympics, American Computer Science League, LA County and California Science Fairs, robotics and SIMP to competitions, and many more. I'm not going to read all. Magnolia is a school of firsts. In 2005, more than 10% of projects at LA County Science Fair were from Magnolia students. In 2006, our student Zeb Brady was one of the six members of the United States Math Olympian Team. He is the first charter school student to make this dream come true. He worked day and night and over the weekends with Magnolia teachers. Zeb received gold medal in Slovenia. Zeb chose Caltech over MIT, and he is currently coaching Magnolia students. Magnolia San Diego branch, Momentum, is following its sister's footsteps. Our API is 803. We were the most improved middle school two years ago, and we rank 10 out of 10. We are small-sized schools with small class size, and we implement adaptive computerized tests to pay individual attention to our students. We provide free tutoring in all core classes to prevent failure and help students succeed. To guide our students, we do home visits. Magnolia teachers and administrators have collectively done more than 1,000 home visits so far. I have done about 80 home visits myself. We take our students on field trips to universities and high-tech industries. We offer character education, life skills, and college counseling to our students. I have more, but thank you for your patience, and if you have questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
My name's Karen Evans, and my address is 604 Sunset Court in San Marcos, 90269. I am a language arts teacher with Momentum Middle School, the Magnolia Science here in San Diego, and I've been with the school since it opened. And looking at the progress we've made in our short time alive here in San Diego, I am super excited to hear we're going to have more schools here. I hope you guys support us on that. I wanted to focus on how we use technology. We are math, science, technology-focused. All of our students have computer class daily. We emphasize both computer skills and integrating that with our core classes. At the end of each semester, we do a big project day. We just finished one in January where the students for 7th grade were researching a mathematician and a scientist. They created a biography book using PowerPoint with timelines and graphics and information about their researched people. Then they presented those to their peers. One big advantage to having such computer-savvy students is that we post our grades, our homework assignments, a lot of our communication online, and we know that all of our students have access to that. So, it helps a lot at home, but it's definitely great to use at school. Mr. Yilmaz mentioned our computerized testing. We have map testing. It's a measure of academic progress. It focuses on helping the students and the teachers see how students progress from the beginning to the middle to the end of the year, and that's all computer-based and custom and individual for each student. The last thing that I can speak to personally is I run an after-school club with my fellow teachers. It's called the Comic Crew. What I contribute is the newspaper and yearbook part, and we have an entirely online newspaper. It's completely student-run, and we also do all of our own yearbook design, so our students are savvy enough to do all the layout, all the digital photography, put it all together, and all we do out of house is the actual end publishing. I really hope you guys look into our charter proposition and support us. I think we bring a lot to the community, and I notice our students are just so prepared and eager for futures, and we all know how important the math, science, technology emphasis is. So, I appreciate your time. I know you guys have tons of hard decisions to make, so thank you very much.
My name is Arzu Tufekci, and I live in 17695 Valderez Drive, 92127. Board President Jackson, board members, and Superintendent Greer, I have two children, and my oldest daughter attended the Momentum Middle School last year as a 6th grader. She had speech delayed and academically was behind, behind, and before we enrolled her in our middle school, I heard about this Momentum Middle School, and we enrolled her last year, and it was one of the best decisions we ever made. First of all, Momentum Middle School teachers and staffs were dedicated and loving and involved. Second, they offered small-sized classes, had after-school tutoring and clubs, and many activities for the kids to learn and grow. But the most important one for us was they allowed my daughter to work with her level without being left behind. Unfortunately, Momentum Middle School was far away from my home, and I had to drive 100 miles a day to get her one year, but last two months ago, we decided her to go back to our middle school. We wish this school was closer to our home. Please approve these calls, because I believe that another Momentum or Magnolia closer to our neighborhood will allow each child to grow academically and socially, and also these schools will provide an emotionally safe place for children to learn and be challenged. Thank you for your decision to make our community better.
Hello, my name is Donna Carter. I live on Hydro Lane in Miramesa, California. I drove 18 miles one way to get my son to middle school, to Momentum Middle School, for two years, there and pickup and back home every day, and I can't say enough about the school. My son is in special education. He received an excellent education there. He's kept a 3-point, he graduated with a 3.2 GPA with an IEP. He can still barely read, but the teachers helped him way more than the Magnet School he was in. He was at Longfellow Magnet, and now he's at Miramesa High. He's back doing poorly. I can't say enough what Momentum did. The home visits were excellent. I've never had a teacher come out to my home as a student in San Diego, as a parent. I'm a college counselor here in San Diego. Never have two teachers taken the time out to come to my home to see us, to see our home life, to see where my child studies, to see that we have computer in our home, to see what his home life is, so they know when they're talking to him what his home life is like, you know? After-school programs, my son never wanted to leave. He wanted to stay. He wanted to be in the tutoring. He wanted to be in the after-school programs. No student wants to stay at school. I had to say, "Come on, it's time to go," and make him leave. The teachers really care at Momentum. They just go beyond what regular teachers do somehow in regular schools, in non-charter schools. They do weekend trips with the kids. They do, they went to LA, they went to the beach, but they didn't, you know, they did it with teaching, too. They went to museums over the weekends in LA. They do trips. They went to the Grand Canyon. They go to Europe. They go to Turkey. They go to Washington, DC. They did all these things with the students that they just really care about our kids, you know? They do picnics, picnics on Sunday with the kids. Again, it's the thing, I'm teaching a freshman year at college. Why? To get them in, to get them hooked in, to get, to want to be around the teachers, so that they will come to them with problems and talk to them. They really care there. There's a computer login for parents. Every night, we get to log in. Every night, I see exactly what his homework is. I see exactly what he wants to do, what's supposed to be turned in the next day, next week. I know when the tests are supposed to be. I know what the tests are supposed to cover, and I get a login, and every day, I can check on his GPA. Every day, I can see his attendance. Every day, I can see exactly what he did in every single class. And I logged in every night to check on that. And there was a lot of contact with the school. I felt welcomed. I felt I can come on campus, I can talk to a teacher, I can talk to the administration. Never did I feel pushed aside or that my concerns weren't important. Thank you. They're wonderful.
Hello, I'm Kimberly Prendergast. I live at 1377 Yerba Verde Drive in El Cajon. My daughter Kelly is a 7th grader at Momentum Middle School. She formerly had been, her entire education and my son's education had been in Cajon Valley. I chose to send her to Momentum because of the math and science emphasis. I felt like she really needed to have a special attention put in that area, especially middle school, when the social life could drive her crazy and me as well. I felt like Momentum could at least offer the math and science that I felt she might not be able to get at a regular, non-charter middle school. The class sizes are wonderful. She is in a, none of her classes are more than 25 students, so the teachers have plenty of time to give attention to those kids that might be falling behind, or if they're doing better than the rest of the class, be able to give them special attention and give them challenge. Socially, the school, because it's a smaller school, I would have to say it's like a typical middle school, but what's different about it is that my daughter, being brand-new in 7th grade, having not gone there in 6th grade, she was able to meet kids more quickly. She was able to incorporate herself into the life at the school, I think, a little bit quicker than she would have at a regular middle school. Her grades are, she's doing great, I have to say, like the other parent had said. Having teachers come to your home is a very unique experience, and that is completely up to the parents to decide whether to do that, but I can't imagine a parent not wanting a teacher to come to your home and to sit and meet with you and talk with you about your child personally. Your family goals, your child's goals, and the expectations that you have from an educational institution are one of a kind and make this school incredibly special. I would say that this model that they've provided, it could be duplicated in so many different communities, that, and it ties in with, I think, the district's goals, to expand the opportunities, just like kids doing high school online. Kids have to have opportunities. Parents have to have choices and options so that they stay in San Diego, they stay in our schools, and that they excel and continue their education in San Diego and in California. Thank you.
Good evening, President Jackson, board members, Superintendent Greer. I'm Lisa Berlanga from the California Charter Schools Association, and I'm pleased to stand up here and support a replication of a very successful charter school, in fact, several very successful charter schools. Momentum in San Diego has produced wonderful results. They score over 800 on the API. They score 10 in similar schools. They're a very popular choice, I know, because they're in my neighborhood, and many parents are looking for choices, particularly for middle schools. Middle schoolers, middle school's a tough age, and some kids need something that looks a little bit different, smaller class sizes, a different focus. The science and technology focus is certainly something that many parents are looking for. There was recently a parent survey done by the CCDC in the district in downtown where parents said they're looking for science, technology-focused schools. So, I think that this is going to be a great opportunity to provide choice to parents in Miramesa, where there's not a lot of options right now, to choose a little bit smaller middle school or high school for their kids. We support high-quality replications because we have a group of folks who have already done this. This isn't brand-new for them. They have their governance system down. They have their curriculum down. They know what they're doing, and we hope that you consider supporting their replication. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This was information, staff. Do you have anything else you want to share with us?
No.
Okay. All right, do we move on to the next item? And the next item is the authorized allowance for physical, for PE credit for JROTC and marching band. Dr. Greer and Mr. Moore?
Thank you. There's a resolution in your packet for board members to adopt, which would allow the district to grant physical education credit for marching band and for ROTC. This comes after a great deal of work and effort on our behalf to finally get someone from the State Department of Public Instruction to take a stand on what the district could or could not do. Attached to this resolution is a copy of an email that we received from the person in the State Department that oversees physical education and graduation requirements. I wanted to let the board know that we have also forwarded State Superintendent Jack O'Connell a letter asking him to please write to us verifying that this is in fact permissible, because we want to cover all of our bases. We have had a most difficult time getting people from the State Department to give us clear direction on what the board was able or not able to do. So, I wanted to add that as a caveat, that even though we've got this on the agenda at the request of Board Member Nakamura, who has been championing this cause along with several of the other board members, so that we could offer some direction, but we are eagerly awaiting Superintendent O'Connell's response.
Will you just a second? We need to get a motion on the floor.
Yeah, move approval.
Okay, Mr. DiBeg?
Yeah. Well, this started early on with arguments over ROTC, and it extended further.
further. I am, I'm very much interested in supporting this, but I think it's also important for us to mention, uh, surveys that went on about physical fitness that we, uh, found out about as a result of this initiative. I've, I've written to the board and I, I really sincerely believe what I'm saying, and that is, the real initiative about PE was the concept that, the reason you take PE is that you'll have physical fitness as a part of what you do. In other words, you go to classes, uh, you take physical fitness, the state mandates, uh, as PE. Uh, what was interesting is, and the study was, that we did internally among a number of our schools, was that the marching band were by far more physically fit than comparable PE classes, and that the ROTC was not as fit as either of them, despite what some of the folks were saying. And the conclusion that I drew from this was that the real problem is that we have very lax standards on what it takes to get a credit. If, if a person's taking any class for a credit in PE, in my view is that we say we have a standards-based curriculum, we should have some kind of standards for passing the course, not enrollment in a class, but ability to do something, you know, either throw, uh, stand, run, walk, uh, you know, breathe heavily, I don't care, as long as there's some kind of a rule for getting the credit. And the facts are, there are no rules for getting the credit. So why wouldn't you waive it, uh, to give a class credit that was doing better than a PE class? Why wouldn't you waive it for, uh, military, uh, class that was doing better than PE classes? But why would you do it at all if the classes didn't meet some standards? So I'm going to go along with this vote because I believe that, you know, there should be some flexibility in how you reach a standard, but the real question is, where are the standards?
Nakamura?
Yes, um, the, I just want to add that we have asked, um, Chuck Morris, our head of, uh, our deputy superintendent and, and head of curriculum, to also take a look at, um, how health, there he is, out there, I was looking for you, Chuck. Uh, how, um, you know, the health education of our students is, for want of a better word, compiled or addressed or brought together in the district. It seems to be a little, um, here, a little there, but I think that this has been a really wonderful way of inadvertently launching this whole conversation. Um, I know that we are developing model band, model, uh, marching band curriculum based on this, is something that's coming out of it, and I know JRTC's having discussions, and I know physical education, so childhood obesity is a very serious issue and it's something that we have been, um, that we've been concerned about. Unfortunately, that, we have to take this resolution because some folks up in Sacramento, like politicians, uh, sometimes, um, make laws that, uh, don't actually get at what they're trying to get after, you know, that's just the wrong target population. But I want to thank the staff, particularly Superintendent Greer, um, has been, um, like a bulldog, working with, uh, California Department of Education and trying to get information out of them. It's been remarkably difficult thing to do. Uh, so we now, this is just nailing things down a little bit, but we're still pursuing legislation, uh, to make this, because there are other districts throughout the state of California that are relying on us. Um, and we're still, I just, I know the board's aware of this, but that we are still pursuing litigation in order to actually get it into law, that, that a district has the right to make these exceptions, um, so that we don't have this guesswork that we've been having within this school district. It's ridiculous, we've had to go through all of this. But I do want to take a moment and really sincerely thank, um, all the hard work for staff, uh, that they have done. Bernie Reinsen has heard me, um, ad nauseam talking about this, or maybe it's ad infinitum, or maybe it's both, um, go on and on about this, and, uh, Monica Henestrosa, who is our, um, new legislative person up in Sacramento, is a knockout. You guys, she's worked hard.
Okay, Dr. Evans, and then we have two public comments. Thank you.
Okay, well, I, I do agree that we need to look at alternatives in terms of physical education, um, credit, whether it's through PE classes, uh, JRTC, or through, uh, marching band. However, I do think we need to do what Mr. DeBeck said, which is address the issue of, uh, physical fitness and, and what are the standards, and whether it's the Physical Education Department working with JRTC and, and the marching band, or, or vice versa, that we have some sort of standards of physical fitness for our students.
Okay.
And I just wanted to direct the staff to kind of look into that, please.
Ian Kelly and Charles Nichols.
Ian Kelly, 7787 Hillendale Drive, San Diego, 92120. As you're well aware, uh, the Senate bill created a conundrum for school boards across the state, prescribing a one-size-fits-all solution for a complicated issue, and I am extremely grateful that this board has documented a history of greater consideration for life as a high school student. The bill's target, the bill's stated target is to combat childhood obesity. JRTC programs like marching band are perfectly suited to fulfill this target. Both require students to actively engage in activities that elevate the heart rate for extended periods of time. I've had the opportunity to watch these students directly as they engage in individual and team sports with a liveliness that is generally absent from the mainstream PE courses. The JRTC instructors are all federally credentialed in wellness training to ensure that students learn the full range of health and fitness, uh, as required under the Educational Code. The JRTC programs fully meet the spirit of SP 6007. You are extending the PE credit to those valuable programs falls, falls well within your authority and will provide compliance with a letter of the law. Mr. DeBeck, I, I was interested to hear your comments regarding the, the JRTC students not meeting a standard. Um, I think perhaps what we need to look, look at, as you say, is what is the standard? Perhaps ROT student, students are failing the standard because the standard is not the high school standard, but the military standard. If you have ever seen students, no, never mind. Anyways, moving on.
We'll talk.
We'll discuss that anyway. Um, anyway, the, the high school, the, the JRTC students, uh, are engaged in physical activities like no other PE, PE course you will see, much as the band members do. During his first two years at Henry, my son often dragged off to school only because he knew that he needed to have good attendance in order to participate in ROTC events. If he was required to take a standard PE course with a joc bravado he hates, or which required him simply to walk around the track for 45 minutes, day after day, I would have a very different young man on my hands today. Cadet Captain Kelly graduates this year, so we have nothing to lose or gain directly from your decision today. For the good of coming generations of San Diego citizens, I urge you to extend PE credit to the JRTC and marching band programs. Thanks.
Thank you. Charles Nichols.
Madam President and members of the board, I'm Charles Nichols, 9887 Molly Lane, Santee, California. I'm here to address the aspect of physical fitness training for the junior ROTC. Mr. DeBeck, uh, focused in on standards, and if we look at the state, uh, physical education standards for public schools, published by the California State Board, they have fairly explicit standards set forth, and for the two classes for
You want me to read?
Uh, high school students.
You really need?
There are three standards for both of them, and the only difference is that some of the subsidiary objectives change from one, uh, class to the other. Now, the standard, just briefly, standard one, students dominate, uh, demonstrate knowledge of and competency, competency in motor skills, movement patterns, and strategies needed to perform a variety of physical activities. Standard two, students achieve a level of physical fitness for health and performance while demonstrating a knowledge of fitness concepts, principles, and strategies. Standard three, students demonstrate knowledge of psychological and sociological concepts, principles, and strategies that apply to the learning and performance of physical activities. Now, if we take those three standards and their subsidiary objectives and lay them out against the elements of the program for JRTC, the only conclusion I can come to is that the JRTC program meets those state standards, and, uh, I would, uh, urge the board to support and continue to give the junior ROTC a acceptance for the standards that they meet. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. DeBeck, please.
Yeah, uh, how interesting that, uh, the, uh, speaker cited knowledge. Knowledge of physical fitness, knowledge of, uh, where's the, where is the beef? You know, if you, if you're going to be physically fit, there's certain things you should be able to do. Now, we waive things for, uh, kids that have disabilities. We have IEPs. We have abilities to, to change the requirements based on an individual's, uh, abilities, based on, uh, physical defects or other things, but there isn't anything in that document that he told us about that requires physical fitness. And I'm assuming that the reason why people want their kids in a class is so they will be physically fit. One other thing is the state, its guidelines, since local boards have the right to establish their own standards, as we've done in the past, and I certainly believe that it's remiss of us if we don't have some requirements for meeting physical fitness standards. We actually did have, the, the study I reported, did have a set of measures of physical fitness that were used that are recognized by the PE department, but we don't require that anyone meet those standards. All we have is a bunch of tests. How far you throw a ball, uh, you know, whether you can jump so high, whether you can lift a weight or not. None of those are required, so if you can't lift a weight, you can't, uh, you know, this test would be, can you pass a written test on physical fitness? Wow.
Okay, Jose. Thank you.
Um, as a formal member of the ROTC, I, I was in ROTC for two years and, um, ROTC is different than PE, and I believe that if we don't allow the ROTC to have the credit as a PE, many of the students are not going to be as engaged in high school as if they were, because they take PE as a class. They don't take it as, uh, family. I know, uh, many of my friends are in ROTC and they're in their sports or their, um, events that they have, and they look up for something. They're always, that's the reason why sometimes they come to school, is just for ROTC, and if they're not meeting those physical standards, then maybe we should just go back to the classes and let them know, you guys need to meet these, um, standards. But what ROTC does is more than just the physical. They is, they does the social part and it just makes leadership and all those, uh, things that students get from ROTC, so I, I think that, um, we just need to go back and have some guidelines.
I vote for credit. What I don't do is I don't like the fact that we're giving credit for physical education for non-physical education things.
Yeah.
Okay, any more board member comments? All right, please vote.
I already did, but he took it away.
Yeah. There you go. Five zero.
It passes five zero. Can you guys wave out there? Thank you. Wake up, everybody. Okay. Item F01. This is the, this is Operation Expectation Monitoring Report, OE six, Financial Administration. Dr. Greer?
Thank you, President Jackson. Uh, as the board knows, each month, you ask the staff and I to provide you with reports on operational, um, expectations for the district, and under each of these expectations, you require that I not allow or cause any financial activities or conditions that materially deviate from the budget adoption by the board, cause or allow any financial conditions that is inconsistent with achieving your goals, or meeting any district's, uh, departmental goals, or place the long-term financial health of the district in jeopardy. Basically, uh, you are, uh, we're here tonight to assure you that certain things are happening in the way we conduct the financial operations of the district. You have been provided with a copy of our operational, uh, reports. James Macias, our chief finance officer, is here to answer any questions that you might have. Uh, as you know, James is new to the district this year. I, I don't tell him often enough, but I want to tell him here publicly in your presence tonight, that I'm very pleased with his performance and we're very lucky to have him here to help us through a very tough financial time. He's a good man.
I think James would say he feels like he's been here 10 years already, though. I agree.
Several of us do, but we still like it. At least 10 years.
Yeah.
Um, this is, requires motion, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm ready.
Want to move?
Sure, uh, the recommendation is compliance with noted exceptions. I'd have to say I agree.
Okay.
I make that motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure thing.
Before he starts, after he's finished? Can he give his presentation first?
Okay, sure.
We're just going to give, uh, just a general statement and then let you ask your questions, because you've had this long enough to read it.
Right. Uh, good afternoon again, uh, board members, President Jackson, Vice President Carrera, Dr. Greer. Uh, what we've done here is, uh, we tried to essentially put together a framework that covered a lot of areas of the district from a financial administration standpoint. So you'll see our pages, they start with OE six, and then we go to 6 dot 1 through items 6 dot 14. Uh, we did cover some very specific areas in procurement, payroll, uh, budgeting, and accounting, and I do have some of my subject matter experts here that could answer questions that I can't answer just because, you know, part of the reason I have a team is so they can manage those very specific functional areas. I will point out that, uh, Mr. DeBeck has already stated, I believe that we're in compliance, uh, but this is a fluid document, in my opinion, as we move through the rest of the year and work towards industry practice, best practices and industry standards, I think this document will be a little bit fluid and will make changes and adjustments. I would like to point out, in my effort to be transparent and accountable, that if you refer to, uh, section 6 dot 12 under page 17, I've already noted some areas that were, uh, what I feel to be a little bit, uh, lacking in compliance, and we've got a plan in place that we're meeting to, if you kind of scroll down a little bit farther, Cheryl, you'll see that item. Keep going.
Page 17?
Yeah, page 17.
Okay.
So I stated down there, actions for compliance. It's at the end of that page, then it goes on to page 18. What we're doing there is taking very specific action to make sure that, uh, we come into compliance. Part of this has to do with our encumbrances at the district and, uh, how we receive financial information, the lag time that we have in receiving it, and how we essentially operate on a monthly basis. So those steps that I have in actions for compliance, I think will get us into compliance. And then I've also got a date on, um, April 28th, the April 28th board meeting. I'll be happy to come back and report to you how successful I am in achieving those areas that I think we're a little bit out of compliance in. So that's the methodology we had, and those are the action steps I've currently got. Thanks.
Dr. Evans?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Macias. I guess on the, the report here, it lists compliance or not in compliance, and maybe we need a basic, proficient, advanced, and, and low basic and so forth to have a little finer discrimination. Um, so I don't want to pick on this too much, but I think on some of these points that you have pointed out already to me, so that's how I know, in terms of there are certain areas of improvement, um, first of all, in 6.2, assure that all purchases are based on comparative prices of similar value. This is all related to the procurement process
That's correct.
And which you have said is very disjointed, uh, in the district, and so it seems like there certainly can be a lot of, uh, improvement there, and that, that goes along with 6.3, the competitive, uh, bidding procedure and so forth. Uh, and, um, so, these are just general topic areas, but I think based on the fact that we know that the district can save a lot more money in its procurement process, and also based on a later point in terms of just the, the reliability of financial information, that when you stepped into it has not been that complete and detailed and accurate, that, uh, it sounds like there's going to be a lot more improvement in that area.
That's correct, and when I talk about, uh, I'm not sure if I used the exact word of disjointed, but part of it has to do with disparate systems and applications we have and essentially, uh, other groups that procure on an annual basis, uh, for the district. And so what our goal is, and working with Terry, he actually has a memo that I've, uh, that I've created for him that I think he's approved, that talks about very specific people of the district that can sign contract information. So as I said earlier, uh, this is a very fluid process for us, and as we work towards aligning towards that industry best practice, uh, there'll be some things in here that we add to our list of additional controls and checks and balances. So, did you have a question, Cheryl? Oh, sorry.
I was just going to, just, just to remind the board that currently in the district, uh, there's a number of people
Just to remind the board that currently in the district, there's a number of people who enter into contracts. We have principals in schools that are signing, sometimes signing contracts with vendors that range from class rings to annuals to perhaps soft drink purchases to a variety of different things. They're purchasing sometimes computers and printers and microscopes and other equipment that they're procuring on their own. And we basically are saying, you've got to stop, that the procurement's going to come through our office, that we have three people that will be able to sign off. And I'll be glad to forward you a copy of the memo that we're sending to not only principals but to all staff. It just brings it back together, puts us in compliance, but as Dr. Evans has pointed out, I think that there's some savings to be had if we operate in a more businesslike manner. We're not trying to take away flexibility from schools. James also knows that as we pull our procurement department together, we also want to make sure that we respond in an efficient way, so that if someone wants to purchase something, it doesn't take five months to do it. We don't even want it to take five weeks. We want it to be able to go through the bid process or buy off of approved state contract list. And we want to make sure that schools don't have to wait a long time for the equipment or materials they need. But the way we're operating right now is not, we don't think, an efficient way. May be effective for some people, but it's certainly not efficient.
So, for example, you folks essentially adopted a board resolution back in June last year that has three specific people, and that would be the chief logistics officer, the chief financial officer, and the director of business support services. So what we're doing with that memo is providing a reminder to people to say officially, these are the three people that the board and under the direction of the superintendent has authorized to essentially have signatory authority on signing agreements for us. So what we'll do behind the scenes for a while is we'll work out the internal processes to try to make it as streamlined and as efficient as we possibly can. Because my goal isn't to essentially add some more bureaucracy to the process, it's really to streamline and get efficient. And part of my solution on page 17 and 18 really leverages the relationship I have with Daryl Lagace in bringing the right systems and applications together, so we can be very efficient to make sure that it doesn't take us five weeks, six weeks, eight weeks to get these things in the pipeline and order for our school system.
And also on 6.6, the superintendent will keep complete and accurate financial records by the funds and accounts in accordance with government accounting principles, which is in compliance. My concern is that we just add to that, that these financial statements or records are presented such a manner that they are ineligible to the average board member who is not an accountant.
Yes.
And also for the general public, so they can really understand where our money is going. And I think the technology piece is going to be a big part of that.
Right. And I absolutely agree with you, Dr. Evans. And so, one of the things what we're trying to do is, we're working with the budget book that essentially the past board members essentially put together. And so that's one of our ways of communicating to non-finance people, hopefully an easy-to-understand guide or framework that talks about where all of our monies are.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. We stop them.
Yeah. Well, James, you know what I'm going to say, and that has to do with not only board members, but principals, and those principals that you're talking about that are ordering, you know, things on their own, but giving them a budget that they can actually read, which is, again, I'm sure you're working on in tandem with Mr. Lagace, who has to have the most mispronounced name in the district at this point, I think. No, it's not just, I don't, you know... Daryl, you're going to have to stand up at least once every board meeting and pronounce your name for us. But how far along are we on that? Because to me, it's for the departments and the principals, you know, holding people accountable if you're giving them a document that they can't read. We discussed this somewhat this morning.
Sure.
But it seems, you know, very pertinent now.
Sure. I would say we're 80% complete on the format and the content of the financial reports. So like I said, I've been working on this for about three and a half, four months now with everything else we do. And so what we did is we put together some financial information, just based on my background, that I thought would be a baseline for us. And over the past several months, what we've done is met with our superintendent, met with our deputy superintendent, and a lot of the chiefs and operating heads and school principals to talk about. The information that we present to you, where are we disconnected and where are we actually hitting the mark?
I think that that is, as you're gathering board members' comments, and as we review what these, our operational expectations are in the next month or two, I think we need to make sure we add that explicitly into the list.
Sure.
That those two concerns be addressed.
And I will say, part of the reason why I say we're 80% complete, it's that, in my opinion, working with Daryl, I think we need to essentially develop what that centralized data repository is going to be. And Daryl can speak to that a lot better than I can. I just know that I really am supporting him to make sure that I'm able to pull data out as quickly and as factually as possible.
Well, sure, I mean, for you, it's on large scale, but I'm thinking of the individual principal, you know, it's with, you know, advent of Quicken, you know, home accounting for all of us, you know, it's difficult to understand why we can't get reports or have a series of reports that principals could design for themselves that had a few moving parts to them, that, you know, that they could move columns or whatever, decide what it is that they would find useful to have in a budget report. Certain elements they have to have, but it's time. It's just time. So like this morning, I want to make sure I cover that with you again.
Gotcha. And as a side note, I just want you folks to know that I have committed, under Terry's guidance, to meet with every one of our school principals for the rest of this year, and it's probably going to take me to meet into about October of the next school year. That way I have a clear understanding of what's important to them from a financial perspective. Part of that discussion will be, how do you have to see the information going forward that'll make it easy and more acceptable for you to really manage your school site budget?
Excellent. Okay. Let me remind the board that our policy provides three criteria against which we are to judge this report. The criteria are whether the board is satisfied that the policy has been reasonably interpreted, the district and the superintendent are in compliance with the provisions of the policy, or has disclosed procedures to establish compliance, the information is sufficient to allow the board to decide. If there's no more board comments, then we can vote. Okay. We spoke...
So the vote for it is that we find it in compliance?
That you find it in compliance.
With noted exceptions.
With noted exceptions. With noted exceptions. Okay.
Okay, that passes five zero. The next item up is item FO2, Operation Expectation Monitoring Report, OE10 Instructional Program. Dr. Greer?
Thank you, President Jackson. This is a similar report. Both of these reports were due back in December. We were working very hard on the budget, as you know. We had very full agendas, and the staff just simply decided to delay them to let you get through some of those hard times. Dr. Chuck Morris is here, who's our deputy superintendent that's in charge of our curriculum division. And Chuck is here to answer any questions that you have. Again, we're presenting this report to you tonight. It's noted that we are in compliance with noted exceptions. And since this is the first year we are operating, it takes some time and energy to try to get all of our departments in total compliance, and you know that. We're not making excuses, but I think we've done a good job being very transparent about where we are and what we need to do to get where we are when we've come up short in some of these areas. So Chuck is here. There's five key areas, A, B, C, D, and E, for you to review and to ask questions about this particular monitoring report.
President Jackson, Vice President Carrera, board members, Dr. Greer. First thing I wanted to say to you about this program, in terms of putting this OE together, the process was, for us, extremely enlightening. I want to just, all of them are here, but the folks that helped work on this crossed all lines of the district. And I would like the folks in the audience who had anything to do with this just to raise their hand, so you can see the number of people in the areas that were involved in the total process. We actually worked on this for many days. And as you can see by the report, it goes from school boundaries to curriculum to alignment to technology. First, I'd like to just say that the expectations don't go in numerical order, but we have placed them by themes. And what we looked at was research-based practices, monitoring evaluation of instructional programs, standards, curriculum, instruction, assessment alignment, addressing the needs of students, instructional day and year, textbooks and instructional materials, internet access, and school boundaries. I want to say to you that we are asking for a vote of in compliance with exceptions. Five of those indicators out of 15, we have said we're not in compliance. And I will just talk about those for a few minutes and then take questions. I will also say that in front of you, you did get a list of answers to some questions that we got this afternoon.
Thank you very much.
And we were diligently trying to answer those. They're not in a polished form, so you'll have to excuse that, but we did try to get those done. I want to talk about the areas of evaluation in terms of new and innovative programs and ongoing instructional programs. That's where we firmly believe that we're not in compliance in the district. We do a lot of good things. The one thing we don't do, and I think it's traditional in education circles, is we will put a new program in, and I know Mr. DeBeck is very specific about this every time I come forward, and we don't have an evaluation plan, and we don't always review that at the end of the year. I will say to you that at this point, in any new program we bring forward, we're going to make sure that our evaluation department has a plan of evaluation, and that we will be able to give you some indication of those results. I think the other area we're not in compliance is, we sometimes will continue to do programs for years and never truly evaluate whether having any success. We know that that's a long-term process that we need to begin to look at for all programs. For instance, out of this work, we have now done a survey of all the intervention programs that are in our district in terms of the numbers of intervention programs and the numbers of the schools are in. That's important because, well, we want to see if it's working in the schools, because they may have some great programs out there. But the bottom line is, if we don't know if they're working, we don't know whether to emulate them. And if they're not working, then we need to do something else, because our whole goal is to make sure that our students are achieving. So those are two areas that we're not in compliance in. The other one was very specific. It directly related to learning styles of students. I actually want to broaden that and say, learning styles in terms of are we offering different ways for students to learn? So one of the things that we're going to do is we're going to look at, and we are going to be very focused in our staff development. Too often in a district, we will have, well, we've got 14 staff developments, and please come, and if you get to training, it's okay. We're putting together a committee and a task force that consists of teachers, members of the SDEA, our staff, to plan a staff development next year that everybody agrees will have the most impact across the district. And the goal is not to have one or two people trained. It is if we think it's important to get all of those people trained who need to. Now, the one thing we don't want to do is to require people to come for training if they've already done it and they've had it. So what we're wanting to do is to make the most of our resources, but to focus those, so that what we're going to do is present a plan to you over the next three or four years that'll say, this is what we want to do this year, this is what we want to do the second year, the third year, and the fourth year. And much of this is going to revolve around RTI, which is exactly what we're, the...
RTI.
Exceptional Special Ed Program is putting in place. Because what they're wanting to do for special education children is exactly what ought to be done for all children. So we're incorporating that and working very strongly with them in terms of developing it. We'll be combining our resources to be able to make that happen. The other thing that we had concerns about that came out was the instructional day, and if we're using our time wisely, what are the protocols in the schools that may not allow for the amount of instructional time that we're doing? And also the year. As you're well aware, we have some year-round schools. Year-round schools outside of facilities issues, which I think were first used in San Diego in the beginning, are supposed to actually add additional time for students during intercessions. And we actually have no intercessions now with exception of one school. So we've got to get back to the fact, if we're going to have year-round schools, then we need to look at those, that time that they have, so we can extend the year for those students. And then we need to look at our other schools that have a need and begin to extend the time for those students. So a lot of issues and a lot of things we're going to work for, but we're not ashamed of the non-compliance. We just know we've got to work hard to make those things better and the plan around it. One thing that came out of this, and I said to the group, and I have to tell you, I did very little of this work. All that work sits back here. I'm just standing up here. Everybody could be standing behind me. But the one thing that we all came to conclusion, this becomes our action plan in terms of the things we need to do in the district to increase student achievement. So it's not going to go on the desk or in the book. It does become our action. Be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Let me read our official statement. The policy standard for accepting these operational expectations monitoring reports per Board Superintendent Relationship Policy 5 is that it is the board's responsibility to consider the report as evidence of the district's performance in this area of operations. Following a motion to accept the monitoring report, Operations 10 Instructional Program, I invite any member of the board who has questions and or comments about the report to do so at this time to the superintendent or his designate. Let me remind the board that our policy provides three criteria for which we are to judge this report. The criteria are, the policy has been recently interpreted, the district and superintendent are in compliance with the provisions of the policy, and has disclosed procedures to establish compliance, and the information is sufficient to allow the board to decide. I would encourage the members to limit their questions and comments to these criteria. Do I have a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
That's right.
It's moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Mr. DeBeck, then Mr. Carrera.
Oh, boy. Well...
I've got a whole crew behind me, so I may ask them to come up.
You're awesome. You guys are good, but there are always issues. This is our business. And if our business was perfect, we wouldn't have to ask questions.
Right.
I want to thank you for the work, and I know how hard it is. There's a tension in our district, and it's been running on and on for years, and I've got to say it, a tension between standards and results. I mentioned it just a minute ago when I talked about physical education, and I could do the same thing with almost every single curriculum piece that we've got. And the tension is best exemplified by the fact that we have kids that are in some given place, let's pick a grade, the seventh or eighth grade, or maybe even the 10th, who are far below basic in the subject matter, but never have shown that way, and we just say we have a standards-based curriculum. So that issue of whether the, and it's here in your, you know, relating the standards with the assessment is a critical part of what you do. And for me, you know, I hear it regularly. I remember when I was teaching, I had the same feeling. I would be teaching a high school math class, and I'd wonder why the kids couldn't borrow or carry. You know, I mean, you know, and so I had to teach it. I was accountable for different things than that, but, you know, I still had to meet those basic needs. But there are a lot of kids who's, and I don't even say they slipped through the crack. I think we just ignore the crack and let them go through, and then it becomes a complicated problem for us to resolve. So I've got to say, the connection between what we teach and the standards is a huge gap that has not been addressed for the whole 20 years I've been here, and I hope that you get around to it, at least part of it. The other one is, there's in here, one of the operational expectations is that you would, it says annually review school boundaries. That's not been done in the 20 years I've been here, and I don't know if it's been done this year. In other words, it says, in order to balance the schools. We just recently had a study of small schools, but they didn't study the boundaries.
But I would tell you that Roy McFail and Bill Cove and I had this discussion last week, and we are actually putting together a review of those boundaries and some suggestions to bring to you to change some of those boundaries.
So that's why we've got a qualification on this, doesn't it?
That's right.
We've got work to do. Okay, I'm going to stop at that. I think I would agree that we have work to do, and it's probably a lot more than we probably can accomplish right away. But I certainly want us to address some of it in a hurry, and I think standards are the first part of it. If you have a curriculum, and you say it's standard base, and you have a standard base report card, and kids are getting through the system, not meeting the standards for the next level, I don't know what we're, what's our business? That's our whole thing we do, is to get the kids somewhere that we can define, and we're not.
Okay. Mr. Carrera, please.
Yeah. Chuck, just a couple of...
Yeah, Chuck, just a couple of questions, because you touched on these. But in item 10, the instructional day and year, you talked about it a little bit, but what I don't see in the report in terms of, you know, strategies to, you know, to improve is much in the way of, you know, potentially lengthening the school year, you know, particularly in schools with a high number of English language learners. I know I was out at Chavez Elementary last week, and the parents talked a lot about the lack of, you know, academic programs now during intercession, which you addressed. So is that, is that, you know, something that-
That's absolutely something we're focusing on, and many of the schools that you're talking about, as you well know, are Title I schools.
Yeah.
And there's an agenda item on here later that we'll get to, talking about the possible, possibly new Title I funds.
Yeah.
Those Title I funds will come to the district in a block grant. We could decide soon to spread them out to schools on a per pupil basis, or we could look at those funds as a possibility to do a variety of things, which would include some money for intercessions in our most needy schools or elongated school years or school days. And so that's something that we are looking at right now, and James and his staff are working with Chuck, and we're trying to determine how much would it cost, for example, for us to go to 190-day school year or a 200-day school year for schools where we had both high concentrations of poverty and particularly schools where we have high concentrations of children who do not speak English as their first language. That is a huge priority for me as superintendent, for Chuck, and for our staff. We understand that the final decision is a board decision.
Yeah.
But we're going to make a hard pitch when it comes to those dollars, so.
And to follow up on that, we have actually managed to have some Title I dollars that we are now looking at in terms of providing summer school at first, third, fifth, and at the elementary level, which we did not do last year for our Title I schools, but also in terms of how can we do that with technology in, across our entire summer program? We know that in many cases, if you're an ELL student, you may leave school in June and not speak English until you come back, and that is, we know that that's not appropriate. And you may be a student who, during the summer, who reads pretty well, but he loses it. So we've got to maintain what those students have learned, so they don't get behind coming in. So Dr. Perera, that is a major focus for us. How can we provide those interventions during the summer?
Great. Just a couple more questions. On the, the issue of making sure that the instructional program addresses individual learning styles, what's the, sort of the discussion amongst staff right now about, you know, making use of online curriculum that might be tailored, you know, to particular learning styles and-
It's nice that you should ask that question, because that'll just lead into the rest, some things that are going to happen on the 24th. We're actually looking at piloting some online intervention programs for students that are web-based, which means they can do them at school, they can do them at home. We've even, we're even looking in, going into churches and saying, do you know, do you have a computer lab that kids can come to, so that the students have a different learning style, method of learning in terms of what they're doing? And we're going to expand that. We're looking, and we're going to bring all this to you. We're looking at summer school where students don't even have to come to the school to do summer school. They can do it at home, but they do have to come and take the final test in front of the teacher. You know, we're going to take advantage of the technology that's out there to try to reach as many students as possible. And so we're looking at all that, and Daryl's name's come up over and over again, and I'm just going to say it, because Terry said it about James, you've got the best technology person, not in the state of California, in the state in the entire United States, and I've been around a bunch of them.
Don't say that on television. Headhunters are out there.
Because he centers, he centers around student, it's student instruction, and you don't often find that. But working closely with him, we're in the process of looking at a new way of doing assessments, doing online work in terms of student interventions, and you're going to see some great things happen in the next six months. And we've got dibs on the construction money if it comes in from the federal government. Just tell you that now.
All right. Great. And then, just sorry, just the last, you know, issue is in terms of, at the high school level, connecting students to, you know, internships, real-world opportunities, and then connecting sort of, you know, their academic work with what they're doing out in the real world. Is that, is that something-
The multiple pathways plan that they're currently working on, we're doing, we're doing a lot of that now.
Yeah.
Once we get into that multiple pathways, you're going to see a lot more of that take place, because a lot of that's going to be built on apprenticeships, internships. The biggest, the biggest stumbling block we have in the high schools is we've got to break the traditions.
Yeah.
We've got to break that traditional schedule. We've got to break the fact that a freshman coming in has to take four core subjects when they're not ready to take but two. So there's a lot of things at the high school we're going to have to work on in terms of breaking how high school looks. And all of that is part of the internships and apprenticeships and the multiple pathways, which for us is going to end up being A to G default.
And the A to G default curriculum, just for the board members, just real quick, I want everybody to not lose sight of the fact that when we move there, and we're going to be proposing that we move there probably much quicker than a lot of people realize, but when that happens, students that traditionally have not taken certain academic courses will now be taking those courses, which will mean that they won't be taking something else. So when they don't take something else, you won't need that elective teacher. You'll need a teacher that's certified in a different area. So we're going to have to transition and work through that, but we don't need to lose sight of it, because it's going to be a challenge for us. It's a challenge everywhere you move to that A to G curriculum, but it's a challenge well worth to take.
We'll discuss that. Dr. Evans, Davis Takamura.
Okay. First of all, I just really want to thank you for this, this report, and I really appreciate the honesty in all of it in terms of showing where, where we are in compliance and where we are not in compliance, and what you're really, the work you're doing to really, to move us forward. So just one, one brief comment in terms of the issue of, and I know Dr. Gurr mentioned this too, in terms of increased instructional time as a possibility in some particular schools as far as having a longer day or 10 extra days in the school year. This kind of comes down to the quality and quantity issue, but I, for example, we've seen charter schools that have said, we have a longer day, we have a longer school year, and we are producing these better results. But the better, those better results are not just based on a longer day and a longer school year, it's also based on the way that they are teaching them. So I just want to know that, you know, if there is something about an extended period of time, that there is something different about the way that students would be taught that would really produce some results, as opposed to just saying, you know, your summer vacation has been postponed by two weeks.
Well, and I think that's one of the reasons we're looking at summer school so closely. And I know it's never happened here in San Diego, but in most cases in other places, summer school is about seat time. Well, it won't be about seat time in San Diego this summer, because we're actually developing pre and post-test for summer school. And if you don't pass, you're not going to get credit for that course. You can't come in and spend six weeks and expect to pass to do that. That's true not only of summer school, it's true of our entire programs. Our SIOs, I think, are doing a fantastic job. They're out there looking. I mean, I go out and I visit in schools, don't get in as many as I really have planned to, but I mean, when I walk in and I find a teacher that I don't think's teaching, and they do the same thing, we don't walk out the door and go, we'll come back and go, oh, what happened? We go to the principal and we go, when I come back, I want to see something happening different in that classroom. And that means get him help and get him support. And I mean, that happened to me at the beginning of the year, and I follow up with that teacher, just not me, I'm just using myself as an example, two or three times to find out where they're going. And the last time I followed up, the principal said to me, we've done everything we can, but I'm not sure this is going to work. But, but it's about raising expectations and raising standards and making sure that we follow through. And that's probably more than you want to hear, but, but that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Takamura?
Yes. First of all, I think it's unfortunate that this report really does not capture everything. As comprehensive as this is, does not capture every corner of what you do. I know how hard all those people who raise their hands out there work, and are often unsung heroes. But in particular, getting back to Daryl again, who is for me a real pivot point within the district, Mr. Lagasse, Lagasse, excuse me. See? I'm just hopeless. But the electronic transcript that we've been working on, I know that we've got the standard-based report card, we have OE 10C4 effectively measure each student's progress towards achieving and exceeding standards. Is this where you would capture that electronic transcript that you've been working on?
The elec-
Daryl. I know, I know. We're trying not to do it too much.
Well, certainly the electronic transcript is capable of capturing and telling parents and students where they're short in their credits and what they need to graduate. And so we can use this tool not only as a planning tool going for kids coming into summer school, but then as they, they take and make up those courses, that information is updated on that transcript in real time as the coursework is entered into Zangle.
And this is something they can download themselves? That they're going to be able to, you think?
Currently, they're, they're being printed at the school sites.
Okay, okay.
But where, Dr. Gurr pointed out some, a technology and a company that actually can take now this, now that we have the data and we're actually tracking it correctly, we can now move it possibly to a company that can actually authenticate it, transition it across the web.
Okay, great. I just, I had another couple of comments before we go, and I think that's very important for our kids, that they have access to that information in real time. But regarding summer school and the A to G requirements, you know, our move towards A to G, we've had this conversation before, and, you know, I gave the board, my colleagues, and I know you've read it as well, Dr. Gurr, a copy of the book Outliers, which basically, you know, supports the concept that people are successful because they're unique, not because they are cookie cutters of everyone else. And I'm a little worried with A to G about the loss of electives. I'd like to point out that during summer school, and I know this is a pipe dream, Dr. Morris, but when I had to take algebra over again in the summer, because Janet and I spent the entire year passing notes back and forth to each other instead of doing polynomials, you know, there was also a class that I was able to take photography. There were interesting electives that were sort of offered in during the summertime that made it, you know, much more interesting than just taking that dreaded class that you didn't pass the first time and that you had no idea why you needed anyway. Is there any way of bringing electives back into summer school where, you know, they're, they're interesting, and we get a chance to maybe recapture some of those electives that we might lose through A to G?
What we're hoping to do with our elective offerings is to look at our virtual high school as an opportunity to offer electives to students. The curriculum that we're using through Apex Learning does have a rich variety of electives that are not just core courses. There's always opportunities to do that. I think what happens to us is trying to figure out how you pay for it.
Yeah.
If we're going to do core courses, we feel like the district should pay for it, particularly if it's courses that children have failed. If it's a course that is an elective, then you get into this issue, well, do we charge for it? And then if you say yes, then we say, well, does that exclude some kids who couldn't afford it? So the virtual approach, I think, has a little more promise in terms of cost effectiveness. So that's something we'll look at for sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Just a couple of comments. And first of all, thank you very much and to your staff. The questions that I just gave you, I'm sorry I was delayed in getting those to you, and I'm glad the answers came back fairly, fairly quickly, and, and, thank you very much. And I just wanted to comment that, yes, this is a good report, but you know that the crux of this is a follow-up and a monitoring, because I know how well our, nothing wrong, staff, how well people can write reports. The question is implementing them and getting the job done. And I think that, you know, that the board will be looking at you and the staff to ensure that that actually does happen. Also with that, please vote. Okay, that passes 5-0. Thank you. The next item is GO1, which is information reports. We're going to start with women reports. Mr. DeBeck, you up first, and we'll go this way tonight. So then you want to share real briefly?
Well, I think I'll just pass.
Okay.
Yeah, just very briefly, we had our second meeting of our food stamps working group that Runa Romanathan is, is leading for us at the district, and that includes people from, from, you know, a variety of community-based organizations. And I think we're getting ready in at least a few target schools to launch something this year where we're going to, you know, make an effort to do, you know, to increase the enrollment of our families that, you know, whose kids qualify for free and reduced meals into the food stamps program. And there's a lot of possibility about working on a, on a single application that can enroll families at the same time in free and reduced lunch, food stamps, and Medi-Cal. And it's something that Alameda County is actually starting to model, but I think, you know, if we could, if we could work with our county government to do that-
Figure it out.
I think that it's, it's going to be tremendous help to our families, and it also actually can increase revenue back to, to the district. So we're pushing forward with that, and I think we're going to see something pretty exciting this year, actually.
Okay, Takamura?
You know, in the interest of time and all the people who are sitting out there, I think I'm just going to pass.
Okay. Mr. Evans?
All right, now I've got a lot of time. First of all, I, just before this, I want to make a public service announcement, which is, since we did change the meeting time to 5 o'clock, the televised time is less, so that people are watching on TV, and it ends at 8 o'clock, that is available live on, on the internet at sandy.net, S-A-N-D-I dot net, so that people will be able to continue to follow, because a lot of the good stuff happens after it goes off the air on TV. And don't, just another little comment, don't believe everything you see on TV or read in the papers. Just for example, I just want to publicly state that in terms of the Proposition S bond measure and the projects that we are developing, that I am in favor of both union and non-union workers being able to participate on those contracts. I know there's been a lot of propaganda and publicity to the contrary. We want to have a, a program that gets our, our projects done on budget, on time, that includes a lot of San Diego workers, and it also provides apprenticeship opportunities for our, for our local youth. So I just want to be really clear about that. Now, what we have been working on, one of the things in a recent budget workshop, we started talking about long-term goals, and we'll be talking about this more. I brought up about the year 2020, which is the year that our current first graders will be graduating from high school, and we need to develop a vision of what we want our schools to be like between now and the time our first graders graduate, and then break that down into a smaller scale in terms of the current crisis that we're dealing with right now. And to do that, we need to reach out in two directions. One is our lobbying efforts, both in Sacramento and in Washington, and I think Mrs. Jackson will be talking a little bit about that, but we certainly have been lobbying a lot with the state and the federal government in terms of flexibility for the different types of funds that we receive, and also for some modifications in the No Child Left Behind program. The other part is reaching out to the community, and this is also a very important part. In my district, I will be meeting with the various communities, talking about our neighborhood schools, how we want them to develop between now and the year 2020. This is a long-range vision, but we need to have input from everybody in the community. And so I just want to let you know that we will be having the first meeting for the Claremont community, which will be both the Claremont and the Madison clusters, on February 23rd, and the time and place will be announced, but most likely be at 4:30 at Claremont High School. On March 2nd, we'll be having a meeting in Miramasa at the Miramasa Town Council, where the entire community can attend that, at the Miramasa Library at 7:00 PM on March 2nd. And then we tentatively have set up for a meeting in University City on March 9th. So these are different ways that we're reaching out to the community and getting your input on what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll try and be very brief tonight, but Mr. Evans and myself in Washington, we did a lot of lobbying, because the stimulus package is very, very important to San Diego to fight. Initial price tag for us to receive was $120 million, and we lobbied all of our elected officials from this area. They were all very positive. But we need to, and they know that I got pretty heated at times, and, and I'm glad that Bernie was there to kind of keep me in line. But we have to understand that all of the things that we're doing right now, stimulus- package, the bailouts for the banks, and auto industry, are on the backs of the students that are sitting out here in the audience and in our classrooms. And they, we owe it to them. We owe it to them to advocate, to make sure that they're willing to spend the money to make sure our students are educated and have the skills to pay off this debt. So, this is very serious for us, and I think tonight we have something for you to call them and remind them to pass this legislation to help us. But in addition to the big three, the stimulus package, we also talk about Medicaid Fund, and our district gets reimbursed for Medicaid Fund to the tune of almost $2 million, and that's very, very important. Another issue that was a hot topic for us to discuss was pre-K, and that it is very, very important to ensure the success of our students by having a strong preschool program. And as we left, we left them with a couple of things. Number one, we told them facilitate, don't dictate. So, we want them to be involved in getting, helping our schools, but not to tell us exactly what to do. And part of the package was for, to provide facilities funding for shovel-ready programs. So, I gave them all a little shovel and told them that we had lots of programs ready just to start breaking the ground and building them up. So, it was a very, very informative and very enlightening trip. I think that we will get some funds from other sources, extended day maybe, and some food service money from other areas that we met with and talked with, some good relationships there. But overall, in all, it was a great opportunity for us. The next item on the agenda is approval of the regular meetings, August 5th, September 9th, September 23rd, '08, and special meetings, September 22nd, September 29th, October 13th, 2008.
Can I make a motion to move the entire consent agenda?
Oh, you got it.
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's a motion to move the entire board consent agenda. It's been moved in second. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, please vote. Okay. Next, we have the superintendent's consent agenda. Action by the Board of Education in-
We just did it.
No, we just did our consent agenda.
No, it's the superintendent's.
Yes, we did all of them.
Yeah, we did the whole, all in one swoop.
We did all of the GO1, GO2, three and four. Okay. Now, we're going to superintendent's agendas. Action by the Board of Education on Section H. At this point, the agenda means that all the items appearing in Section H are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board or superintendent requests that such items be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Generally, consent items are matters which members of the board and superintendent concur are routine in nature and should be acted upon in one motion to conserve time and permit focus on other than routine matters on this agenda. In addition to items H-13, H-46, H-49, H-51, which were pulled by the staff-
Drawn.
Are there any other changes to the consent agenda, Ms. Ward? Okay? We have provided public testimony for consent items, we have-
I'd also like to withdraw.
I'm going to do the active public speaks. Okay. Lance Wren would like to speak on H-01. Mike Lane on H-11, and Mike Lance, I'm sorry, Mike Lance on H-50. Could you please come forward and speak?
Hello, my name is Lance Wren. I am the CSCA Vice President Custodial. 4166 Euclid Avenue is my school. Item H-01, number six, is for a training quality assurance specialist who will be paid $78,000 a year. I am confused as to how the district can fund a training specialist when we are looking at a $33 million budget crisis this year and a $63 million budget crisis next year. Last June, when the former board voted to approve physical operations, plan, physical plan operations, reorganization, we supported the plan, because we were offered positions that would have reduced the amount of hourly workers in the custodial department. I have in my hand a memorandum from the district's chief logistics officer dated July 9th, 2008. Page three describes a substitute pool of full-time custodians to augment and eventually replace the existing hourly caretaker pool. This was never done and will never be done, because the Director of Labor Relations opposes the move to reduce hourly positions in all departments. What was offered to help workers become full-time employees was taken off the table. After that proposal was taken away, we were offered 20 relief custodial positions. That was reduced to 13 positions. Now, because of the district's financial crisis, those positions are also off the table. But positions of management such as custodial services program supervisor, custodial services supervisor, and now, a management-level training specialist are being considered, all with raises for the candidates who get those positions. Supervisions gets new vans, new positions with built-in raises. What does Rosie get, who's cleaning restrooms at my school at this moment? Will she get a raise this year, next year, or ever? What she does have are worries over higher bills, worries over next year's proposed layoffs. We do need training in custodial to help custodians pass tests and become building services supervisors. But are we able to afford it when there may be reductions? Will the training specialist have a staff to train workers? No, we will not, we will not be able to afford it this year or next year. A training specialist at almost $80,000 a year to do what? We say no to new positions we can't afford, no to raises for supervision. We no longer support a plan that does nothing for the workers in this district and everything for supervision. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Mike Lance. I work, I work at the supply warehouse. I reside at 23, I'm sorry, try to give my work address, 9236 Lake Hill in Santee. Tonight, I'd like to speak on two different issues. I'd like to start with the H-11, which is the authorization of the purchase of office and classroom supplies from Office Depot. I am a little concerned that we are not doing what Mr. DeBecque said one evening, he says, and some of the other board members came out, says, are we rubber stamping every one of our deals? Are we going with Office Depot each time and stamping? Are we putting these out to bid? Because we are in the driver's seat now as far as costs of supplies and everything. I come before this board before, talking about purchasing paper supplies, and at one time, we did have paper in our warehouse, and these were large-volume items, which we used a great deal of. I don't see us saving any money by going to an outside vendor when we could go direct, and I'd like to see somebody doing some cost-effectiveness and looking at how that could come about. Some of these large items, we've had paper towels, those type of things, custodians use a great deal, that we used to supply in the warehouse. We don't do this any longer. We let it go out and let the, we're at the mercy of all these vendors to go ahead and charge us the quite large prices on these type of items. I'd like to see some of that material, I'm not saying all the material, but I'm saying some of the material come back, and that's something I'd like to see some kind of a report brought back to you, because I think it's very important that we see that. I know that also it talks about the way we purchase on this contract that the LA has. It talks about in the contract, it talks about how we are to be doing our purchases. And a part of it, on 6.0, the method of purchasing invoices and payments, it talks about purchase orders. Now, we have a thing we call Direct Connect right now in the district. I have a real concern with that. Since I work directly with material that's coming through the warehouse, I am a senior stock clerk, I receive material all day long and pass it out to the schools and everything. I see this stuff. With a Direct Connect situation, we pay before we get. I've never paid somebody for a job I've never received, and I don't see how this board can allow that to happen to where we pay for material we haven't received yet. It's automatically, it goes through the council payable, the bill gets paid, and we haven't even got it. Sometimes we get partials, and some schools are so busy out there that they don't get the other half. They may order 10, they get five, and then they feel, well, it's been paid off. The vendor, he doesn't necessarily do it necessarily on purpose, but they think, oh, we've been paid for that, it's all done, it's a done deal, it's all been taken care of. But they had the other five on back order, they had to get it taken care of.
Item H-50, please.
Okay, H-50. H-50, I'd like to talk to, I guess I'm asking more questions on this more than anything else this evening, is regarding how, how many times have we come up here and had things that have been overlooked? Now, this thing talks about a drinking fountain is required in the playground area. However, it was omitted in the construction documents. It was omitted? I mean, it's required. I don't see how it could be missed on something on a construction. Then to turn around and say, okay, well, now, the drinking fountain can be installed, but it goes on to say that due to a prior scheduling, the district in-house could not do it. So, we have to go out, and here we go, outsourcing again. And we pay a contractor just $6,800. And that fund, those funds are coming out of, and says, later on, of course, you could read it too, it says, "School districts may be adjusted amounts of the $72,400 effective January 1st on the lease of purchase of equipment, materials, supplies, or services," which do not constitute a public project. So, this is not going to be out for a public project, must be bid if the total expenditures, labor, materials exceed $15,000 under Public Contract Code. Now, that was taken out of, that money was taken out of the equipment, materials, supplies, and services. I can't tell you what our equipment looks like at the warehouse. Just come up and visit us sometimes and see how bad and how bad we need supplies to go ahead and do our job. I'm working off a chopping block that was used in a kitchen as my desk, and if you saw the furniture and type of things and equipment that we use, it's pretty bad. I would like to see some, that money be used for something where we could have equipment like forklifts, power jacks, that type of thing, which we get a few once in a while, but we need this required equipment, and other departments do need supplies. I'm not just saying us. And I think that $6,800 could have been used for something a little better, and we could have done it in-house if we really would have used our head and not let it get by. I'm a little concerned about things like that. And we're also voting on this tonight, I guess you're getting this brought before you, and it says, "Ratification of agreement effective December 19, 2008 through January 4th." It's a done deal. It's already done. Now, it's coming before you to be ratified?
Yes.
I, I don't know why we always get these things after the fact all the time, and we, you guys have talked about this before. You're making, you're saying, okay, yes, we'll spend the money. It's done. Everything's always done first and then comes to you. I think it should come to you first, get approval, then get done. Thank you very much.
I think we agree. Thank you. Does any board member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Dr. Evans?
Yes. H-06 and H-11.
H-06 on page 11? Anyone else?
H-06 and H-11.
Oh, H-06 and H-11, okay. I would like to remove H-01, item six, H-16, and H-47. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the other items, please?
I so moved.
Okay, move in second, that all the other items be approved? Please vote. Dr. Evans, item H-11 and H-06.
We're on H-06?
H-06 first, I'm sorry.
H-06. All right, this is just for clarification, it's $400,000 for science equipment, and I just wanted a clarification, how this fits into the, I think they certainly could be very useful equipment, but just want to check with the superintendent how this fits with the current spending freeze.
I'm looking around to see if I can find Dr. Morris. I thought he was in here.
He ran.
He's there. He's over in the, up against the wall-
Oh, there he is.
-on the left, trying to hide.
Oh, I see. Chuck, do you know much about the science equipment?
No.
No, he does not. We will check and let you know. I'll be frank with you, I don't know. I saw it on here. I just assumed it was part of our science renewal kits, and we have science renewal kits in all of our schools. If you look at our science test scores in this district compared to the others in the county and the others in the state, we do quite well, and that's been part of the big strategy for our program, and I see Art getting up and coming up here. Maybe that'll be the answer for us.
I don't know if these are our science kits.
They just look like science kits.
What I just asked Art was, this is science, this is a contract, so when the schools want beakers, when they need things to be able to fill their labs, it's the opportunity to be able to do those. It's for instruction, but I'll let him give you more.
So, this is not science kits and art?
This is not, this is not the science kits. This is a two-year contract, and what we're asking for is that amount of spending authorization. When there are needs in schools to purchase supplies from this company, then we have the ability to do that.
Mr. DeBecque?
These are like standard equipments that you have a master contract that has been negotiated by some other district, and then we're just tagging on to it to save money.
Yes, we are. In fact, this contract is better than the existing contract the board approved earlier. As you can see in the item, we have additional discounts and rebates to us that will be more advantageous to us.
And the amount is up to the amount, and that's an estimate based on what you think the needs might be.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Sockamara?
You know, I get continual complaints from science teachers that they don't have enough beakers and all those sorts of things, so they can go out and buy these now? Just, you know, how would they, how would a poor science teacher in a school-
This is, this is the contract that we will do business with this company. This is where we will buy science supplies and equipment, because Art's been able to define this contract that was negotiated by another school district, and we're able to tag on to it, which means that we get it at the same price that they did.
That's correct.
So, when a teacher in Scripture Ranch High School needs a beaker and the department head approves it, the principal approves it, this is where we will purchase it from. I think this comes back to what James was talking about earlier, by consolidating our purchasing power and trying to buy things cheaper.
Okay, so, this is an alert to, are we still on the air, science teachers out there? We have a contract for you. You can actually get this stuff.
Mr. Evans, are you satisfied with the answer?
Yes.
You want to move this item?
I move we adopt this item.
Second.
Second, H-06. Please vote. Okay. Passes five zero. You had item H-11 as well?
Yes, item H-11 is the purchase of office and classroom supplies from Office Depot using the County of Los Angeles agreement. This was just to clarify, it's $3 million. It was to, did we piggyback on to Los Angeles County contract and therefore got a better discount?
We did, but issue coming up, I have questions too, because this is only for six months.
Right. Okay. Then the other, the other question I have, I mean, there's a mention about the back-to-school rebate program, which is $2,800. I'm just wondering, if you're spending about $3 million, that comes out to less than one tenth of 1% of bonus items, that's not very impressive.
Let me just quickly address the first question about how that, spending the money or not. So, what we're doing with our mid-year spending freeze, each operating department in school sites require to kind of put together a program plan for the rest of the year, and on an almost daily basis, Dr. Morris and I review all those items for applicability and do they match the goals and objectives, and are we making sure that we're tightening how much money we're going to spend for the rest of the year? So, I think we have a good plan in place for managing expenses for the rest of the year. So, I want to let Art speak to the agreement that we have with Office Depot, and then maybe talk about some more savings that we get with that agreement. Go to Art.
We, at this time, have this very same contract in place, so the prices that we're ordering from Office Depot every day are these exact prices here. The contract that we had in place that the previous school board approved in 2006, which was a bid that we did ourselves in the district, at the end of the first year, we did an analysis of our spend and found that if we moved to this contract, the County of Los Angeles contract, we could save approximately another $125,000 a year. This is based on what the board spoke of earlier, with the consolidation of ordering, the economies of scale, aggregated purchasing power. This is a contract managed by the County of Los Angeles, which has an annual spend of about $650 million. So, we have a contract here that we are part of, which has given us the best prices we could possibly attain. So, that's what we have in place right now. This is asking the board to allow us to then use that contract for the final six months of this year, while the County of Los Angeles considers either rebidding that or extending it for another year, and then we'll come back to you later on with an additional recommendation. The part about the back-to-school program, this is not about our spend by the district, this is about the public. When the schools go out, the parents go out, the end of the school year, beginning of the next school year, and order purchased classroom supplies at the- the next school year, and order purchased classroom supplies at the Office Depot retail stores, if they provide to the cashier at the cash register at the time of sale, the name of the school that they would like to contribute to, Office Depot gives that school 5% of the purchase price on the applicable items. A rebate, which is given to the school principal at regular intervals by a store gift card. And the principal can then use that to go into the store and buy items from that card. So, it's not about our spend. It's another one of those value-added services that we get from Office Depot resulting from this contract.
Okay. Let me talk to Mara, and then we'll call for the question.
Yeah, there are two, two aspects of that. First of all, Mr. Reinerston, our communications director, I, I hope that we will advertise the fact that, you know, parents, when they're buying school supplies in September, can designate a school, because I noticed that other school districts are far more successful and pointed in making sure that their parents know about this program, so that when they do go to Office Depot, they have a chance to, to do this. But secondly, Mr. Hanby, you and I have had a debate that, that I say that when I got here six years ago, some odd years ago, that one of the things I did was make sure that teachers got a discount on their, if they go to Office Depot and they buy supplies, that they get a discount. Now, you argued with me last year that, no, no, that was all about you, and that, you know, you debated every year. But, but let's just say that it's a good thing, it's a great thing, that because teachers spend so much money out of their own pockets. I know that that discount that they get if they go to Office Depot, which is again, Mr. Reinerston, something we should make sure is advertised and made very clear to our teachers, that they get this discount if they go to Office Depot. If that's still going to be in place in this contract, or have we given that up?
Yes, it is. No, it's part of this contract. If a teacher or any school board employee were to register their personal credit card with Office Depot through a secure website, then when that card is used in the retail store, at the time of the sale, it will calculate the cheaper of either the store price at that given point in time, or our contract price, and extend that lower price to the customer at the time of sale.
So, that's not just teachers, but that's any employee, including school board members, right?
Any employee of the district.
Any employee of the district. What website would they go to in order to get this advantage? Because it's significant. When you go out to buy these ink cartridges, it's amazing.
There is a, a secure Office Depot site that we can provide to you, where you self-service that information about your personal credit card into their site, get a confirmation back, and then you're, you're good to go.
Okay. Well, again, teachers, I would recommend you do this, because it's remarkable. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the staff moving on this so quickly in terms of finding ways to save money, because saving $125,000 for the district is no small matter, and that's, I applaud that. And so, basically, I move that we approve this item.
Move in a second, please vote.
There we go.
For the last items that I, that passed 5-0, I pulled off three items that I, I can't support. And the first one is H-106. The, the person that spoke is, is correct.
106?
H, H-01, item 6. H-01, item 6. We often find funding for administrative positions, and then we struggle to find funding for the people actually doing the work, so I can't support that. Item H-16, the first part of that, Mr. Morris and I, and he knows I love him, however, I have a, a problem with how to pay someone to come in and reprovise our principals to do master schedules. You know, again, I feel that's something that staff should do, you should do, SIO should do, but I certainly cannot approve to pay someone to come in and do that. And then item H-47, I can't, I, I won't approve that item, because I think that we have had other environmental, people come in and do work for us. This is not the only company that we have in town. And so, so therefore, I think that, I'm sorry, H-47, and that's for BHR, that's environmental surveys that we have to do. And we have used other companies, so I can't just accept the fact that this is the only one that's available for right now. So, if you want to move these items and pass them, that's fine, I just can't support them.
So, moved.
To continue, I'm in.
Just one quick comment on H-16. The person that we've asked to come work with the principals on schedules is not just to work with high school principals, to work with middle school principals and elementary principals on how to use their time to elongate the school day, not in terms of when the school day starts and when it stops, but actually how you use the time during that timeframe. It's $6,000. I know that's not a lot of money, but I can tell you, that's, that's very important to what we're trying to do. We're trying to help high school principals understand to, to develop a schedule where you have a dual lunch period. Doesn't mean you have to have two lunch periods. It can be how you use an elongated lunch period, and I think this will help us transition to a, a longer lunch period, serving more kids, in a smoother manner than if, if we try to do it internally.
With all due respect, and I said this to you earlier, I believe in our district, we have some very smart principals. And it is hard for me, and this is just me as a board member speaking, it is very difficult for me to believe that we do not have this in our district with all the principals that we have. It is even harder for me to believe that none of the SIOs can do this. It is even harder for me to believe that the chief SIOs cannot do this, and devastatingly hard, you know, for me to believe that the deputy superintendent can't do it. So, even though it's not the amount of money, it is what it's saying. And it is saying, in a district our size, we do not have the mental capacity to do master schedules and work out our day. I cannot agree with that statement. It is, that, that goes against all of our principals that are in this district, and I know that we have some bright principals in this district. So, I cannot support this at all. There was a motion to move, move this item. Is there a second for it?
There's actually a motion to move all of them, but...
Yes, move all three of them, yes.
Move, to, remove them from?
No, to move them forward.
To approve them?
To approve them, yes.
Um, okay, well, can we take them one at a time?
Oh, sure. Okay, item H-016 first.
I, I just wanted to say on that one, we are looking at the whole issue of the layers of supervision for classified maintenance staff and so forth, and that seems to be an open topic right now, so I would prefer to delay on approving this item.
I believe that this is a key part of what we have, were asked for in our budget discretion this morning.
They wanted to move to approve it.
Yeah.
No one moved to approve it?
Okay.
Let's move on.
Okay. H-16. There's no motion?
Let me see, wait one second here, please.
Move to approve.
Let me look at it here.
Well, it's too bad it's ordered this way if, if there's something more than master schedules involved. I did master schedules, and I didn't get paid that kind of money. So, you know, I guess I'll, I'll sit on it. It's, you know, a lot of times the wording of the exhibit defeats it. And I have to say that I find it pretty hard to believe that there aren't middle and high school principals that couldn't manage a master schedule that included accommodating different lunches, or different classes, or even having a juggled, I mean, balancing of two lunches. Just tell you the truth. Even though I'm not voting on two lunches, I mean, I, I know you can do it, because I did it. And, and I don't believe it takes people outside the school district to, to do the kind of things that administrators are supposed to know how to do. Maybe there's more to it, but it doesn't say that.
There's all kinds of things included in this, including, you know...
Well, we can just leave out, I, I just leave the first one, A, the Cassidy Consulting, and we can approve the rest of it. I just can't approve that first part.
Okay, then approve everything but one.
Okay.
One more second?
Second.
Okay. So, we move everything for H-16 except for the first item?
Vote.
Okay. And item H-47?
Uh, let me see. Well, I have a question on this.
Yes, please.
In terms of, there is one group that is hired to do this, and President Jackson was making the point that others have done it before. I'm not sure what was, can, if the staff can explain the process of choosing this particular group?
Come as Mr. Watts.
Before you discuss it, I'll move approve.
Mr. Markin?
Okay.
One second.
Yep, the, the history on this is the BRG was one of the firms that was selected through an RFQ, Request for Qualification process, several years ago. And they've been working with the district since then, specifically on the project of the Jonas Salk Elementary School, where it's a property that the district has owned for a number of years, well over 30 years, and we inadvertently created a fairy shrimp habitat there. So, they worked with us and Fish and Game to develop a framework in the city of San Diego to see if we could find alternate mitigation land that we could use, so that we could go ahead and finally build the school. They've completed that part, that sort of framework process, but now we have to get into the very specifics of looking at the specific habitat of both the, the Salk site and the mitigation site, and completed an EIR for that. So, that's why we're, we're recommending that this firm be allowed to continue with it.
There's also some additional work that they're going to undertake in support of proposition asks, for example, out at Morris High School.
Okay, and I think that all is very important, because you have a line in here that says, "This firm is the only provider with CEQ experience currently under contract with the district." And so, my concern is this, and I've said this very clearly, just because a firm gets a contract with the district, they don't have one for life. And, and, and when we have firms that get contracts and you keep rolling them over and over and over again, it does not give other people an opportunity to bid on them. This is $400,000. And the work for the fairy shrimp, I mean, I know that was a lot of work, I know there's things that had to be done, but my question becomes, that work is ours. We paid for that already. Few million dollars worth, we paid for that already. So, I don't understand why this could not have gone out to bid. And that, and so, that is, that, that was my concern, is that it was just being rolled over, it's just the only one that could do it, when I know that we have used other firms in the past to do work around the district.
And... Those are very good points. In this particular case, we didn't want to lose that body of knowledge with this particular project.
I hope our staff has that body of knowledge as well, Mr. DeBak.
Well, first of all, CEQA is a specialized knowledge base. And if you, if, I, I really honestly believe that if you defer this and you give it to another company, that you'll end up having to pay for them learning what this firm has already knows. And I think that's going to be a long-term waste of money. And I don't think it'll come in at this rate. So, I'm, the reason I made the motion to do it is, I've been around for, and I know this project has been hanging for a long, long time. We need to build that school. And we don't need to have it delayed by fairy shrimp or anybody else. And even, we don't need it delayed by switching experts in the middle of the, of the movie. So, I'm going to, I'm going to support that myself, and I'd ask for somebody else to...
Yes, we've already seconded it.
Okay, just one, just one final comment here, and this is for one year and $400,000. And, and, and I want to get this school built too, but it is not on the docket to be built this year. So, that means this is going to come back year after year, for a few years, a few more years. Is that, that is correct, right?
Yes.
So, I guess my point is that we are guaranteeing this company, this contract, according to some of the language that you've heard up here. And, and that is something that, you know, I, as a board member, oppose. I think that we have to be able to go in and out of contracts with people. We hire staff to keep the basic knowledge, we get to start all over again from scratch. And, and my concern is that that school is not going to be built for a while, it's just going to cost us this amount of money every year. That, that continues to add up. If you get other projects for them to work on, but I think that we do need to be able to mix up the pot as far as these contracts are concerned. Okay?
And, and I'd just like to say that we, we are intending to go out with another, it's Request for Qualifications for, for firms in, in the future. And that $400,000 is a maximum amount within the next year. We're not, we're not, we don't have $400,000 worth of work to give them tomorrow.
Okay, I call for the vote then. Okay, we, thank you, Dr. Evans. It's 5-0. We're going to take a five-minute break. Board members, please be very timely, people have been waiting for a long time. So, back at 5 after 8, please.
Yes. Please.
Imagine what it's like when six or seven or 10 kids come over to your house and spend the night. Schools get 500 to 2,500 kids every day, and they're not delicate. He says voters throughout the county understood the need and responded. So, to the voters, what would you say?
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you on behalf of our children.
NBC 7:39, news in the morning. Thanks, Jason. We're talking about Trading Places this morning, and that's when community leaders and business leaders walk the walk of a school principal. It's called Principal for the Day. Joining me this morning is Scripps Ranch High School Principal Kurt Madden, who's to my right, and Joe Campano, who's with Merrill Lynch and is the co-chair of the program, Principal for the Day. Good morning to you, gentlemen. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
I compliment you on your ties. They're beautiful, gorgeous, look great. Thanks for coming in so early this morning. First of all, Mr. Madden, what is the biggest challenge of being a school principal?
Probably the biggest passion...
Right. And I would just ask all board members to make sure that Ms. Ward has their person, so that when you give it to us, it just lists the members of the committee. Not everybody that was, that volunteered, but just the members that...
Okay. We can do that.
Okay. But we do have one, so, I'm sorry, board members and audience, the item I-01, which is the board member appointments to Prop S-ICOC committee. We have a list of people who have volunteered, but not the official list of who the board members have selected. So, we're going to table that to a later meeting. But we do have one person that'd like to speak on this item, so they can come and speak, and that is Richard Fierro.
Good evening, board members, President. My name is Richard Fierro. I'm interested and interested in the serving on the ICO committee regarding Prop S taxpayers' dollars to approve of modernized facilities in schools. I have a short, brief summary of myself. I was born here in San Diego. I attended San Diego City Schools, and I attended Stockdale Elementary, Memorial, and I graduated from Kearney High School in 1968. I served the U.S. Army, stationed in Vietnam, Miracal Division, 6970. I was selected by the carpenters in their apprenticeship program, and did four years, and spent the next 20 years as a working carpenter with my tools. I was elected to many offices in the union as, during the years, holding one, one position with, that was for local 547 in San Diego. One position, I was a financial secretary of that local, and I was in charge of all their, their finances and the day-to-day business goes on the operation of the office In 1991, during that, right after I worked, 1991, I was, I was hired as a business rep organizer for that local 547, and a full-time staff person. I'm knowledgeable in the workings of employee contracts, PLAs, and letter of assignments. I'm familiar with dealing with labor disputes, jurisdictional issues. I spent three and a half years in between all that as a labor compliance investigator for the Carpenters Contractors Corporation Committee, and experienced in state prevailing wage rates determination and filing labor complaints with the Labor Board. I was secretary of Miramasa's Town Council for two terms, and I also was on the planning board for one term. Currently, I'm, not currently, but I'm going to school right now at Miramar College, trying to get my business degree, pursue my business degree. I recently retired after 35 years of service with the carpenters. I'm still a member, though, but not a paid person anymore. I've been married for 32 years. I have two... I have two sons, Richard M., who's a major, who just got promoted to a major U.S. Army, Fourth Infantry, Third Tour in Iraq. My second son, Edward A., graduate of Bolt, UC Berkeley, he's an associate attorney with Cilly Austin, N Y C. Both of them graduated from City School District here. I bring to the board my life experiences, I guess that's what I have to offer, and then my, of course, my labor experience. And I got my energy and my full attention to, a commitment to the committee's goals. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I will remind the board members, if you have not given Ms. Ward your selection, there is a list of people in our packets, please let her know who you're going to place on I C O C committee. Thank you very much. The next item up for discussion is affirmation of the board's decision to freeze our district's spending for the remainder of the two thousand eight, nine school year using both restricted and unrestricted funds and is authorized by the superintendent.
So moved.
Moved. Second, any discussion, please vote. The next item, item I O three, is a resolution in the matter of eliminating marksmanship training from San Diego Unified School District Schools. Dr. Evans?
Okay.
And remember, just wave your hand.
I'm going to introduce a resolution, but first I wanted to give a little background. This has to do, first of all, starting off with the fact that we have shooting ranges on, on the campuses of San Diego Unified, some San Diego Unified High Schools. I attended a board meeting last year where this was brought up, and I was quite surprised that with a zero tolerance policy that we actually had shooting ranges on campus, and I figured after it came out public that that would probably, would have been eliminated at that point, but that it was not. I'm not going to take credit for this resolution, although I do support it, but I just want to tell you that I have been very impressed by a group of young people in the community who have taken this on, a group of young people who are committed to education, who are committed to nonviolence, and who also are committed to the democratic process in terms of organizing themselves in the community and, and speaking out. They are students who live in communities that have been affected by violence. We know that just on the day before I was sworn in, that there were two students, high school students in the community who were murdered, and more recently, we have another one who was murdered. Now, what we are talking about here is eliminating the shooting ranges for R O T C that are currently on campus. So, we can go into a little bit more details about that. I just want to make clear that this is not a referendum on junior R O T C, that this is not in any way intended to remove R O T C, or junior R O T C programs from the San Diego High School campuses, that there are many R O T C programs in other cities and even within our own district that have, that exist without having a weapons training component to it. So with that said, I am going to introduce the resolution, and then we can have public comment and discussion as appropriate. And the resolution is as follows. Whereas the San Diego Unified School District has a zero tolerance policy on weapons in schools and seeks as one of its primary goals to teach students to resolve conflicts without resorting to violence, and whereas the district cannot risk sending a mixed message to students when some of their lives have recently been taken by gun violence, now therefore be it resolved that any existing school district property used for shooting ranges shall be immediately closed for that purpose and converted for other educational uses by the beginning of the next regular school year. Be it further resolved that marksmanship training, whether it is conducted on campus or off campus and through textbooks or physical instruction, shall not be taught in connection with the San Diego Unified School District and shall be discontinued immediately. That is the resolution.
Okay. So it's been ready in a second. Do the board members want to do a round, and then we go to public comments, or?
Why don't we hear public comments?
Okay, it's great, public comments, okay. Because the amount of speakers that we've had, we're going to limit it to two minutes, starting with Jeff Fahey, Inay Barajas, Veronica Conojo, Laura Dela Cruz, Jenny Trace, and Ian Kelly. Could you start coming up, please? Yes.
Hi, my name is Jeff Feely, and I'm a teacher at Patch Country High School. I run the marksmanship program over there as well. I'd like to talk about some of our achievements. In two thousand one, we won the Area Eleven Championship. And two thou, and also that year, we competed in national competition in Georgia. In two thousand six, we won the Area Eleven Championship again, this time we went to the regional, Western Regional Championships in Olympic Training Center in Colorado Springs, Colorado. Last year, we won the Area Eleven Championship again, and, and we competed in that match, and, and two weeks ago, we competed in that championship for two thousand and nine. These are also qualifiers for the Junior Olympics, okay? I'd like to say that we have a varsity and JV team as well, but let me tell you that all students don't have the ability to shoot a basketball, and, and they don't have the ability to throw a baseball ninety miles an hour, or throw a football sixty yards. But some students have a special talent in competition to hit their target with an air rifle at ten meters and earn a trip to a state competition, the national, or even the Olympics, because that's where this sport begins. It starts in the high schools, and it could end up in the Olympics. It's an Olympic sport. Okay, for every student to pick up a powered, an air-powered pellet rifle, and they go through rigorous safety training, and they also have to have passed a safety exam at, you know, at the hundred percent accuracy. And I could tell you, good students make good shooters, and good shooters make good students. We also focus, one of the things we teach highly is focus and concentration, self-reliance, emotional control, and positive self-esteem. These are all personal attributes that all of us would love to see every student achieve, and that's what air marksmanship program does. J R T C, no, J R T C program promotes safety and.
Thank you.
That's all I can say. Thank you.
Inay Barajas, Veronica Conojo, Laura Dela Cruz, Jenny Trace, Ian Kelly. Any of you here?
Good afternoon. My name is Inay Barajas, and I am a senior at Mission Bay High School. I come to you as a current student who is concerned about her education and that of future students. A year has gone by, and the issue of shooting ranges has not been settled. Marksmanship is taken as an Olympic sport that teaches leadership and self-control, but how many other sports teach these same qualities? Boxing has been known as a very active sport that teaches a lot of self-control and leadership, and yet it is not taken as a sport in schools due to its excessive use of violence. Our district has seen three students lose their lives in the past two months due to shootings, and yet you don't realize the consequences that gun ranges in our schools can bring to our communities. How is it that some of you have the nerve to say it is sad that we are losing students at such a young age if you are the ones who oppose closing all the shooting ranges? Parents, students, teachers, and members of community you represent have come to express their opinions, and they have not been heard. Learning how to shoot air rifles does not help education, on the contrary, decreases the number of students getting one. We have come not looking for sympathy, but to look for action from you, the ones that are supposed to care about our education. We are, we are not here as teenagers looking for trouble. We are here as students wanting a decent education we deserve. And if some of you guys think that the sport starts at the high schools and ends on an Olympic or a gymnasium or whatever, it can also end up in the streets, and we've seen it like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good, thank you very much. Veronica Conojo, Laura Dela Cruz, Jenny Trace, Ian Kelly. Am I doing that right? Mark Mendoza.
My name is Jenny Track, and I'm a junior at Madison High School and a member of the J R T C rifle team. And these are my teammates. We want the board and the audience to see, want the board and audience to see what, who we are and not what others picture us to be. It's been said that our J R T C and rifle team promotes gang violence, make military robots of its students, and that kids are forced into the program. They also say that J R T C eliminates A V I D or A P classes. We're here to challenge these arguments. We are not gang members, and we have never been suspended or expelled. We are students with strong grades and a commitment to our educational future. We average a three-point-four GPA, and we all intend on pursuing a college degree in high, after high school. We are involved with many extracurricular activities outside J R T C. Among us five, we participate in tennis, football, drama, orchestra, and marching band. We're not students that only focus on J R T C, but when we do participate on our J R T C events, we're precise and disciplined because, because we have learned to do things right. J R T C have never kept us from taking A V I D or A P courses. Our academic accomplishments speak for themselves. Here are some examples. Last year's salutatorian and school newspaper editor were seniors in J R T C. This year's valedictorian is our cadet battalion commander. Next year's projected valedictorian is also in J R T C. We also have this year's junior class president, the freshman class vice president, secretary and treasurer. Last year's graduation class at Madison had more students go into military that were not in J R T C than actual J R T C cadets. The most important lesson I've learned in rifle teams is the value of safety and respecting things that can hurt others. We do not take the air rifle home with us and bring them on campus. They stay locked.
Thank you. Mark Mendoza, thank you, wave your hand. Mark Mendoza, followed by William Fassoli, followed by Lance Martini.
Good evening once again. Dr. Ian Kelly, seven seven eight seven, Hillendale Drive, San Diego, nine two one two zero. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with this board. Again, I apologize that the supporters of this resolution have taken your time away from more significant issues that face this board these days. Today, those opposed to competitive marksmanship are trying to link it to violence and the district's zero tolerance policies. Nothing could be more absurd. The violence is a method of conflict, revolution, resolution is a non-starter for J R O T C cadets. An independent study documented a universal drop in discipline issues with J R O T C cadets, something that your own administrators and teachers will confirm. Marksmanship has nothing to do with community violence. I challenge anyone to document that a single marksman has been directly involved in community violence. J R O T C programs offer leadership skills, positive after-school activities, self-esteem opportunities, and supervision. These are the real solutions for community violence. The appeal to zero tolerance policies asks this board to, to set aside its mandate for considered judgment. Thousands of people have died under the blows of a baseball bat. Shall we ban baseball, shall we ban baseball games? From their inception and throughout all modifications, marksmanship programs have fully complied with federal, state, and district requirements. By the way, the images that you see behind you are not the weapons, the rifles that are used for air pellet shooting. Supporters of this, of this resolution make a number of unsubstantiated claims about educational code violations. Their published set of talking points invites their supporters to parrot the same vague statements, hoping that if something is said often enough, it will become true. The fact is that J R O T C cadets are among the district's model students and community members. The fact is that a small fraction of the cadets participate in marksmanship at all. It is not part.
Thank you very much. William Fassoli, Lance Martini, Rosa Templar.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mr. President, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Mark Mendoza, and I am a student and a soldier. I graduated from the Marine Corps J R O T C program at Marietta Valley High School in Riverside County almost four years ago, after serving four years and achieving the rank of Staff Sergeant and Company Commander. J R T, J R O T C provided me with the discipline, skills, and value to complete my education and make me a productive member of society. I am not a criminal, as some would say. Actually, I passed a San Diego Police Department Physical Fitness Assessment Test a few months ago. I highly think that, you know, that's very opposite from, try to portray me as. I'm a living example that a devoted cadet will, will not make you sacrifice your education. Actually, I graduated two months ago with my degree in molecular biology from the University of California, San Diego. Participating in J R O T C did not prevent me from earning my college education. I can vouch that J R O T C does not teach anything related to tactical warfare, combat, or even self-defense in their classrooms. There's likely more violence occurring at fencing or wrestling practice at the gym, you know, one block away. In fact, J R T C cadets are more peaceful than their fellow students. They do not pose a threat to their local community. Not only is their behavior accountable to the regular school administrators, like every other student, they have to report to their senior officer instructor, enlisted instructor, platoon commander, platoon sergeant, fire team leader, squad team leader, you get the whole idea. The, the consequences of misbehavior is far, far more grave for a J R T C cadet. In regards to air pellet teams, they're nowhere near close like real firearms marksmanship training, nor are there firing ranges on campus anywhere near the level of a real range. I can tell you this firsthand, because not only did I just graduate from school, in college, I was also the president of the real marksmanship team at U C S D. I compete in forty caliber Smith &amp; Wesson pistol competitions, and I teach dozens of students every year.
Thank you. Wave your hands, please. Thank you. Good evening.
Madam President, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is William Fassoli, and I am currently a student at the University of California, San Diego. We've heard many talking points about the marksmanship and the R O T C program, and it was noted by the honorable member that this motion is not intended to bar the R O T C program or inhibit it its operations in any way. However, I see different. I see that this is not only a proposal that is a backdoor way to ban the R O T C program from our schools, as you will know, that's been done in San Francisco, or has attempted to have been done in San Francisco. The program is, has outstanding safety ratings. As noted before, the students have to pass up with a hundred percent accuracy on a safety test. They're also under the expert instruction of member, of retired members of the United States Army, Marine Corps, and the Navy. I would ask what the honorable member's real purpose is by putting forth this measure. I don't see it as a conflict between the zero tolerance policy, as the pellet guns are under controlled, are kept under control, they're not released within the school. These are undersupervised by professors and the R O T C program. I again would affirm that this really is a backdoor way to abolish the R O T C program. It may not be the honorable member's intention to do so, but I think that the political support behind it would do so. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lance Martini, and I speak to you this evening as a nineteen seventy-three graduate of James Madison High School here in San Diego, as a graduate of the school's R O T C program, and a member of the school's C I F Championship Rifle Team. I also speak to you as a reserve police officer with twenty years of service, and as a forensic scientist with twenty-nine years of specialized experience in firearm investigations. Lastly, I speak to you as a concerned parent and as a volunteer coach of a high school J R O T C air rifle team with over five years of commitment to that program. As a coach, I do not turn away students wishing to participate in the marksmanship program. At the beginning of the school year, I always have a large number of students who want to participate. However, as the start of competition draws near, I find it difficult to find ten shooters in order to field both a varsity and junior varsity team. These hopeful young men and women quickly discover that high levels of motivation, self-discipline, knowledge of the sport, and a time commitment of ten to twenty hours a week is required. The majority of those that earn a position on the team are exceptional students. This year, as in years past, a number of these graduating team members have been offered J R O T C scholarships to prestigious institutions such as Berkeley, Auburn, USC, UCLA, U S D, and many others, not to mention appointments to the Naval Academy, West Point, the Air Force Academy, and the Citadel. Others have earned R O T C scholarships and gone on to four-year colleges who otherwise could not have afforded the tuition. Your J R O T C programs offer a one-of-a-kind educational opportunity at a fraction of the cost for many other programs. the cost for many other programs. As administrators, if you are genuinely concerned about gangs, gun violence, and educational opportunities, I urge you to expand and support ROTC in our schools.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Myrna Cruz, and I'm a student at Mission Bay High, and this is my mom, Rosa Tapia, and this is what she wrote. When someone told me that in the high schools of San Diego there were shooting ranges, I couldn't believe it. I asked how this was possible with all the violence in our communities and all the talk of zero tolerance. When I started informing other parents and people in my community about the shooting ranges, they all had the same reaction. No one could believe that, what they were hearing. Even elementary and middle school teachers don't know about this and are all shocked. Mission Bay High exists because of hundreds of parents who let their children get on buses every day. The parents hope that their children will get a good education, far from the violence in some of their own neighborhoods. It is very difficult to put our children on those buses every day. We do it so that they will get a good education, not so that they will learn how to shoot weapons. I feel that a lot of parents in Mission Bay High were left out. We didn't choose to have gun ranges in our schools. We were never even informed about it in the first place. The principal at Mission Bay High, Ms. Silos, will tell you that gun ranges are just another choice for activities. She thinks that student's choice is all that matters, and this philosophy has her at Mission Bay High. Do we let our children do everything that they choose to do? Some children would choose to bring knives to school. Do we let them? Some students would choose to take drugs to school. Do we let them? I know better than my children, I know better than my children what they need for a good future. With the help of Mission Bay Avid Program and a few good teachers, two of my four children are at San Diego State and UCLA. Shooting ranges did not help them get there. I know that shooting ranges send a terrible mixed message to my children about what's right and wrong.
Thank you. Rosa Tapla, Thomas Simpson, Elizabeth Avellas, Matthew Donalane. Okay, Rosa Tapla, Thomas Simpson, Elizabeth Avellas, Matthew Donatellin, Sulima Torres.
Good evening to everybody. Sulima Torres, 3051 J Street, San Diego, 92102, the heart of the Barrios. I am here today as a teacher, as a parent, as a member of the Association of Clasa Educators, and also as a former Mission Bay High alumni, class of 1993. I am here today with one goal, and that is to leave the meeting with all votes in favor of permanently removing shooting ranges from our schools. This action will make San Diego Unified School District comply with the zero tolerance policy that has been adopted nationwide by the Federal Guns React of 1994. It is your obligation to ensure quality education to all students by providing them with a safe learning environment. Your vote in support of our concerns will be proof of the efforts that your support to students, parents, in assuring them a learning community. In this critical economic crisis in California, and with expected damaging budget cuts to our educational system, we urge you to begin with the removal of programs that promote the use of weapons and violence through their curriculum. Many of us have seen an increase of gun violence in our communities. We reject programs that glorify and lure our students into using guns and bullets as part of their education, instead of providing them with extracurricular activities that enhance college applications and improve their ability to apply to different universities. It is ironic that we gather here today to discuss weapons in school when just last week Hannah Petrowski, a student from Mission Bay High School, lost her life to gunfire. This incident adds her name to the list of innocent lives already lost in 2008. This is why we are here today totally against guns being part of our students' education.
Thank you. Ashley Garrett, thank you for waving. Monica Sedano, Jonathan Flores, Alan Milifiski.
Okay.
Hello, board members. My name is Jonathan Flores, and I'm a senior at Lincoln High School. Just to clear up, we are not against JROTC. Today, I'm here on behalf of J Education Not Arms Coalition, and also on behalf of students, parents, and community members. We are here united and determined to win this one-year struggle and not to retrace past events that we've encountered from the old school board, who were always in opposition to our demands. Also, we want to hold San Diego community, we want the whole San Diego community to know that our actions, that the actions that many of the students have taken against the shooting ranges do not go unnoticed. With great optimism, we expect this new school board will look to making changes regarding the shooting ranges on the Lincoln campus and other 11 school campuses in our district. I'm not here as another concerned person, but as a student of this district that demands that an educational facility continues to focus on educating us, not militarizing us. A school that teaches students how to shoot weapons seems clearly ironic. Being that Lincoln High School is a new facility, we hope that it's an academic learning environment, not a place to shoot firearms. The Lincoln High community has been devastated by the amount of violent shootings that have taken place in the community, and I can tell you that we are tired of it. The Lincoln community doesn't want any guns in the community, period. Should we sit here and wait until another incident occurs in order for us to take action? How can a shooting range help my peers and me achieve a higher education? As a student, I expect that this school board will make their priorities and understand that our books are the ultimate weapons to succeed, not guns. Being that it's our sole responsibility as students to come to school and learn, it is your responsibility as a school board to provide us with the courses that will lead us to succeed in life. I also expect the board to uphold the idea that no guns in school means no guns in school. Again, I am here representing many organizations of Lincoln High and the community, and I am demanding that the school will remove these gun ranges from our campuses.
Good kid.
Followed by Ian Motah.
Madam President, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alan Malefsky. I represent the United Veterans Council of the County of San Diego. Others that have gone before me have really, I guess, put forth what I consider to be the proper argument for keeping the gun ranges. I spent 20 years in the Air Force, and I wish I had the opportunity that the students of today had, and that they have with junior ROTC training. I believe it teaches them discipline, safety, and above all, leadership. I have never seen a junior ROTC cadet join a gang. I don't think that equating learning safety about a weapon has the same thing to do with violence between two or more people. After all, they're teaching them the value of life. There never has been an accident, from what I understand, in the 90 years of this program. But if you took sharpened pencils in school, I believe you would find a great deal of accidents with them. So should we ban sharpened pencils? I doubt it. But you do seem to be equating learning to fire weapons properly and safety with violence. That would be like saying, let's not teach them about the safety in automobiles because it is a violent instrument. Kids go out there racing and kill people, kill innocent people. But it doesn't happen with an air rifle at a high school. If people think that this type of education doesn't help them, they do not need to take the course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Irvin Motah, Virginia Torres, Lanny Holliday, David Morales, and Edward Ochoa.
Good evening, board. I come today in front of you, to stand in front of you guys with a weapon. It is not an air rifle, but words. The words of my battalion, words of my own, and words of the people that will take care of ROTC after me. This is my fifth year in this program. I am a senior at Lincoln High School, and I am also the battalion commander for my school. Now, when I first came into this year, I came in this year with great hope and anticipation for a shooting range for our school, something that Lincoln High School has never had, and for the first time, we were going to have to be able, we were going to have the chance to compete with other schools in a shooting range competition, only to come out with disappointment because, as you know, our school just recently opened last year, and a lot of the construction that had to do in our school lagged our time to build our shooting range. I was disappointed. But I, when it comes to people telling me that our shooting range promotes violence, I think we should also start, if that's one of the things you guys are going to start looking at, we should also start looking at the other sports that we have in our school, because that is what the shooting range is. It is a sport that the school gives out, especially ROTC. Now, a helmet for a football team, something that the campus allows us to carry around, that can be a weapon. A lacrosse stick that can be carried around campus, that can be a weapon. A skateboard, that as long as you're not riding it, you're able to carry it around, that can be a weapon too. Should we ban those things too? I mean, seriously, if you guys are going to start just judging small things, I seriously think that you guys just also point out other things that can seriously do some serious damage. And we're not going to be carrying around our rifles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Greer. My name is Virginia Torres. I live at 3765 Utah Street, San Diego, 92104. I am the mother of a child who attends San Diego High School and is part of the air rifle team. The JROTC air rifle marksmanship program is a wonderful program for kids that has been around for 90 years. It offers children a chance to try an Olympic sport that I know my own son and many others would not have been able to try without JROTC. Marksmanship is different from weapons training. I have no safety concerns about my son participating in the sport at school because of the spotless record of safety. There's never been an accident. He tried out for the football team and gave that up after being injured and seeing numerous other children injured, but we're not talking about removing that sport. The cadets in JROTC are required to score 100% on the safety test before even picking up a rifle, an air rifle. The instructors are like hawks, keeping an eye on what is happening at the range and that the children are safe. The instructors themselves are tested yearly and recertified to keep their knowledge and skill up to the rigorous standards that have been set for them. Air rifle marksmanship is an NCAA scholarship sport, and many women have received scholarships for their skill. It's also an Olympic gold medal event. People all over the world participate in this activity. My son is at San Diego High School, and two years ago, the team, he was not on the team at that time, did so well, they represented California during the Junior Olympic Competition on the East Coast. The bonus for the school district is it is funded by the military, the civilian marksmanship program, and private community donations. My son has had a wonderful experience in the two and a half years that he has been part of a JROTC.
Thank you.
Dear members of the board, I am here too on behalf of the student supporters of the Education Not Arms Coalition. My name is David Morales. It was more than a year ago when we started this struggle against the shooting ranges in our schools. We have constantly mobilized students and supporters to these meetings, in efforts to get rid of these shooting ranges. There are arguments that say that these shooting ranges are not related to the violence in our community. Any civilized person with a conscience can see how ridiculous this argument is. Every day, more and more people are dying because of the violence in our community. They must clearly not live where we do. And they talk about safety. Safety when rifles were stolen from Sarah High School? What message are they trying to send to our kids who are learning how to shoot guns in our school? What kind of message is that? Chicago, who had the largest JROTC program in the country, decided to end shooting ranges. Why can't we do it? Why can't we follow their example? Now, they say that shooting teaches discipline. It teaches leadership. Leadership and discipline is this. All these students are leadership and discipline. We have over 150 students that came out here today. When have we ever had more students than this? This is discipline and leadership. This is promotion of education. These students are here because they know the importance of their education. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lonnie Holliday, 6732 Bonneview Drive, San Diego, California, 92119. I have two sons in the Patrick Henry High School ROTC program, sophomore and a junior. I became aware of these issues last week when an email came to me, and I was directed to a website today of the Education Not Arms. I don't know if you're aware of this website. My son was invited by the board in October to present the colors here at your board meeting. During that presentation, a picture of my son was taken and posted on this website without my knowledge or my permission. I don't know if you're aware of the fact that pictures are being taken during your meeting and then put on this website to promote their cause. I appreciate the passion that these young men and women bring to this cause. I have no problem with that. I do, however, have a problem with my son's image being posted on this website, and when I've asked the gentleman who's in charge to take it down, I've been met with anger and told that basically I'm out of luck, that this was a public event, and I don't have to take my son's picture down. The air rifle program is just a small part of the ROTC program. I only have two minutes. I couldn't begin to tell you all the amazing things that have happened for my sons during their enrollment in this program. To say that parents aren't aware that their children are being enrolled, that's absolutely false. So many of the things that are posted on this website are incorrect, and I encourage you to take a look at it and read it, because it's very important. But mostly, I wanted you to be aware of the fact that pictures are being taken of the students that you are inviting to present the colors of our United States of America and then posted on this website as propaganda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for seeing us, having us here tonight, and finally, for Dr. Evans, for putting this on the actual agenda for an action. I apologize to the ma'am who just came up here and spoke about her child, but from my knowledge, speaking to the person who's in charge of that website, that picture was taken from the district website. So pictures were taken, but it was from somebody on the, from the district, from my knowledge. You know, regarding the arguments that have been made tonight, car racing, it's true, cars can kill when used in a way where they're not supposed to, and that's why we don't teach students how to race cars in school. Students who want, and I feel some sorrow for the students who are part of these programs when I saw them, in all honesty, you know, I can see their perspective, but they have every right to continue this weapons training off a school campus on their own. There's no reason why, if they really wanted this as a hobby, they can do that elsewhere. It does not have to be on a school campus or part of a school program. The images that I've seen on websites of students that are in JROTC, San Diego High specifically, the school website, the images that I've seen at the Crawford High School website are students with guns that I'm told are air rifles, but they look practically like machine guns. And those images are extremely horrific. The sounds that I've heard students say when they're being on TV saying, "Aim, fire, breathe, shoot," and then you hear the gunshots on Channel 10 News, that's horrific. And good shooters make good students? That's what I heard tonight. That to me is a, that just doesn't sound- That to me is a, that, that just doesn't sound, sound like something that should be on our school campus. So, again, I'm humbled by the, by the presence of all these students, all these community members, and honored to spend time with the youth, who are leaders, who are very, very disciplined, who've been here since 3:00, and we're, we're in our sixth hour. So, I think that, I know we can't clap, but I think they deserve a hand.
There you go. We got a party going on here. That's good. Okay, that was the last of our public speakers. Are we ready for a board round? Who wants to go first? No one? Then I guess I'll go first.
No.
Okay.
You know...
And I would ask that the audience be respectful to the board members. If they don't like, if you don't like what they're saying, then don't raise your hand if you do, then wave your hand, but the noises, please don't make them. Thank you.
Well, we just got through talking about getting physical education credit, and if, if these kids could get some physical activity instead of shooting guns, I'd be thrilled. So, and I really have to say, I have seen student actions before, and I want to say that this has been, as far as I'm concerned, one of the best experiences I've had. I'm really proud of the leadership that you guys have shown and your ability to keep coming back and coming back and saying what you think. Very proud of the Mission Bay kids and very proud of the rest of you, because it's been a movement that has obviously grown and it's very peaceful, and you're very clear in what you're saying, so, yeah, I'm gonna support you guys.
Richard?
Yeah, I just wanna, I feel honored as well. I think this was the best political science class I've ever sat in. First, I do want to honor the students from, from Madison High School, and, and knowing the spirit of the, of the students here from the Education Not Arms Coalition, I know that, that what's in this room is not about stereotyping you, and it's not about disrespecting you, and it's, and it's understanding that, that the efforts that you've been making are very real, and, and it's not your program that I think people are, are concerned about in terms of the, you know, it's, it's not your program that's producing the violence. It's our society that's producing the violence. And the students here from the Education Not Arms Coalition are standing up for something bigger than just individual programs that are going on in our schools. You're standing up and you're saying enough, that you're not gonna sit by and, and simply allow a society that produces the levels of violence it does to, to keep going forward. You're not gonna do it. You're not gonna do it for your communities, you're not gonna do it for your younger brothers and sisters, you're not gonna do it for the generations that are gonna come in our communities after you. We've got some folks in this room tonight who I think are probably here to honor Pete Seeger, but who I think from the time they were your age have been fighting for social justice and fighting to make this, this, this country and this world a better place. And, and you are teaching us tonight, and you are giving us hope, that, you know, despite everything that we do, we'll do some good things and we'll make a lot of mistakes up here, but we know that we're gonna have a great country going forward because of what we're seeing from you here tonight. So, thank you, and I absolutely will support Dr. Evans' resolution.
Yeah, I'd, I'd also like to join my colleagues in commending all of the, all of the students in the audience. I, I think that, you know, you have persevered, those of you who have come and brought this weapons issue before us, and I think that for JROTC students, it's not necessarily easy to come down and, and stand up and try to explain where you're coming from. You know, I wanna help you understand where I'm coming from though, too. I, you know, my best friend's father, when I was eight, was shot in the face by a robber. He survived somehow, still has the bullet in his face. You know, and my mother taught in a community where, you know, if the phone rang at 3:00, after 3:00, I was sure it was someone calling to tell me that she was not coming home, because it was a, a community that was really famously torn apart by violence and gun violence. So, for the students that are here tonight, I do, I do understand your perspective. I'm, however, not going to be voting for you tonight. I don't think that we have shown that the shooting ranges at these schools are in any way related to the students we lost and why we lost them. I think that gives us satisfaction that we're doing something. This is something we can do. This is something we can change. This is something we can take a stand on, because we can't round up the drug cartels, and we cannot round up the gang members. We can barely stand up to them on the streets. We can't force them to turn in their weapons. We can't do anything about that. And yet, we're going to do this, and yet there's no evidence that this is going to change any of that. You know, a friend of mine that I will be meeting with, with the superintendent, is going to talk about school curfews, and, you know, what was a young woman doing out in a neighborhood at 1:30 in the morning at a party? And this has happened more than once. What was she doing outside of her own community, outside of her own home, outside of her own bed at 1:30 in the morning? That is the real issue. It's not about guns and shooting ranges. But we'll feel good about this, because apparently you will have four votes on the board for this, but we're not talking about that in our schools, and I don't, I think that this is a, a remedy for something that's not going to make a bit of difference about the violence in our communities, which is a true, true crisis. I think it's the wrong target audience, and I think that it takes a program away from students who have really not done anyone any harm. And, you know, I, as I said, I've had violence in my family that has experienced, but my father also taught, you know, marksmanship in the Navy. My brothers did dove hunting, you know, I mean, I've, I was taught to shoot a rifle myself, I must confess. But it, so it's not, I, I think that it is, you've got a Venn diagram here, if you remember geometry, where there's no overlap, and no one has proved to me that there is any overlap. So, I commend the students that, that have come down here, and I, with all, you know, good feelings, I do understand what you're saying. I noticed some of you didn't put your hand over your heart when the allegiance was, when we're saying the Pledge of Allegiance, and, you know, I think Pete Seeger would be proud of you, you know, that, that you're speaking from your heart, but I hope you'll appreciate that we also are speaking from our heart. And Superintendent, I'd really like to do something that would get after the violence in our communities, something that really would address what is really happening, because I truly, truly do not think this is it.
Let me go ahead and speak now, and then Mr. Evans, since it's your item, you can close out. This all started, it was over a year ago, and it was because we had put in the Marine Corps ROTC program at Mission Bay. It was the first Marine Corps ROTC that we've had in our district, and I think maybe in our state, but it's one of the few that we've actually had. But out of that, we come to this, and at that time, it was, you know, we don't want ROTC. I do not believe that the violence in our community is related to the marksmanship training that we have at JROTC. I did serve 21 years in the Navy, and even though I was in the Marine Corps, I did learn to shoot to protect myself. But what I do think that ROTC does is it does build character. It is an elective that people have an opportunity to pick. Within that elective is a marksmanship training, that in order for a student to participate in, they must have their parents' permission. They must pass a safety test, and we haven't had any, someone turned their cell phones off or down, thank you. We haven't had any violations of that here in the Unified School District. Now, I did a phone conference with the people from Lincoln, because I am very, very, very proud of their efforts, and that's what I said to them when, when I called and I spoke with them. I think it is wonderful to organize, and I know you have done a wonderful job of doing that and coming back down here. I, I can't support this, and I said to them also, is that sometimes the wishes of the most does not affect the choices of the few. This is an elective, and I think that in addition to that, any elective in this district, people have opportunity to take, and that is the parents' permission to allow them to take it. The question becomes, how do we curtail the violence in our community? And many people think it starts with by eliminating the, the ranges at our schools. I remember when, the first time I heard that there was a shooting range at Lincoln, I too went ballistic. I was outside of my mind until I went to see what it was, where it was located. And I think that that's a big part of when we're advocating for things, is making sure that we educate people on both sides of the issue, because nothing is more frustrating than being told something and then going to see it, and it's not as serious as it is. I live in the Lincoln community, where I live in the Morris community. I'm aware of the violence that goes on in our community, and I say this to the students, this is a fight that needs to go to the streets with the adults in our community. We, they owe us, they owe the students in our community the ability to be safe, to not have to worry about walking the streets in the evening. But that has nothing to do with the JROTC program or the marksmanship training that happens at our schools. So, I, I can't support this. I support you and your efforts, but what I will also say is my not supporting this does not mean I don't support you, I just don't support this particular cause that you are advocating for right now. Mr. Evans?
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say, as the others have said, that, just putting very mildly to say that I am extremely impressed by this, this fine group of, of young people. And I think even tonight, one of the things you have accomplished is something I have seen very rarely on a San Diego school board, which is to have all the board members who are not even in agreement, speaking very respectfully, kindly, and thoughtfully. It is pretty incredible to me that a group of young people could come into this auditorium and, and create this change within, within our own board and within our own community. I have an immense amount of respect. Obviously, it's clear what my bias is in terms of introducing this resolution, but I am equally impressed by both groups of young people, the, the people who have been working for a long time on, on ending the weapons training, but I'm also very impressed by the individuals who are in the junior ROTC program. There are a lot of issues here. The research, I, I think there is not clear research to show, for example, that there would be any link directly between having shooting ranges on campus and, and the violence that we find in our communities. That has not been empirically proven to this point. But I think we need, and we certainly need to realize, that, that many of the fine young people in the junior ROTC programs are not in any way, shape, or form going to get involved with, or condone, or, or have any involvement with any sort of gang activity. That, that is just not the case. Also, but yet, when we talk about the, the weapons training and saying it's just a sport, I'm not so sure that it's just a sport when it's, when it's done within the context of military training. It's not quite like being at summer camp and throwing a ball or, or doing archery or something. It is part of the bigger system of weapons training, and we know what weapons are for. Now, the junior ROTC program is, I, I wanted to make very clear at the beginning, is, is a part of the educational system in the San Diego Unified School District, and this is not in any way about removing that from our system. In fact, it is part of, of our budget, part of it is paid by the military and part of it for ROTC, and part of it is paid by the San Diego Unified School District. There can still be our junior ROTC programs without, without weapons training. I don't know if that's going to affect the recruitment for the JROTC programs if they have all the discipline part without the weapons training, but that, that remains to be seen. The issue here is the message that we want to send, and the message is that we don't want weapons training to be a part of our educational program. And I know that we have heard that this is just a statement, that this is just some words, that this doesn't change the violence in our community, but we change our community by starting with an idea, by having a dream, by taking the first step, by taking this action. So, I just wanted to say while, that I strongly commend and respect and honor all of the young people on both sides of this issue, I am definitely going to support the end of shooting ranges on campus.
If there's more comments, let's call for the vote, please.
I move that we approve the resolution.
Okay. Put it down in section. Okay. Okay. Passed.
All right. That passes 3-2.
Okay. You can be happy, it's okay.
Yeah. Sorry. Okay, okay. All right. Wait your hand.
Yeah, let's let him leave. Yeah, five minutes.
Request to move item 108 up.
We can't control when other people put on the website, even if they pull something off of our website.
So my child was invited by this board to present colors, and was then, picture was taken and then put on a website that I don't support. And then, under this picture, the caption that said, "Oh, look, he's holding a rifle." I don't appreciate that.
That's what happens when you come.
Then we don't have colors then. Then we don't have colors. If the parents are gonna feel that their kids are subjected to that, then you don't have colors.
If anybody came here, because it's a public meeting.
...to come here and present the colors, something that he is proud to do in a program that he is proud to represent, and then his picture is posted on a website with a bunch of garbage on it, quite frankly, and I don't appreciate it. And when I asked nicely, even phoned the gentleman and asked him, I was met with resistance. First I was told they got the picture from my school's website, which was not accurate. I was given three...
We'll look into that, thank you.
We can't fix it.
Okay, it was asked to move item 108 up because it has a lot of speakers as well. What's the board's pleasure?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, all right.
108?
108, Title I. Okay, yes.
Okay. I've put this item on the agenda about our implementation of Title I, as it was discussed at the last meeting. And one of the things about Title I is that we need to kind of...
Could you please move outside? Thank you.
Okay, I just want to make sure that this item is handled very thoroughly and very carefully tonight. Obviously, Title I funds are funds from the federal government designed to help schools that are heavily impacted by poverty, by students with poverty. The problem, I think, in the last meeting was that we were given a lot of numbers and a lot of dollars and lists of schools, and looking at all different scenarios, and there were five different scenarios about how to divide it up in terms of using the forty percent, the sixty percent, using various formulas, using everybody with the same, some with the same, and so forth and so on, where we're just dividing up the pie. And part of the problem I had is that we didn't really discuss, what is this money doing, what is it going for? Because the whole purpose of this money is to raise the level of achievement of the students with the most need. Now, so I operate on some information, for example, in studying ahead of time, where the federal government recognizes the schools most heavily impacted by poverty as being at the seventy-five percent level. I've even heard people say that if you're fully funding the Title I programs, you might not even be able to go below eighty percent. In San Diego, the overall for the district, we have almost sixty percent, fifty-eight percent to be exact, of students in this poverty range, which is the percentage for free and reduced lunch. So basically, with that sixty percent number, which we used that time, it's when schools that have an above-average amount of poverty would receive this, and those with the below-average did not. The real issue is this district is given about forty-three or forty-eight million dollars to do some really important things, to close the achievement gap, to lower our dropout rate, to make sure that our kids are learning to read, and this affects all of us, no matter what part of town we're in. We all are affected by having kids that are not succeeding in our system. The problem with Title I, in terms of talking with all the people up to this point, is that we haven't had a real clear plan. And I have heard through the years, and I've seen the board sit here and debate year to year, how are we gonna divide the formula, let's do it differently, and kind of continuing on the same for many years. I've heard talk about Title I funds that were used for buying copiers, for funding secretaries, for operational expenses of the schools. And one of the items that we had was, in looking at the forty-eight million dollar budget, was that the district is currently allotting five million dollars, five million, to administer that money, not to teach kids, not to raise their achievement levels, actually five million dollars. So there are a lot of issues that really need to be opened up and addressed on this Title I issue. Another thing that's happened, and I'll be as brief as I can, but with our underfunding of the schools, and particularly by the state to the district, but also the district to the school sites, the schools are left scrambling. And so, it's, nobody is taking this money and taking vacations or anything like that. But they're trying to rob Peter to pay Paul. It's for a particular purpose, but if they can just use it to keep the school going, that's what they're doing. The purpose of Title I schools, or the law for Title I schools, is to use to supplement education, not to supplant operational expenses. So, as I said, we took a principled stand that the money needs to go to help the neediest students where they are most concentrated. At the same time, we must not leave behind the schools that are in the forty to sixty percent category. But we must also not leave behind the schools that are in the thirty and twenty percent categories too. There are also poor kids that are going to those schools. But I think it's important that we have a smooth transition in terms of really developing our Title I plan. So what I'm going to propose is that to make a smooth transition, first of all, that for the first year, which would be next year, that we use the status quo formula for that year only. The problem I had with the program proposed by the administration last time was that it was actually increasing the funding for some of the lower-poverty schools and decreasing it for the higher poverty. Every scenario had some problems with it, but at least the status quo does recognize those who have the highest concentration of poverty as a starting point. Now, there's another factor, which is there's the possibility, and Superintendent Greer has mentioned this, that we will get additional Title I funds through the stimulus program if that is passed, and those could be used in more of a block in terms of helping in the neediest areas and not being used for this partitioning out to the schools. So what we'll be looking at is what the amounts for next year that they would have had under the pre-existing formula, that the schools would receive it according to the way that I am proposing it. But then we need to move ahead to find out how we can get this money concentrated on the schools with the highest level of poverty. And what I'd like to do as part of this is make sure that the staff gives us a report on how, on Title I funds, basically, how these funds were used this year for better or worse. And I know that in the process of saying the forty, sixty schools weren't getting anything, we've heard about some very good programs, but I would imagine that there are some not-so-good programs, the ways that's been spent that we haven't heard anything about. And then we need to have the staff also let us know how the funds will be used next year, and so there's not just some sort of automatic approval of the funds. And we need, and then, the other thing we need to do is develop a plan for these schools that are in the forty to sixty range, if they have good programs, and if the future is not going to be included in Title I, we need to find the proper funding, so that they have the same amount of dollars, if they have good programs, to continue them forward. The problem is, we've had nine years of the same system, and I don't think we have seen very great results. And I know Chuck Morris is very dedicated, and Brenda Campbell is working on this, to making sure that our Title I funds are there to do what they're really supposed to do, so we're not spending five million on administrations that we don't have funds misused. So, for example, if we're following, it would, in some cases, it would be more than they got last year, but just using a few different schools, an example, an elementary school, Mason, would get ninety-two thousand; high school, Claremont, would get a hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand; middle school, Stanley, would get a hundred-and-twenty-one thousand. So, I've discussed this a little bit, not specifically what I'm saying right now, but some information with the deputy superintendent and his interest in rooting out waste in the programs, looking for programs that work, and holding everybody accountable. So, my motion is that in order to, for a smooth transition, four things, that for two thousand nine, two thousand ten, we use the scenario number one, status quo tiered plan, that number two, additional funds that may come in from a federal stimulus program used, be used by the district directed to the places of greatest need as determined by the administration. Three, that the staff will provide a report on Title I of what's happened with it this year and what's going to happen with it next year. And four, that there's a special report on the forty, sixty schools, and how they can get the operating funds they need to cover the costs, make a smooth transition, and not lose any of their useful programs. That's my motion.
I second that.
I have a comment.
Mr. Beck, then Dr. Greer, then Ms. Nakamura.
I can't believe what I just heard. I met with you before you were elected, and I told you, I spent a lot of time with you, telling you about the system that was in place and the controversies that were around it. I said there was, the reason why we had a sliding scale for the support was the need to concentrate, and that boards before this time had gone through the process of trying to work out an equitable way to fund schools in high concentration, and I explained all of that. We then had a discussion around that again during the time we voted. And you want to now sit here and invent a new way to handle Title I. Title I is governed by federal law. It's governed by the fact that should be a DAC that makes recommendations to the school board. They made their recommendations, and you guys voted against their recommendations. I guess you have a right to change your mind, you have not been paying attention. You didn't pay attention back when I talked to you before the November election, you didn't pay attention while we're talking here on the dais, when we're making the decision, and now, because there's some kind of political pressure on you, you're gonna try and make some changes that really revert back to what the argument we were having at the beginning. Now, I'm not gonna shoot these people in the foot, but the truth is that you stole money from kids that were poor, that choose to go to other schools away from their neighborhoods. That's what you did. And the three of you voted that way, and we told you that at the time, and Catherine and I were, I think, strong advocates for that position. Now you're saying you want to be fair. Well, I don't think you intended to be fair in the first place, but what I think, what happened is you got caught in not being fair, and now you want to change it. Well, okay. You know what, if it comes to a vote, it'll turn around to be three-two. But I don't think you have the right, the portions that you're talking about, a report back about what we're gonna do, or an effectiveness study, is contrary to Title I. Title I's, you shake your head, because you know all about it. I'm just gonna say, Title I has its basic premise, that the school board decides where the money goes to schools based on concentration. We have policy decision, we have the ability to give some money to forty percent schools, we can give them the same amount as a sixty percent school, but we didn't. We haven't done it for twenty years plus. We gave them less because they were not a concentration school. We had a sliding scale on purpose. Okay? But anyway. Then you want to sell the, you want to tell the Title I people how to spend the money. You can't do that. We've lost that more than once. We went off, we had a uniform complaint, and we went off and got advice from the state, and the state said, oh yeah, you got a right to do all that, but we lost. We got the wrong time advice from people who spend their lives doing this, and you come along, and out of the blue, you decide you're gonna do it your way. It isn't gonna happen. You know what, I'll vote for this because it's good for the schools that take poor kids. But your ideas are totally wrong, and you ignored the past, and you should have to pay for it.
Dr. Greer, then Ms. Nakamura.
I'm not sure I want to get in the middle of all this, but I'll wade in anyway. Staff and I have spent a good bit of time thinking about this. And with all due respect, the piece that bothers me and bothered our staff is the tiered approach. I believe that a Title I student that's worth forty dollars south of the eight is worth forty dollars north of the eight. And so, I don't see giving individual students less money because of where they go to school. The question to me becomes, at what level of poverty does the board feel like we need to designate a school as a Title I school? Federal law requires any school that seventy-five percent or greater free and reduced lunch to be a Title I school. Now, they did that for a reason, because they felt like funds needed to go in areas of heavy concentration. They knew if they didn't do that, the money could be pushed all the way down to wherever. This issue of parental involvement is key to Title I. Mr. Beck is correct, the board decides where to spend the money. Then you have, by law, a parent advisory group, and we have one of the strongest, most vocal in San Diego that I've ever seen anywhere I ever worked, and I think they do good work. Having said that, we are, as a staff, going to work next year, as you have heard me say earlier, to say to that parent group, here are ways that you cannot spend that money. Because I think we, as a staff, have been maybe neglecting our duty to provide that type of oversight. What we're also gonna say to that group is, here are the research-based best practices. You can go to the U.S. Department of Education's What Works Clearinghouse, that's one thing they do well. They don't do a lot up there well, but that's one. And it tells you the programs in reading and math at work, and the kind of results you can expect to get. We're gonna provide that information to parents. But what this really comes down to at the end of the day is, as a group, you have to decide, is it forty percent, is it sixty percent? Our staff and I recommended forty percent and forty dollars per student, not because, frankly, we disagreed with the sixty percent, we thought you needed to transition to get there, and not bite it off at one time. I'm just being very frank in what we're saying. We thought if you went forty percent one year, if you went forty-five or fifty the next year, and then moved on down the line, it did two things. It gave people time to transition away, and it also gave us the opportunity to look at maybe how we do a different type of funding in the district, maybe looking at some kind of weighted formula to help offset that. That was the rationale behind our recommendation. And I will say that the parent advisory group, if you will recall, endorsed the recommendation that we made to you. So it was not just something the staff did, we did that after careful consultation with the parents' group. So I just wanted to put it in context.
But there's one piece of history that's left out, and that is, we were a school district, when this all came down, we were a school district that had a voluntary court-ordered segregation program. And what we wanted to do, and I wasn't on the board then, I mean, I honored those people who did it, because I think they thought this out, it was a very difficult problem, and you can't ignore what previous boards did in their judgment. What they did was, they said, we're offering, we don't have room, we still don't have room, by the way, south of eight, for all those kids. And some of people up here want them all to go back, and what they do is they go back to double sessions or multi-track year-round. That's what they'd have to do if some folks had their way, okay? Meanwhile, what happened before was, the board said, we're gonna honor, we're gonna honor the kids that choose to leave their neighborhoods voluntarily and go to another place. And because they move from their neighborhoods, there's some amount of money should come to support them when they go to those schools, because we also have an issue, we also have an issue around they're being accepted by these schools. So, and I, you know, I represent a community that said, no, we don't want any more busing, we don't want any more busing. I'm proud that they finally woke up. Okay? What they, they didn't wake up because they got forty percent money, they woke up because they learned that what the kids brought with them was worth a lot. And they ended up picking these kids that were bussed into Point Loma and making them ASB presidents. And I'm so proud to represent that community, because they overcame their original prejudice and started to work with the idea that it's a good idea for kids to mix in our community, because in the long haul, they're gonna be working and standing side by side together in our democracy. And probably, that's what happened with Obama and others, okay? But the point of it is, then to say, all of a sudden, we're gonna change all that, and we're gonna take from those people the money they've been using year after year after year to help kids that are poor survive in a well-to-do community, is not right. It's just not right. And we said it over and over and over again, to deaf ears. Well, you know, we, I disagree with the superintendent. I think that if you have a program of voluntary integration, and you have a program that everybody's saying, okay, it's now TIG money, you get to choose not to do it, so we're not gonna bus? Okay, I think we better bus, because it's good for our community to learn how to get along, not to be in ghettos, okay? So, okay, but the point of it is, if we're gonna allow people to move, as no child left behind requires, they get a chance to go to another school that's doing better than the school they're in because of this federal law. At the same time, we ought to say, okay, well, some of that money's gonna go with them to help them out. Well, it's, the law limits it to forty percent, okay? I'll go with that, because I think the people that sat on this board before I did got it right.
Ms. Nakamura, please.
Yeah, you know, I think...
You know, I think it takes a measure of humility to bring things back, you know, and say, "Well, let's take a look at this again." That's not an easy thing to do, Dr. Evans. I appreciate you bringing this back for discussion because when you add the numbers of students up, it's, you know, it's actually 14,545 students that we're cutting off. I mean, it's not a few kids. It's 14,545 kids. And those kids are not -- it's not that these kids are 40 percent poor or 50 percent poor or 59 percent poor. They're 100 percent poor. You know, they're certified poor, you know? And it is, you know, they had to meet the free and reduced lunch standard, which, sad to say, in this country is pretty darn hard to meet. So, you know, this is a particular community of kids, and I took the last vote very, very hard. I mean, I don't think I've ever taken -- I've been upset about a lot of votes on this particular board, but it's the first time, and those of you who know me know I will cry at the drop of a hat, but it is the first time I've woke up the next morning with tears and just feeling really devastated about the children that might be hurt by this. We have a sort of weighted-studented formula in the sense that they did do a tiered system, which I, when I learned about it, thanks to David Page, when the first time he told me about it, the head of the DAC, I thought was really very innovative because it does get after this. And I think, I wonder if the schools that have only a little bit of this money actually don't do a better job of spending it because it is so precious and it is a very small amount. You know, I don't think we know whether they do or they don't. I have heard reports of schools --
We have a data upstairs.
Excuse me, Mrs. Jackson. That's not -- we're talking about civility, right? So I think that, you know, that who's spending the money and how they're spending it and what the guidelines are, you know, that's something that I want the superintendent to get after, as I'm fond of saying, and I have no doubts that he will. I know that he's already started down that road. As far as that following a student, you know, on free and reduced lunch is worth X amount, whether it's north or south of 8th, or the level of poverty and the recommendations of the DAC, I'd be willing to amend the motion, offer that as an amendment to actually follow the advice of staff and follow the advice of the DAC for this particular year as we move towards this transition, if I can get a second for that.
Sure. My second.
Okay. For that vote. Because that is a recommendation of staff, and it's a recommendation of, you know, the DAC, and I think it will help with the transition. But I, more than anything else, do want to take a look at how this money is spent and make sure that it is spent responsibly. So we need -- we have a second for that amendment, but we need to vote on the amendment, I suppose, and then go back to the original if it doesn't pass, right?
The motion really is a reconsideration of the original recommendations, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's already there. I'm going to go ahead and speak now, Richard, and then I'll let you guys finish this up. I do believe that the money should be spent the way it was intended to be spent. This district does have a history. It has a history of using numbers, especially poverty numbers, to get money that you otherwise would not get. But then, once it gets that money, then it's spread it around the entire district. Now, my peers will say, "Well, you know what? I know you want all your kids in your district." Yes, I do. I want the students in my district to be able to get up in the morning and walk to school. In the morning, you got to my neighborhood, every corner, mostly every corner, you find children standing there in the rain, in the cold, 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, waiting on a bus. But let me tell you about some of my other experiences as a classroom teacher in some of those schools that received those students. You know, and let's be just, I'm just going to be honest here. It would be great, and Mr. DeBeck is right, some of those communities did not want those students. Some of those communities' schools only took those students to get the money. And once they got the money, they did not use it for the students. Now, I know that over the years, maybe some people have transitioned and have been using the money correctly. But I will tell you this. You can go upstairs tonight, Dr. Greer, and get on your data directory and look at how they've been spending this money. Look at the scores of those students that are bused to those schools. They've been bused there for year after year after year, and they're doing worse being bused to a school than they would be doing at their own school. So, no, go look. I look. So now, you go look for yourselves. Because what happens is, whenever I bring, whenever this comes up, people say, "It's not true." Well, I would say, "Go look." Yes, we've had problems with people spending their money inappropriately. Yes, we have a problem with people giving contracts to their friends inappropriately. And all this is in our records. But we turn a blind eye because, you know, it's only Title I funds, and we're not talking about Title I funds. And someone said, "We fight every year over this money." And the reason that principals and people come down here and fight so hard for it? Because all of their other money is accounted for. This they use as discretionary. This they use to buy bags for teachers. This they use to pay for copiers. This they use to buy furniture. That stuff has to stop in this district. So now, people say, "Okay, we want to change it, but let's not change it now. We want a transition period." But then what happens is, as you go through your transition period, people then say, "Well, you know what? I really don't want to change it because it's going to cause too much pressure." Well, until we're willing to take money that we receive for the children and put it with those children, we're going to continue to fail our most needy students. Because it's not -- Title I funds is not just spent on Title I students. It's spent on a lot of -- we supplement GATE. So let's be real here. The GATE only brings in close to a million, but the GATE budget is almost $10 million. That other $9 million, where does it come from? Title I. Anytime this district wants to fund a program, what they'll do is they'll put some needy kids up front, and they'll fund it for the other kids. I'm tired of it. You can rescind this vote. I vote every year for 60 percent. I'm not going to stop voting for 60 percent until maybe we'll get a board that has the guts to put the money with the students. Richard, you're up, and then John, you can -- and then we do public comments. I'm sorry.
Thanks for drinking water.
No, man.
I know.
Well, I think we need the students back in this room. I -- yeah. I just -- I frankly resent Mr. DeBeck, the, you know, the way that you characterize Dr. Evans' position.
I know what we said.
Dr. Evans took a principled position when we voted on this before, you know, voting against, you know, schools in his district because he was looking out for the greater good. Dr. Evans is taking a principled position now in wanting to make sure that we do this in a way that, you know, allows for a transition and doesn't simply lead to abrupt change. And I just think, frankly, that we need to, we need to come to the point on this board where we can recognize that when people disagree with each other, that people are taking positions out of principle, not out of political expediency, not out of back-room deals, not out of, you know, all of these, you know. It's just, it's way too easy to sit in judgment of other people. And it's not right. And you can choose to continue to sort of sit on your high horse and judge the motives of other people on this board. But I can tell you that I don't judge your motives in that way. I disagree with you on many things. But I don't, I don't think your motives are wrong or unprincipled. We just disagree. And I think that, you know, I think the same, I feel the same way about every member of this board. I've told that to, you know, a lot of people that have asked me about, you know, what it's like working with this board. And I would say that every single person on this board cares deeply about kids and takes positions out of principle. And then we disagree. So, you know, people can choose to, you know, think what you're going to think, but it's, I think people need to grow up a little bit, quite frankly, no matter how old you are. And here's, here's my feeling about this. I feel like I made an honest mistake, you know, when we voted on this the last time. I made a decision when I should have been asking questions. Because I think the questions that Dr. Evans, you know, is asking now are, in fact, the right questions. What I know is that the schools in neighborhoods with high concentrations of poverty, it's not, it's not a matter of choice, you know, for parents in terms of where they send their kids. Some people send their kids to the neighborhood school because that's where they need to send their kids. And some, and some people send their kids, put their kids out on the street corners so they can ride the bus and go up north because there aren't options that parents feel comfortable with, or it could be that there's simply not the space or not the facilities, you know, in the neighborhood. So we need to move towards a school district where parents really do have the choice of sending their kids to a quality school in their own neighborhood or to have their kids go outside of the neighborhood. But that choice isn't real right now. And part of the reason that that choice isn't real is because the schools in neighborhoods with high concentrations of poverty simply don't have the resources that they need to do the job of educating our students. So again, you know, I think about, we've got parents here from Chavez, and I thank you for coming, and we talked, we talked the other day. And parents, you know, when we met, talked about the fact that you used to have a strong reading program after school, and now you don't have it. You used to have programs during intercession, and now you don't have it. You know, we talk a lot up here about the need for professional development of teachers, but we've got one principal at that school who's responsible for all the professional development. And so, professional development just doesn't happen to the degree it needs to happen. And that story is, and the superintendent is, you know, is saying to us that what we really need to be thinking about in order to, you know, improve achievement in high poverty schools is more school, longer school days, longer school years, more preschool. Well, that sounds right. That sounds like the direction that we need to be heading, and that's going to cost money. And it's going to cost money that's going to require us to make choices. And so, I do believe that we need to do a better job of concentrating on our resources on the schools that need it the most. And I am going to support, not just with Title I. With Title I, I'm certainly going to support that the federal money that comes in, we do focus on, you know, the superintendent's recommendations of, you know, preschool, longer school year in schools like Chavez. That's what I want to see us do with that, with that new Title I money that we're going to receive from the federal government. I do want to have this conversation as a board about weighted budgets. It just simply can't be the case that a school that has a high number of kids learning English, a school with a high number of kids in special ed, a school with a high number of kids in free and reduced lunch, should get the same basic dollar per student in their budgets as schools that have low percentages of, you know, of kids in those situations. So I do think that we're going to need to rethink our priorities, think about concentrating our resources in the schools that need it the most. That doesn't mean that we should, you know, for schools in this 40 to 60 percent range, it doesn't mean that we should just pull the rug out from underneath you overnight. And that was the mistake that I made, and I apologize for that. And I'll make other mistakes, you know, as we go forward. I mean, there's no question about that. So I can support the amendment, Ms. Nakamura's amendment, because what I hear from the superintendent is this is a strategy that's designed to provide for some transition, and it's a strategy that's supported by the, by the parents, you know, who've been part of the committee that have been really studying this issue. And I'm certainly going to spend a lot more time going out and listening to the people on the advisory committee, going out and speaking to people in our schools. And in the future, when we've got decisions of this magnitude to be made that I'm not ready to make, then I'm going to, I'm going to say, "I've got questions right now, and I'm not ready to make that decision." And that's part of my maturation on this board. So I can support, I can support the amendment, and I support the principled position that Dr. Evans is taking, and I support the principled position that everybody on, here on this board is taking.
One of the questions that I was wrestling when we were making the vote the last time and which still, this is a complicated issue. And yes, I have discussed it previously with other people and have thought about it since, and I keep coming up with a lot of, a lot of different answers. And one is that the question was, as far as Title I funds, are they for school-wide programs or for individualized programs? And I have never gotten a totally clear answer on that, which makes it complicated in terms of making a vote. Because on the one hand, it makes sense that the money follows the individual child, just like if you had a special ed or anything else, that makes total sense. On the other hand, if the money is set up to, say, to help the most highly impacted schools with school-wide programs, then that's, that's another way to go. And they both have their justification and their rationale. I think what we saw when we were voting last time was, was an open process. I know there were references to, because of the fact that it was a certain vote, that it was arranged ahead of time or something like that. But to the contrary, we're sitting here wrestling with the information and trying to figure out what's going on. I think what, in hindsight, what I would have done, which is similar to what Mr. Barrera said, is I would have said, "I just need more information before moving ahead and making a vote on this." There, but there are issues here. I mean, there are a lot of issues here. One is, does, is the experience of a kid who, a kid who lives in poverty, who goes to the school in his poor neighborhood, is that the same experience as the kid, the poor kid who goes to school in a more affluent neighborhood? Or is there some advantage in one of those situations? And I think there, there very well may be. And there, so there are a lot of issues to be looked at. My whole thing has been to really step back and question, what, what is the purpose of this money? And then to make the right decision based upon that. And that's, that's what I'm exploring. This idea of just looking at a list of schools and dollars for schools, I don't think any school is entitled to any money just because they are a school. The money is to help kids. And so if we just think about, there's this infusion of $48 million to help kids in San Diego, how, the question is, how can that best be spent? And I've talked with staff a little bit about this, is sometimes the problem is when the funds are diluted. So you have very small funds going to some schools that can't really mount much of a program. On the other hand, maybe they're doing miraculous things with a very small amount of money, which I have heard in some cases, too. This is, this is another thing I've learned. So, and I don't know for a fact that when the money has been highly concentrated in one area, that it has necessarily produced great results. I do understand that the money is decided by the school site councils. The district advisory council must act on that. But I do believe that the district has a very important responsibility to approve or disapprove, not to dictate and say, "This is not how you spend the money," but to say, "No, that doesn't fit within the range of what we're supposed to be doing." Now, I know when I talked with Mr. Morris, that basically about this whole issue of the schools in the 40 to 60 range, that he did believe that there are a lot of things that can be done to make this a smooth transition for those schools if we, if we stick with the 60 percent plan for the future, where it's equal for the schools with the highest level of impacted by poverty, but that the 40 to 60 schools are not left out. And again, part of the reason that this 40 to 60 schools have depended on these Title I funds is because they haven't been given the right funding for the basic operations I funds is because they haven't been given the right funding for the basic operation of their school. Which is why, you know, this is not a sprint, it's a marathon, which is why I said, let's step back, okay, let's really plan this carefully and get this done right. And I know, yes, things have been done for many years, and I'm new on the board, and other people have figured these things out, but let's get it right with this board. And so that's why I was saying, let's stick with what is, has been the plan up until now, in terms of the scenario one, for a transitional year, but not wait until then and kick it down and decide then, but decide right now, how are we going to work to make this a smooth transition to the new plan?
Okay, we have a number of public speakers, and I want to thank you for your patience with the board. We have probably close to 30 people, I guess everybody who's going to be speaking.
I don't think they're all here.
But anyway, let me go through the list, and we'll see, we'll go ahead and leave it at three minutes then, because maybe a lot of people are gone. We have Martha Bertrand, Yolanda Mayhew, Chris Bellcamp, okay? Renee Coleman, and Sarah Sullivan. Okay, first five.
Good evening, school board members, and Madam President. My name is Martha Witron. I live at 5970 Trojan Avenue. I am a proud parent, an extremely proud parent, of four Title I children. Three of my four sons attend Hardy Elementary. And if you could just briefly look to your left, you will see that we are on Title I Academic Achievement Award for 2006 and 2007, and if you have the 2008 banner, we'll be up there also. And, sorry. Our total student population at Hardy is 360. Of these 360 students, 199 students received Title I funds. Our percentage is 55%. This means that more than half of our students receive free or reduced meals. I am here this evening as an aware and concerned Hardy parent. I am here because I wholeheartedly disapprove of the voting decision by the school board members regarding the allocation of Title I funds. I believe it is ethically wrong to not allot this money to Hardy Elementary. We will be losing the sum of $28,000 much needed dollars. Bottom line, we need this money back. Without these funds, we will lose our reading support, we will lose our instructional assistance support, and we will also lose our instructional supply support. I want all the school board members to know that we all at Hardy can be held accountable. Our numbers demonstrate it, our increasing academic achievement for all of our students. Our implemented programs are successful and beneficial. I truly believe that the money should follow our student, or at least our percentage. The message I feel you are sending with your decision is that my children and our children at Hardy are not worthy of receiving these much needed funds. I would like to briefly remind you all that Title I is a K-12 program that provides additional academic support and learning opportunities for students at schools with high percentages of socio-economically disadvantaged children. The program is intended to help ensure that all students meet state academic standards. Without our much needed Title I funds, you are putting our children's education at Hardy Elementary in serious jeopardy. I truly hope that you all reconsider your previous decision, which I think you kind of are doing. And I'd like to thank you all for your time and consideration. But before I get done with my three minutes, I would just like to address to Madam President, I have a son that stands out in the corner at 6:00 in the morning and gets bussed out to Claremont. I don't leave him until he boards that bus, though. And he's one of those children that, at our, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little nervous.
Okay.
At my school, which where he was at, was at Carson Elementary, he was student president, so, you know, we've always been pushing stuff. So he was bussed out to Marston. For his three full years, he's had, he's been on, I just get kind of nervous, he's been on honor roll all three years. He graduated from Marston with the All-American Award from all his teachers, and he's doing great at Claremont High. I don't see any, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No one's discriminating against any of the same.
Anna, I didn't say all, but there's some that happens too. Anna Guerrero, Joseph Benkit, Owoslo Sanchez, Monica Vilches, okay, and Trayvon Pollak. Pollak, okay, that's the next five. Sylvester Rivera, Brenda Corona, Margaret Johnson, okay, we got one back there. Sheila Morgan, and Mary Martinez is the next five.
Very Hardy soul, oh, that was the previous teacher, student, current. We're getting silly up here.
I'd like to thank the board. Madam President, board members of Dr. Carr, my name is Margaret Johnson. I'm the principal at Ocean Beach Elementary. I'm thanking you for reconsidering how to structure Title I. You all know Ocean Beach as a diverse and spirited and artistic community. 59% of our students are receiving free and reduced lunch. The signs of poverty are visible in Obi. Six out of 10, or approximately 12 out of 20 students in our classrooms, may be receiving free and reduced lunch. It's important to realize that our office staff, community assistants, spend a great deal of our day reaching out to our community, because as Dr. Evans has explained, we're trying to balance meager budgets and our Title I budget to find resources for financial, medical counseling, and support for our families. Each Friday, 22 students take home backpacks with food for the weekend in Ocean Beach. Our staff and families have worked very hard with our students to raise the expectations that all children can learn at Ocean Beach Elementary. John, you're very, very right about that statement. We've had to really think hard about all of our students and what they can do and raise our expectations. The results do show in Ocean Beach, our test scores continue to rise. We belong on that wall for 2008, and we are a California distinguished school. We were previously told that'll never happen in Ocean Beach. Thank you for reconsidering. We're working hard. Quite honestly, Sheila, I understand what you're saying. We don't have the frills, we don't have extra teachers for reading, we've lost all of that. We don't have a PAL, we don't have an English language support teacher. It's been about hard work and high expectations, and a parent community that was willing to rally around the school. So we have $35,000 for Title I. That's not a lot, but it's made a real difference. And thank you for coming together and considering our needs. Thank you.
Sheila Moran, principal at Challenger Middle School, 1672 Chocolate Bell Trail Alpine. And I just want to, we had about five or six people here, but unfortunately, they weren't able to stay for the duration of the meeting. About 50% of our students are eligible for free and reduced lunch. We're the third highest performing middle school in San Diego, unified behind Marshall Middle School in Scripps Ranch, and Muirlands in La Jolla. We're working very hard, we're providing our students with extra teacher support and instructional supplies. And on behalf of the Challenger community, I'm asking you to rescind the threshold back to the 40%. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Barge.
You missed Mary Martinez.
I did.
All the Challenger people.
Yeah, I did, all Challenger. Okay, then I come down to Diane Correll. Followed by Tracy Ikumoto.
Good evening.
I'm close, I hope, thank you.
Diane Correll, 33-year teacher veteran, San Diego Unified. I worked at Logan Elementary for the first nine years of my career, second language bilingual teacher, in charge of the Veep schools, and making sure there was something for those kids when they got there, for about nine years. Currently at Toler Elementary School. And as you know, Toler is one of those schools that would lose out to the tune of $54,000. And I kind of prepared three scenarios of what I think that the new members on the board may have bought into, and I want to respectfully honor your passions, but I want you to hear ours as well. And the first urban legend that I think you've bought into is that poverty is only south of eight, that poverty is only in the large impacted schools. Poverty is clearly in Bay Park, poverty is clearly in Claremont areas, Mira Mesa areas. Poverty is everywhere in San Diego now. We are an urban district. And to delineate and take those funds and concentrate them, where does it leave the 100% poor kids in those other areas? Second thing I think is kind of an urban legend now, although I think it was true historically, is that the Title I funds have been misused. At Toler Elementary, for the last seven years, I have sat on the SSC, and we have worked tirelessly, trying many different formulas to spend that money, always targeting the children who are in most need. And we have come up with some pretty good ideas that have shown in our test scores. We're happy to share them. I ask, why don't you put a menu out for people of best practices on this, but don't take the money away from these half 50% to 60% schools? We're your little workhorses out there. We do much with very, very little. And to take that money away from us, you're going to shoot us in the leg. It's killing us to do that. The third urban legend, I think, is that somehow the schools north of eight somehow are so wealthy that they've been able to get private foundations going for them, and that they can fill in the gaps somehow. And while that may be true at a few schools, it's certainly not true at schools like Toler Elementary, Hardy, and some of the others you've heard from tonight. We have middle-class parents working sometimes two jobs, and also serving on the PTA, putting on fundraisers so that they can provide field trip transportation. Our Title I money has gone for, call us and come visit us.
Last sentence, okay, thank you. Tracy, followed by Marie C. and Laura Gaten.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tracy Ikemoto Urobi, and I live at 1325 Cabanito Gabaldón, and 92108. Dear Honorable Board Members, first off, I want to say thank you for your reconsiderations, but I will go ahead and read what I prepared. I'm a proud parent of a third-grade student at Jones Elementary, and that was me buzzing earlier when he asked me to drop the phone. It was my son's bedtime, but this is so important. I'm fortunate to be able to be an active volunteer at Jones. I currently preside as our Jones PTA president, I'm secretary on our Jones, Friends of Jones Foundation, as well as I'm a parent advisor on our SSC, and I represent a Gate student as well. And along with greatly being honored to sit on the boards, I'm also a classroom volunteer. I've worked in kindergarten classes since my son was in kindergarten himself, which he's in third now. And primarily, I've given one-on-one support to ELL students at the teacher's request. And our Jones motto is for our kids to be middle school prepared, high school ready, and college bound. And we believe that our students can do that, and we've proven that through our increased API scores over the years. I understand that during this financial crisis, that we're all experiencing, the last people that should be affected are our students, our children. They're going to be our future as well. And I believe that we need to provide equal education and maximize learning for all of our students, not just a few. As I was saying earlier, at Jones, in the last five years, we've been awarded the Title I Academic Achievement Awards three times. We've had increased attendance, both in days in school, as well as increased enrollment. And again, we've increased our API scores consistently as well. And all of these achievements are in direct correlation with our Title I funding through student assistance and the programs that we offer. Some of the programs that are going to be really hit hard by loss of Title I funds would be our guidance aid that is able to work with our students that need that assistance, our counseling that's able to assist those students that are going through transitions, as well as our resource specialists and our English language learning instructors. So we want to be able to help support them as well. So just on, in conclusion, I believe that our Title I funding should be applicable to each and every student. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria C., Laura Gaten, I'm sorry, Gaten, M. Joseph, Valentina Hernandez, David Page.
Hi. Hello? My name is Margaret Joseph. I'm from Challenger Middle School. I'm one of the vice principals. And I want to reiterate what my principal, Mrs. Moran, said, and just tell you a little bit more about Challenger. She said we are the third highest performing middle school, and we are. Our API increased by 27 points last year, we're very excited. Nearly half of our students qualify for free and reduced lunches. Nearly half of our students. Of the 554 students who ride the bus, who come to, who are, excuse me, who qualify for free and reduced, 200 of them ride the bus. So many, over half of those students are our neighborhood kids. So you're right, we do have urban legends out there. Mira Mesa does have students who hit the poverty level. I am so delighted that you've changed your mind, and you're going to reconsider this vote, because we do use our funds wisely. Come out and see us, we're a great school. I encourage you to ask us questions about how we spend our monies. Thank you.
David Page, Renee Coleman, Liliana Garcia.
My name is David Page. I reside at 9393 Angwin Place in Serra Mesa, zip code's 92123. I'm the DAC chairperson for, it's actually the District Advisory Council for Compensatory Education, and we are the body that meets and discusses these matters through parent involvement. Just a couple of brief points regarding weighted budgets. Mr. Barrera, you should contact San Francisco Unified School District. They developed by hiring a specific administrator for their finance department to come up with a weighted distribution of funds for the general budget and the other budgets. So have a look at their scenarios, they're happy to talk about it. But I do want to raise a concern. It seems to me that we've got several new board members here. It would have been nice if you'd attended some training, such as the DAC provides, so that you would fully understand what goes on. I keep hearing about not knowing where the money's going. The problem is understanding this whole process. We talk about the money first, because the money has to be distributed in an equitable manner. We can't talk about what program one school's going to get compared to what program another school's going to get. The money has to be distributed first. After that, then we talk about where it's spent. This board is responsible for the final signature on the local education agency plan, the LEA plan. It's also the final signature on the school site plans. You see the funding. The problem in the past has been that this board has not had proper controls within its departments that watched over these funds. And so Virginia Eves at Madison High School was allowed to buy furniture with Title I. The director of Title I at the time came to me and said, well, if you're going to hire a Title I employee, they got to have a desk, and it could be cherry wood. And that kind of thought process in the employees of this district is what caused that, and then not having the oversight at the board level. I come before this board year after year, and I ask that you act like Modesto Unified. Modesto Unified requires that school site councils to make proposals of the SSC's plan to the superintendent. Now, that's easy, they've got 30 schools. But when you had literacy coaches, and I asked, have them present their plan to the literacy coach, they said, well, it's not in their description. Well, there went that accountability. So how about when we had area superintendents? Well, no. Now we have SIOs. Can we ask the SSC to be required to form and present to the SIO, here's our plan, we swear it's going to work, and have some accountability on the SSC finally, not just the principal? That this is the group that's supposed to be doing all this.
Good.
Planning. The LEA plan is the district's plan for how to use the consolidated application that we approved. That's where the money comes and goes. The programs are in the LEA plan, the funding comes from the consolidated application. Those two pieces are signed off by this board and approved, but the LEA plan has been underdeveloped. I had to force Gino Flores to redevelop the LEA plan after five years. It was inadequate and didn't describe what was going on. The LEA plan is your ability for accountability as to where district money goes for district-level programs, and is the lead document for how to direct your school site councils to do their planning. You create an LEA plan, you tell them what to do. The school site plans need to come before this board. What I don't understand, or what I'm concerned about, is the hope that this new direction for how to direct your school site councils to do their planning. You create an LEA plan, you tell them what to do. The school site plans need to come before this board. What I don't understand, or what I'm concerned about, is I hope that this new direction is not an epiphany from the SDEA calling people on the phone when their program improvement money left and their Title I money left, and these teachers are all noticed. I hope it's not an epiphany about class size reduction, that this is really about the students. And the DAC came before you and explained 50%. We said, "Look at the data and base it on data, not just knee-jerk, and who's crying and who's not." I hope your next response is not on who called you on the phone, but on data, and what can we do this? And that you have a better plan, and it sounds like you do. I told this to you last time. I'm encouraged by the new regime here. They're going to have some more accountability about how this money's spent. And you are the ones who approve it. So although the SSC makes a proposal to you, you're the final arbiter, and your staff. So just make sure you have good staff and good plans.
Thank you, David. Renee Coleman. Liliana Garcia. Miriam Garcia.
It's a short person.
Oh, okay, come on down.
Come on down. We haven't heard from the likes of you. You do know this is that you're what it's all about, right?
Hi, my name is Liliana Garcia. I'm in fifth grade. I go to Cesar Chavez Elementary School. I came because I want intercession to my school because I see a lot of kids, including me, that are... Cannot have... Some kids are more smarter, and then some don't know that much English. Like last year, I had a new student in our class. She came from Mexico, and she still doesn't know English. And she couldn't assist intercession, but it... But she needed more. She's trying to... She's working hard, but at the same time, she can't. She wants to improve her grades and work harder. So that's why I think intercession could help students get better grades and reclassify better and get smarter and improve themselves.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anna Alvarado and Susan...
Buenas noches. I'm Miriam Garcia. And I vengo representando los padres de Cesar Chavez. Venemos por la necesidad de que nuestra escuela tiene un alto nivel de niños. Que tenemos 600 niños en la escuela.
We come out of the need that our school has more than 600 children in our school.
Y estamos suplicando que nos estén una subdirectora porque vemos el trabajo que tiene la directora de nuestra escuela.
We're pleading for our vice principals because we see all of the work that the vice principal has to do.
Y este... Lo más importante de nosotros son nuestros hijos, y miramos cómo ella se distribuye entre tantos alumnos, y queremos el apoyo de ustedes.
The utmost important thing for us is our children. So we need your support.
Gracias. Buenas noches.
Thank you. Any more discussion from the board members?
No, we have one more person.
Okay, one more person, I'm sorry.
Good evening, or night, I say. My name is Anna Alvarado, 3684 Berth Street, San Diego, California, 92113. Like I said, my name is Anna Alvarado, and I'm representing Cesar Chavez. I would like for you to hear my concerns, not only for my daughters, but for my community. Our school is in much need of after-school programs, such as reading recovery, math, and English learning, language development. We believe that our school needs a fair share of Title I funds because of the many needs of our students, parents, teachers, and our principal, are working very hard to help our students with their learning. However, we want Title I funds to be given to the most needed schools to support educational programs for our students. We also like to have support during school, after-school, and intercession. I myself volunteer every day for an hour on my daughter's second-grade class. She's reading above her level because she's very lucky to have me and her dad, who we are both bilingual. I would say that about 80% of that class does not know how to read. And we're talking about our second-grade class. Now, it hurts me because these kids go home, and I ask them, "Can you have your parents help you with their spelling list every night so the whole class can get 100%?" Because they all wonder, "How can Yarrelli, which is my daughter, get 100% every week on her spelling test?" "Mrs. Alvarado, I can't do it." And I say, "Well, go home and study and read. Have your mom give you a test, pre-test, you know, sentences or something with your words." Well, she can't help me because she doesn't... She can't read English. And my dad's working two jobs. How about your older brother or your older sister? They got too much homework, or they have to go to the library and use the computers. So basically, what I'm asking is for after-school reading recovery, help for the learning kids that are learning their English as a second language. And it's just basically what we need. That's all we're asking for, what we need. I would like for you to visit our school, Mr. Alvarado, last week, and we express our concerns. And I would like for the board to, one of these days, if you have the chance and the time, to go to our school and see what our kids need, which is for you to support on what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more board member comments?
Yes, I'd like to...
Is there another one? I'm sorry. Please come on up.
I'm just saying last name.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Susana Garcia. I live on 3894 Z Street, 92113. We just wanted to ask you to, when you make your decisions, don't just base them on the population of the school, base them on the necessities of the school, of the kids in the school. In our school, we have 100% of our kids have free lunch, receive free lunch. 75% of our kids are English learners. We have an API for two, with a score of 696, 696. And we're really close for three. And if you take out those... We don't have extra resources. If you take out those little resources that we have, it's going to make even worse. It's going to... Instead of having our kids go a little bit up, I know we're not the highest score. We don't have the highest scores in our school. But our kids really, really work hard. We have many parents that really work hard to help their kids. We have many volunteers in the school. We're lucky to have many volunteers. We have a principal that really supports our parents because they support our kids. And we actually... If you're going to make those decisions, please, when you make those decisions, think about the kids because your decision's going to make big impact on the future of our kids. Because if you don't help them right now in the elementary years, they're the ones that are going to be on the gap. Like you said, it's a big gap. Well, our kids are the ones that are going to be falling in that gap later on, if we don't help them right now in the elementary years. So please, when you make your decision, think about the kids that need it the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Evans? I'm sorry, any more speakers I missed out there? Very good, Dr. Evans.
I just wanted to ask Chuck Morris if he could come forward for a minute to put you on the spot. I just want to go over a little of the... I had a conversation with you. It was informal, and you can deny we ever had the conversation if you want, but...
I deny it.
But anyway, it has to do with this whole issue of the transition and when we had originally set it at 60% and how that transition can be made. And of course, today, I've said I think that we need to go back to the initial plan for next year and then kind of build from there. But in terms of... Could you just kind of address what you see as far as with these schools down the road and as far as after next year in terms of this 40 to 60 range, how their needs might be met with or without Title I funds?
Well, what we've said before is we're going to be a school system that's going into program improvement. And part of that is that we have to set aside 10% of all of our Title I dollars for professional development, which is allowed then to be used across the district. In fact, that's part of the federal guidelines that is part of initiatives that you do that across the district. Based on some of the schools that are at the 40% level, we would be able to actually work with them in terms of professional development dollars because many of them, at this point, get a few dollars. I mean, I think you heard somebody said had $30,000. I'm not exactly sure what they're using that for. The other thing is what we're looking at is a district of Title I, is looking at what can we put into all schools, for instance, and a assessment piece in all schools, and interventions in all schools because all students need interventions. So in many ways, we can, looking at the long-term process, be able to help some of these schools if, over the next couple of years, our goal is to transition.
So, I mean, would you say that there would be... And I know you're not just talking to specific dollar amounts, but there would be a way to... That we would be able to... If there was a good program, something they're doing with their $30,000 or $40,000 or $50,000, that there would be some way to continue that?
I think...
I mean, through... Because we talked about the fact that they are... Their site funding is not properly done in the first place.
Well, what I hear about the initial motion is that this year, they would... That would... They would still get money this year. Over the next couple of years, which is Dr. Greer's talked about in terms of us transitioning to a different level, then we can look at other funding sources to assist as a system-wide effort that would affect all of the schools in the district. And, you know, I would say to you that... And, you know, in all honesty, we come from a district where 60% is the norm for middle and high schools, not necessarily for elementary schools. We tried to do it at a lower level, and we didn't get the bang for our buck. Our recommendation was to do 40% this year on a equal... The money follows every child, thinking that over the next few years that we would begin to make the transition so that that money would be in a different area. Part of all of this, as far as I'm concerned, and I think Dr. Greer is wrapped up in, the formula allocations. If we can actually get formula allocations into the schools, they're going to be better off just because they're not having to go out and find money to take care of things that they don't get in the first place. So you may have... You may have some of these schools that are using Title I to do something that they wouldn't have to do under a funding formula. So that's the reason we're working hard to try to figure out how to make that happen because those schools will become much stronger and will actually benefit greatly if we can figure that out. So to answer your question, I think there's lots of things we're trying to do, not only for the 40 to 60 schools, but for all of the schools so that they can take those categorical funds they do have and focus them where they're supposed to be focused.
Right. It's just that the 40s to 60 ones are in a special situation in terms of having had this funding up to this point.
That's correct.
For the Title I. Thank you.
Any more comments from the board members? If not, please vote.
I'm not ready to vote. I'm not going to rush any vote on this one.
You don't have to rush. Whatever, go ahead.
Are we voting on the motion, on the amendment, on...
Amendment first.
Amendment first.
Okay, well, please bear with me. Repeat, what is the amendment?
The amendment is...
The amendment was of... Excuse me. The amendment was to have your funding ratio with the schools to be 40% and to have the $40 per student follow the student wherever they go to school. That was your amendment.
Actually, my amendment was to... Was to follow the advice of the staff and the DAC, which is that recommendation.
Which is that recommendation.
So...
Okay. I just have to make sure I understand because I'm still lost. So you're saying amending from what I had said in terms of the status quo formula to...
Keeping everything else because I really like what you wrote about the... You know, checking where the additional funds are going to go and everything else.
Okay, but just so I understand, so change...
Just a point of order, real quick. The DAC did not agree with the staff proposal. Just so you know. The staff proposal was scenario two, which was flat rate and 40%. DAC was scenario one, which was with the tiers.
Was it with the tiers?
The status quo.
It was a split decision.
Status quo.
I apologize.
The split was for another scenario, right?
The split was for the one you chose in four. So... But... And they also voted for... If they took out all these scenarios and had their druthers, it was 50% and flat rate. So from whatever that is, I just don't want us to be on record as agreeing with... So, from whatever that is, I just don't want us to be on record as agreeing with-
Yeah, I apologize. I thought it was 40% and flat rate.
Okay, but just so, just so I understand, maybe-
He said it was 50% and flat rate.
Like I said, your motion was status quo.
Status quo.
Status quo.
So, the DAC, just a second. So, the DAC said, said either status quo or-
50% in flat rate.
Or 50% in flat rate, which 50% in flat rate was not even one of the scenarios that we were even presented with.
And your motion was status quo.
Your motion was status quo.
Right, I understand.
The amendment was to follow staff directions. Let's do the amendment first. The amendment was to follow staff direction, which was-
40% in flat rate.
40% following the student.
Okay, so, can we vote on the, when it clears the, um-
I just need a minute here.
Okay, and then, we're voting on the amendment, which is to follow the staff recommendation, which would have been 40%, and I'm sorry, clear the board again, I'm sorry, I pressed the wrong button.
So, all the schools would get the same number per pupil.
Right.
And it would-
Why are you saying 40 dollars?
That's just what was in the recommendation.
Just how much it is for flat rate.
40 dollars.
It's a flat rate, that would be flat rate.
There was never a recommendation that was that low.
Was it 40 dollars? A student, I'm, I'm sorry, here-
It's not that low.
300, I don't know.
Was it?
Where's 40 come from?
Was it 340 something?
343 dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
343 dollars per student, I apologize.
Okay.
I don't know where I got the 40 dollars.
So, was this, was this scenario two?
Hmm, I don't remember.
It was scenario two.
Scenario two.
It was 40%-
That's where I got the 40 dollars.
Flat rate.
Right.
Yep. 40%, 342 dollars per student, flat rate.
And that's the staff recommendation.
That's the staff, and that's the amendment.
Staff recommendation, and also-
And the-
The DAC did not go for that, because you went for the status quo or 50.
Right.
Right, because it, I believe they did it, because there's a concentration in the status quo. There's no concentration in this, in this motion of the flat rate.
Uh-huh.
So, what you're saying is that every single kid, if we follow the First Amendment, every single kid that's in a 40% school or higher, if the concentration in the school is more than 40%, free and reduced lunch, that the school would get 343 dollars per pupil.
Per pupil.
Which is not concentrating the money more in the high-concentration schools. So, for example, a 60% school would get no more per pupil than a 40% school. And I can't support that.
You can't support the amendment?
I can, I can only support the, the status quo. That is, the plan we had last year, which concentrates the money in the highest-poverty schools. I do believe that there's a real synergy between having more money per pupil in a high-concentration school. I don't agree that you should take the money away from a kid because they're in a 40% school, all right? And I'm concerned, I've voted this way for the last 10 years, 20 years, so I'm not gonna change it. I believe in what I say.
Okay. So, the amendment, we're gonna vote on first.
Well, what was-
The amendment is that we follow staff recommendation, which is, it is a flat rate of 343 dollars per student, regardless of where they are, down to 40%.
And, and if I can just take one minute for rationale, you've got a school out there that has 800 free and reduced students, which is the largest number of free and reduced students in the entire district, except for one school, that's gonna get $140,000 less on a tiered system. Now, I mean, it's, if we, we've tried for years to figure out, how do you do tiers and then pay for kids, and it doesn't work. But you literally have one school that will get $140,000 less and have more free and reduced lunch kids than another school who's above 60.
60%? I can tell you guys, yes.
So, if we don't do anything today, and we get a better report that we can actually look at and determine the results, would it be to the board's advantage to understand that or not?
And, and I'm gonna, it's probably late, and I'm probably gonna say something I shouldn't say, so you'll just have to slap my hand and tell me to go home. Part of the problem we're dealing with right now is we're up against some major timelines.
Exactly.
We're trying to get workbooks done. We are actually, the options, folks, the deadline closes on February the 15th, as it now stands, that once you did your vote in January, we put all of the wheels in motion to notify parents about choice. We're now going to have to go back, and that's perfectly fine, we've got the plan ready to go, to do that, to go back. But if we're not careful and we delay the vote, then we will be putting off the options piece until March the 1st to be able to do everything we have to do.
So, you're saying we can't wait?
I'm just saying to you, there is an urgency here for us to be able to move forward.
That, in terms of, that's my rationale for the stat-
You convinced me.
My rationale for the, the status quo is that's what the schools are familiar with for the next year, and there's a time crunch, and, but that, that's just for the next year, and we need to evaluate.
Okay.
Okay, so can we just vote on the amendment? The amendment is to follow staff recommendation, which is a flat rate at 40%. Please vote.
I have to say, he convinced me, so here we go.
Okay, and that-
Passed.
Pass for-
Okay. Great. Okay, and that's-
All right.
Now, we go back to the motion.
No, it passed.
I thought we were voting on the amendment.
We did. The amendment passed, it, that makes sort of overrides the other.
Now, we can start my question.
Okay, so-
Oh, gosh.
Staff can do what-
It's after 10 o'clock.
Well, it's after 10 o'clock, but we still got a little bit of work to do, people, board members.
Thank you, audience.
Do we, do we-
We have a rule on how long we're supposed to meet.
We've got issues that we need to-
Well, can we amend that rule, so we can get the last bit of this done?
Yeah, can we just, we, just this thing with your regards to district. The only thing that's gonna take a lot of time is the district mandated tests, I think. Dr. Evans, do you have-
I got one person who is willing to stay.
Yeah.
John?
I'm willing to stay, I'm good.
Okay, let's finish this up. Let's go back to item 104, which is the superintendent's task with regards to district mandated tests. Dr. Evans.
Okay. Okay, this is based, basically on the experience of talking to teachers in, who during the months of September and October were very overwhelmed by all the testing, which was basically, if I'm talking to anybody here, test, test, teach, test, test, and then it was taking a lot of time away from instruction. And then there was some confusion also about what was required, what was suggested, what was strongly encouraged, which kind of all ends up in the required sort of category. I come back to the whole issue of what is the purpose of testing, and whether it's from a psychological point of view, that I do testing or educational, the point is to diagnose a problem and find a solution, which is basically to find out how the students are performing and how to, how to improve the instruction. I'm saying that because with NCLB and state mandated testing and so forth, it does not become, it's not there to help the individual student, it's just there to give schools and teachers and so forth test scores and ways to be ranked and categorized. So, the problem is there are certain tests that are required by, by the federal government and the state government, but then on top of that, we have these district mandated tests. My thought initially was, let's just do a moratorium on all, all tests that are being mandated by the district. But in the interest of doing things, as we're talking about with the Title I, in terms of doing them in a very orderly matter, rather than just changing midstream in the middle of the year, I wanted us to set up a system where we can direct the, the staff to, to come up with a plan and rationale for what testing should be included or not included, what should be required, what should be optional for next year, with the provision that this be done with, with a group of teachers, because the teachers are on the front line, they're the ones who know what tests are helpful in their instruction, which ones are not helpful, and, and that is what the, the purpose of the testing is, other than the state and the federal tests. And when I say working with the teachers, I don't mean just kind of handpicked by a particular administrator who likes particular tests and puts a teacher on there who's gonna back him or her up on that, but actually, that's working together with teachers that are selected by other teachers to come up with a, a joint plan for next year. So, that's my proposal, rather than putting a moratorium instantly on this year.
So, you're making, did you make a motion?
So, my motion is that we direct staff to begin working on the issue of district mandated testing, as far as what's required, what's optional, and work with a group of teachers selected by other teachers to come up with a plan for next year.
Want a second?
I'd second that, I think.
Okay. Any discussion? Just to the back?
Well, there's a great deal of disagreement between the teachers and the principals about the testing, and basically, your motion says the principals won't have anything to say about it. Maybe you need to have a balance of people.
I agree.
But not just teachers. So, I'd like to make an amendment that, you know, you can determine that, that there ought to be some administrative representation on this committee.
I agree.
Well, the other thing too, is that I don't, I mean, it's, it's, oh, thank you. The other concern is, this could be pretty complicated, because you've got elementary school, middle school, and high school, and they're all different sets of tests, as you've done the, you've already started this review, Dr. Greer, can we, this is something people have been complaining about for a long time, and I think it would be a relief for folks to know that we're actually looking at this, and, and this would sort of formalize a process that seems to have already started. Can you, you wanna talk to this as a superintendent of the district and your-
Well, I think that quite clearly the research on testing is, is very clear. It's, most teachers, when they start using formative assessment, don't complain about the testing as being something extra, they see it as a way to help improve learning. Formative assessment is basically a way for teachers to see whether or not children have mastered what they've taught, and if they haven't, then you go back and take several days or even a week to reteach objectives or concepts. Now, it's a big part of the Benjamin Bloom mastery learning concept, and it's one of the most effective ways, along with cooperative learning, to improve student performance, particularly of poor and disadvantaged children and of, of boys. And we know that. The key to it is, excuse me, how do you develop a, a formative assessment testing program that is teacher-friendly, that is, where you use technology to help drive the process so that it doesn't become burdensome from a, a time perspective? And we've talked a lot about how teachers use time. That gets to be the biggest problem. So, yes, we're, we're looking at that, and, and have started looking at that. It was very fascinating to me, I sat here smiling and grinning at the, one of the teachers that was talking about the charter school that's gotten such good results, and she sat here talking about a mapping program for formative assessments that they're using, which Chuck will tell you is one of the ones that we are looking most closely at. And I thought, here's a successful charter that's using a program that we want to emulate. And so, yeah, we can put a committee of teachers and principals together, I just hope we don't get into a big debate about whether or not this is what we ought to or ought not to be doing versus how we should go about doing this, because this, there's a handful of strategies that everyone agrees that works in terms of raising student performance. And quite frankly, where I get disappointed sometimes with, with our discussions is that I don't, I would like for us to talk more about student performance, and I very much appreciated what Dr. Evans was saying tonight about Title I dollars, and is how those, or how we're spending those monies generating student success in terms of academics. And so, I hope we can have that same dialogue about testing programs. I worry also, quite frankly, that at the state level, that the state of California is requiring too much testing, and that bothers me a great deal too. So, I think as you talk about how you can lobby and work with elected officials, that's a way to save a great amount of money at the state, because those state tests are extremely expensive to, to produce, to validate, to score, and to administer. So, that, there's a whole lot to this testing piece that goes beyond what we do here in the district. So, yes, to answer your question, we, we can do all of that.
And I think that's, I guess that's the type of information that, that we wanna hear, but we want teachers included and principals.
Right.
And, you know, the folks that are actually boots-on-the-ground doing this, and, you know, that I've, you know, I've said repeatedly, I don't have a problem with testing. My kids have never complained about testing, I've never had any problem with testing. You know, they, that in my family, it's not been a big issue, but I do know that there are some families that they feel that it is, and if, if, we can sit down and have a conversation about that, I think that that's a healthy thing to do. And it might help guide, you know, if you want us to do lobbying, you know, we'll bird dog it for you, but you gotta tell us where the bird went down, so.
Okay, so is the motion in a second, but is it modified to include administrators?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, teachers and administrators. And I just wanted-
Then let's vote.
I just wanted to respond to what Dr. Greer was saying, just the importance of the teachers being involved in the process in terms of the ultimate success of it. And I do appreciate what you had done in terms of surveying the teachers and the principals about the, the tests that you've been doing, but, and I think that even shows that there are plenty of tests that, that a majority felt were useful. But I think even if it's 20, 30, 40% of teachers who are feeling that something's not useful, that, that, that it's a problem. And I'm not, I'm not saying you can ever have 100% agreement on something like that, but I think if it's done, if, if teachers really feel, we sent some people there, and we know those are good teachers, and they're, they're kind of showing, speaking up for what we think is helpful in the classroom, it's gonna help a lot with the results.
Okay.
Leave it at that.
Please vote.
0.
Dang.
Haven't seen that in a while.
Earlier tonight.
Sorry, next item, that's item I O five. This is to have the staff pursue and develop a lobbyist disclosure process for the Unified School District. Ms. Nakamura can-
Yeah, I, I've been talking about this, and it's something that actually has been weighing on me for a couple of years now. There was a particular vote that we took a ways back that shall remain nameless, but sitting down with somebody for lunch, they, they told me that they'd been paid a great deal of money to sit down and have lunch with me, which was something of a shock, that anybody would do that. I mean, I was paying for my own lunch to begin with, which stayed that way, but the feeling that someone was paid money to talk to me, and when I had, I mean, it was still my time, and I don't know that I would have made that decision had I known that, what they were representing, and I, at least I would have liked an honest assessment. And it, it occurred to me that, you know, that as I went and I investigated this further, that we don't have a lobbyist policy, you know, or lobbyist disclosure process in San, in San Diego's Unified School District, even though we are very, very big school district, and apparently there are people willing to pay money to have lunch with me. So, and I'm sure all of us.
Conflict of interest does cover it.
You know, well-
Well, if, in other words, there is a limit on what, how big a lunch they could buy, but-
No, they didn't buy me anything. I, I don't let anybody buy me lunch or coffee or anything else. But I guess there are, to make a quick work of this, Mr. Brizzi, our esteemed lawyer-type person, could you get us a few policies, examples of what one of these might look at, and then the board can have a, and give us some advice about what would be the pitfalls in, engaged in something like this? I think it's, but I've, I've my recommendation, and I-
Well, you're making a motion, now I'll second it.
Okay.
Then we'll go on, just asking them to do it.
Right.
Yeah, call for the vote, please.
That's it, okay. Good enough. Sorry, it's late, I didn't need to talk that much.
Wait, the vote, I guess I should, right?
Vote and go home. Okay, 5-0. Item 106 was pulled from the agenda. Item 107, please.
Yep, that's me, again. Pete Seeger. There was an article on the front page newspaper today, all of you read it, so I don't have to go over any of this. Much, except that, say that Pete Seeger, it was my honor and privilege, and I think the folks that were here to receive it have left. I think we actually, we beat them. The, outlasted them. But this is a resolution to recognition of Pete Seeger, an American folk singer-songwriter, and I'm just gonna read it, 'cause I'm too tired to go into all of this, but, whereas in 1960, Pete Seeger, the legendary folk singer, came to San Diego to perform at a rented auditorium at Hoover High School, and whereas the San Diego Unified School District Board of Education sought to require Mr. Seeger to swear a loyalty oath in order to use the auditorium, which read in part, "The underside states that to the best of his knowledge, this school property will not be used for the commission of any act intended to further any program or movement, the purpose of which is to accomplish the overthrow of the government of the United States by force, violence, or other unlawful means, and is not a communist action organization or communist front organization required by law to be registered with the Attorney General of the United States. Whereas Pete Seeger refused on principle to sign the oath demanded by the board, just as he had refused on First Amendment grounds to testify as to his political views and associations when called before the House Un-American Activities Committee, HUAC, in 1955, and whereas San Diego attorneys Erwin Gosten and Lou Katz, on behalf of the American Civil Liberties Union of San Diego, successfully challenged the board's demand that Seeger sign a loyalty oath, resulting in an injunction by San Diego Superior Court Judge Clarence Harden, that allowed Seeger to play the concert as scheduled to 1,400 ecstatic music fans, and whereas Pete Seeger was blacklisted for his real and alleged political views from 1950s until the late 1960s, and whereas Pete Seeger is now universally acknowledged as an American icon, who has dedicated his entire life promoting peace, a clean environment, participation in our democratic system, and folk music, whereas free speech and freedom of association among the fundamental tenets of our democratic republic, and whereas loyalty oath used during the Red Scars and McCarthy era were wrongly and unfairly used to discredit, ostracize, or ruin the lives of law-abiding Americans, and have long since been discredited, be it hereby declared that the San Diego Unified School District Board of Education deeply regrets its predecessors' actions and extends a warm hand of friendship to and appreciation for one of our dearest national treasures, Pete Seeger, and invite him to return to San Diego at any time to perform or to receive our expressions in person.
Okay, we have one public speaker?
Who I don't think is here anymore.
Richard Lawrence? He's gone? Okay, very good.
I need to figure this out.
Let's just vote, and we will have.
I just want to, very quickly, to make sure that there is no misunderstanding on, because I got confused when we voted on the amendment for the motion that I made, just that it's clear that the motion I made was the four parts, and I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that other than it being the status quo, that for 2009, 2010, what I had said was we would have-
Going back to Title I, though.
X-plan, yes.
Yes.
Number one. And number two, that the additional funds from Title I would be directed by Dr. Greer towards program improvement.
Can we finish this one first, and then we come back to yours? Because we're in the middle of something here.
We didn't pass yours.
Didn't.
I'm sorry. You're right. I, I thought we already voted on Pete Seeger.
No, we didn't.
We voted on the amendment.
Oh, no, no. Okay, I, I was thinking it was over.
Okay, so anyway, on, on, on Pete Seeger, so.
Okay. Just vote.
I, I know how the vote's gonna go.
I pretty much know how the vote's gonna go.
All right.
2-5-0. There we go. All right, now, what were you saying?
I just wanted to make clear, because I got confused with, when we made the amendment, that the original motion was, with the amendment, that for 2009, 2010, that we would have X-plan, which was amended to scenario two, which was recommended by the staff, that, that Dr. Greer would work on the additional funds from Title I in terms of the block grant. The number three, that the staff would provide a report on Title I, as far as how it's spent this year and the plans for next year. And number four, that a special report would be developed on the 40 to 60 schools, on, on the ways that they're, if, if they are not continuing the program, the ways that their operating funds could be covered, and so that they're not any useful programs that are eliminated. So, is that, was that everybody's understanding of the motion that we voted on?
Yes.
Okay.
Except when it was precluded by what we voted on.
No, because, no, we voted on the amendment, and the amendment was, sorry. We voted, and, and so, I guess we need clarification here. My, my, my understanding is what we voted for was not what you just said. What happened is after you said that, Ms. Nakamura made an amendment. Her amendment was to follow staff direction, okay? And, and so, and so that was her amendment, was to follow staff direction.
Right.
And so, we had to clarify what was staff direction, because staff direction was not status quo, staff direction was a different formula altogether, which was the 40, which was, which was 343 dollars per student, regardless of where they are, down to 40, down to 40%.
Exactly, that's all it was.
That's all that was, and that's what- That's all that was, and that's what.
No, no, wait, no, it was not, because I, as a maker of the motion, and I, the amendment, I added.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
We're going to do it anyway.
Yeah, I understand what he said, and we're good with that. I mean, we're going to, the point is the things, the thing that.
No, well, she was just making amendment on one part of my motion.
Yeah, I want, I want to go, because I did say this, I did say it out loud. I'm not that tired, I know I said it out loud, but there was a lot going on, and Mr. Brizzi is nodding his head over there.
That's why we should go home at ten o'clock.
So it was that, it includes two, three, and four, but that number one, the number one thing was the status. It's not okay with him, he wants a reassurance that the rest of it's going to follow through and it won't kill it.
Well, because the issue is, is if it was just the number one, we just, it's just the forty percent and the new formula, and that's just the way it is forever.
No, we're going to continue this dialogue. We're going to continue and, and explore and talk and, and develop this and really, you know, working through.
Always be up for discussion.
Sure we are. I know the chair. Anyway, we had some public comments.
Yeah, okay.
It always come up.
It always come up, no, we're not, we have some public comments. Thank you for being patient.
How many out here still want to talk?
Michelle Hutchinson, thank you for being patient with us.
Wow.
And, yeah. Let me call three other names in case they're here, I want them to fill, Amina Hudson and Amy Redding and Jean Gurus, okay, hey, we got some more here.
Hey, we got another one, all right. Okay.
Okay, very good, okay.
I like that jacket though, that's.
Hey, good evening, Michelle Hutchinson, I'm a parent over at Colonel Ed Fletcher Elementary School, and I'm here to express my thoughts towards the standard-based report cards. I wanted to say that I find the current standard-based report cards essential to the improvement of my son's education and the other students that are also attending our school. It allows us to have open communication with our teachers and the support staff that work with our children, and it also helps us to find or pinpoint learning difficulties that our kids are having, and work with the teachers to become, to develop a plan that we can find a solution to help with these difficulties at home as well as with the school environment. And it helps us to provide that extra support by having that open communication with our, with the teacher and our children to help them improve in these areas, and to put the work to plan, and a plan that will benefit my child and his future. I am here for my child, I'm very involved in his education, and by providing the best education for him to succeed in future, in his future education levels. I think it's very important that we keep the standard-based report card, and that's what I have for you tonight.
And thank you very much.
You're my hero. Talk about, what a mom, wow. Both of you.
Good evening, my name is Amy Redding. I have two children that also attend Colonel Ed Fletcher Elementary. One is in the third grade and the other is in kindergarten. And in these difficult times, I think it behooves us all to remember that San Diego Unified's sole mission is to, should be, to provide quality education for all the children of San Diego. And I think one way that San Diego Unified is doing a great job in accomplishing this mission is through standards-based report cards. I am a firm believer in standards-based report cards. My babysitter's been on the clock since four o'clock and she charges ten dollars an hour.
Wow.
Our son.
She makes more than we do.
I'm sorry, she makes way more than I am too.
She's had a better year than you've had.
Our son has difficulties in certain areas of reading and writing. We suspected that he had a reading problem when he was in the first grade, but all his report cards indicated that he was doing great. When standards-based report cards were issued in his second grade year, his teacher was able to pinpoint the exact problems that he was having in reading, and we were shocked that he had problems in writing as well. His teacher has, at that point, had set up an action plan for him, and that plan included not only his school time, but items that we could do at home to help him out. This positive interaction with his second grade has also carried over into his third grade year as well. And we believe that because of standards-based report cards, our son's teacher was able to open an honest dialogue with us, and that we were able to become involved and learn about his progress and where we needed to act and help. We are forever grateful to all of our children's teachers for their hard work, because we know a lot of hard work goes into standards-based report cards, and their objectivity and their honesty. And one of the few remaining untapped resources that has been proven to improve student learning is parent involvement in their child's education. And one of the best and cheapest ways for, to bring parents in and give them the tools that they need to help their students is to continue with the standards-based report cards. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, if there's no, nothing else, I think we can go upstairs.
Okay.
Upstairs.
Two minutes.
All right.
It shouldn't take us long.
All right.